I'd like to call the meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee to order. Before we start the meeting, I'm going to read language from the open meeting law. Pursuing to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio video recording of this public meeting or transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, and whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, they are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Okay, and at this time, I'll ask the clerks and committees to call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Palmucci. Chairman Phelan.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Eight members, we have a quorum. Okay, at this time, we're going to take up all business from the preceding meeting. And I'd ask Commissioner Murphy to go over some, he was asked to get some information from the last meeting and bring it up at this meeting, and he has a presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to take a deeper dive on the Furness Brook Golf Course. And I do want to thank and introduce the members of my team. I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. I know the council has a pretty large agenda tonight, but just again, our Recreation Director, Michelle Hanley, our Recreation Program Coordinator, Eric DeBoer, our Golf Pro, Tom Ellis, and our Office Manager, Diane Bowman, from Furness Brook Golf Club, are with us here this evening. So this night, tonight, talking about the Furness Brook Golf Club, I'd like to start with just a little bit of the history and background on how we got to today. So the course opened back in 1925, originally as an 18-hole golf course. Many people don't realize that. It spanned across Furness Brook Parkway to include what are now the neighborhoods where Puritan Drive, Joan Drive, Priscilla Lane, Miles Drive are now. In 1938, the name of the club was changed from the Stony Bray Golf Course to the Furness Brook Golf Club. Interesting piece of history, in 1949, Marie Robey hit the longest hole-in-one by a woman in golf history. So Furness Brook has a pretty neat and unique place in the history of golf, and our hope is to put a nice little plaque up recognizing that 75-year-old record up at the first hole at Furness Brook, a 393-out hole-in-one, pretty impressive. In 1972, the Furness Brook Golf Club, Inc., signed an agreement with the city of Quincy to waive the property tax requirement for 50 years, and in return, the city would acquire the course at the expiration of the lease. And as you know, in January of 2022, the lease expired, and the city of Quincy began operating the Furness Brook Golf Course as a public and municipal golf course. So what is the mission? Why does the city of Quincy want to run a golf course? I would suggest that this is more than just a public golf course. We should be looking at this as a community golf course. This is an opportunity for us to introduce the game of golf to folks that have been prevented from golfing through a variety of reasons and barriers. It's a difficult game to enter if you don't have access, have resources, and know somebody who has golf clubs. So we want to address issues such as access, availability, and expense, and really open up the game of golf to all of our residents. Lost in a lot of the debate around this particular issue is the fact that the city has acquired 45 acres of open space. This is probably the single largest acquisition of open space in close to 70 years for the city of Quincy, and I don't think enough has been said about that. If you take the parcels that we've picked up through the years, all important, the Lot 23s, the cobblestones, the Harriedavs, the beach combers, all very important, but if you combine them and then doubled them, you wouldn't get a piece of open space as large as the Furness Brook Golf Course. And the other aspect that we were looking at from our mission is to provide additional recreational community opportunities through winter sledding. Those of you that have not been know that this is the most popular winter sledding spot in the city. Now that the word is out that there is appetizers in a bar nearby, some of the parents have taken that opportunity to come inside into the warm clubhouse area while the kids are out sledding. And we're also talking with Mrs. Hanley and the Recreation Department about doing some community program, recreational programming as well. Many of the nearby neighbors and residents through the years have used, the clubhouse is a small function space for 70th birthday parties, baby showers, et cetera. So following up on this mission, we're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish to date with our staff from the golf course. We've been able to expand access for our student athletes. Our combined Quincy-North Quincy Girls Golf Program has found a permanent and consistent home here at Furness Brook. They do benefit by using the driving range up at Granite Links. They'll play around the two up at Presidents', but we were very glad to provide Coach Doyle and his team a home for the girls' program. And they were all very excited when we told them about the unique history that Furness Brook has in the history of women's golf. So we've asked them to do their best to try to match that hole-in-one on the first hole. We're working closely with Michelle and the Rec Department to launch a lot of introductory programs for golf, and not just young people, adults as well. Michelle is hoping to expand upon the very successful Quincy Youth Golf League. I know Coach Joe Salvucci has done a wonderful job in the city, providing golf programs for young people. And with Michelle's direction and leadership, we hope to expand upon that up at Furness Brook. Michelle has also worked with Tom Ellis to introduce the concept of a Quincy Senior Golf League. This is both good business and good community work in that we're opening up the course to more folks, and we're also filling spots on the tee sheet that traditionally don't get filled up during the summer months in the late mornings. So it's good business and good community work. One of the really cool ideas that Michelle has come up with is a beginner golf league, a four-hole golf league for folks, adults, that may want to try something new but don't necessarily want to go out and pay $100 to play golf someplace and learn how to golf. So working with both Tom and Michelle, we're going to develop a beginner golf league for adults that are looking to pick up the game of golf and see if it's for them. Recreational summer camps we've had up there in the past, we hope to expand upon them. And we just recently finished a very successful Senior Olympics golf tournament up there this last week. We're also opening up for leagues and tournaments for our local business community. We've heard from a number of our corporate partners here in Quincy that are looking to have both their annual tournaments and potential golf leagues for the employees up at Furness Brook. So there is no shortage of interest in business to be had up at Furness Brook, and we're pretty excited about that. All of this work is being done really on the backs of our three full-time professionals. We have our general manager and golf pro, Tom Ellis. We're very lucky. We stole him from Granite Links. He's got eight years at a public course at Potterham and Brookline. He manages all golf-related activities, runs the pro shop, tee times, tournaments, events, works with members in the general public. We have Diane Bowman, I mentioned our office manager. Diane was with the club when it was a semi-private club for a number of years. Her assistance has been critically important as we did the transition from a private club into a municipal course. She really handles all of the business end of the house, processing payroll, paying the bills, managing budget and accounts, coming up profit and loss statements, excellent with spreadsheets. She interacts with our vendors and handles inquiries of all natures. But I think her experience, both coming from the private course and helping us through the transition, understanding the operation, the revenue flow, and the revenue expectations has been critical. Our superintendent is Justin Bousquet. He's also another employee that we inherited from the golf club. Justin's job is the care and maintenance of the entire golf course. That is truly the asset here. If we're going to generate the revenue that we project to generate, we have to have the asset. And the golf course care and maintenance is a critical aspect of that. I am typically impressed with the feedback that I get about the condition of the course. And I think that with some help and some direction and some resources, we can continue to provide a, really a nine-hole gem right here in the heart of our city. And a lot of that is supported by seasonal staffing, folks that come in and help with weed whacking, leaf raking, grass mowing, helping the pro shop, help collect and clean the carts. And that's a critical part of our operation with only three full-time employees up there. So for fiscal year '22, for those watching at home, which is basically July of last year through June of this year, we have been running the course for the last six months of fiscal year '22, which would be January through June. And here is a summary, and we can get into more detail in the additional slides, about the categories of revenue that the golf course generates and the amount that we're projecting for this fiscal year. So the primary source of revenue is the membership dues. We generate almost a half a million dollars a year through our membership. When we transitioned over from a private club to a public club, and technically refer to them as annual permits, but I think people get confused when we say that, so I'm going to continue to call them memberships for that purpose. So we were concerned about whether those folks, where it wasn't a private club anymore, would stay with us as we went public. And I think our retention rate was in the high 90s, about 98%, 99%. And you can see that's by far the largest piece of revenue that we generate at the club is from our membership dues. Like most golf courses, we generate a substantial amount of money in cart fee and greens fee income. A lot of that also comes from a reliable source. There are a number of golf leagues, the golf up there, that generate both greens fees and cart fees. It should be noted that membership dues cover greens fees, they don't cover cart fees. So members do pay for carts as well, too. So even though they've already paid their greens fees upfront through their membership, if they do want to rent a cart, they do have to pay a cart fee. Our golf merchandise basically is our golf pro shop. You know, those of you that have been in the golf pro shop, commonly purchased our sleeves of golf balls, tees, gloves, et cetera. Some golf courses go a little bit further. They have a lot of merchandise, a lot of swag, if you will, with shirts and jackets and hats. We're not looking to get into the merchandise business, and I'll get into the financial model on the golf shop a little further in the presentation. Our rental fees for this year, that rental fee primarily is driven by our food and beverage contract. There is a prorated payment for the last quarter of the fiscal year that accounts for that 720. So all told, we're projecting an estimated revenue to close out this fiscal year at approximately $623,121. And further in our presentation, you'll see that our budget, which was approved by this council in November for this fiscal year, was approximately 401,000. So it's a robust surplus in the first fiscal year. A lot of that has to do with the timing and how we collect our memberships, and I'll get into that in the next slide. So here's the monthly breakdown for the last half of fiscal '22, but the first half of this year. So you'll see that the membership dues are collected in the first six months of the year, and the reason for that is that if we have members that aren't in good standing and we collect it over the course of 12 months, and they walk away in August or September, we're not really going to be taking anything away from them if they don't pay and if they don't play in October, November, December. So we want to collect as much of the membership dues upfront as we can, and that way we keep our members in good standing, and we have an accountability for folks to make sure that they're keeping up with the membership payments that are required under each level that they're in. You can see our cart fees. We have some pretty hardy folks. We technically are open 12 months a year. We have folks that will play as long as it's not snow on the ground, so you'll see spots of revenue depending on the weather in some months that you wouldn't attribute to golf revenue. It's not a lot of revenue, but I did want to explain, if you saw February revenue and wondered what kind of nut would golf in February, well, we have them. A lot of courses close. For the wintertime, Furness Brook does stay open, so it's not just members that play up there. There are folks that are members in other courses who are closed that'll come up and play Furness Brook during the winter months. You can see a pretty steady and gradual increase through March, April, and May. A lot of that has to do with the league fees coming in and being paid upfront. You know, we're already 20, close to 50% higher than we were last year at this time, where the club was last year as it relates to greens fees and carts fees. So so far, we're doing pretty well. And that's the revenue projection and the categories and the revenue breakdown for this fiscal year. So that main category of revenue is our membership, and here are the membership levels that we offer. The club offered a much longer menu of membership categories, and we thought for simplicity's sake that we would narrow that down and, you know, fit people into a more restricted membership categories instead of opening it up to 11 and 12 levels of membership. We have a family membership, which costs $3,500, and we have 17 families that have signed up for that membership. Our unlimited membership, which provides premium tee times, participation in tournaments, is the most popular membership category. That's $2,500 a year. I will say that our membership dues are, we reduced them slightly from last year because of public play being introduced to the course. And they still frankly are on the higher end for membership fees for courses similar to this when we did an analysis. Limited membership allows golf throughout the course of the week. For $2,000, we have 36 limited members. I believe we have a waiting list, if that's correct, Diane, on the unlimited members, too. So there is clearly a demand for the memberships that we're offering, which is a good sign. What we're trying to do is figure out what the right number is to cap the memberships, and that's why we have a waiting list. We want to make sure that people that are paying for memberships are getting value to that, so they can get the tee times if they're paying the extra money for that membership. So there's a number that we have to find that fills up those premium tee times but doesn't overload them, so members get excluded from playing the course that they're paying to play for. So I think as we get more years under our belt, we may tweak some of them up, we may tweak some of them down, depending on what we see for inappropriate balance of memberships allowed up at the course. We also have a unlimited and limited under 32, kind of a young professional rate, folks that we hope will grow into our future members. And then we have our ever-growing in popularity junior membership. We're up to 41 junior members, which is great. Again, when you talk about the future of Furness Brook and the future of the game of golf, you know, building up those junior golfers, I think, is critical. And that's how we got to 496, 700 is the total revenue, which is decreased based on our senior discount for 65-plus on the memberships. So another major component, I mentioned, are greens fees and cart fees. League pay, league play and public customers drive the greens fees. Cart fees are driven by those two plus members. There are currently non-member leagues at Furness Brook on Monday. There are two on Tuesday. There's one on Thursday and one on Thursday mornings. We also have multiple member leagues up there on Wednesday and Thursday as well. And as I mentioned, with Michelle's help, we're adding a junior league during the summer and a senior league during the summer during off-peak times. We've also heard from a couple of local businesses, Quincy businesses, that are looking to add leagues for their employees as well, but space is relatively limited, so we don't want to overbook it, but we essentially have a waiting list on leagues as well. Leagues alone, our estimate is about $105,000 in greens fees and cart fees, and much like membership, that guaranteed money certainly helps our financial viability. Quite predictable. We've seen an uptick in public play now that we're a public course. I think that makes a lot of sense. We were lucky, we received some attention from WBZ Radio, USA Today. A lot of the local media has covered the fact that it's now a municipal and public course, which has generated some interest from folks that have lived in the city a long time but may not have played Furness Brook as of yet. We very recently just launched the first online tee time booking program in course history. So golfers can go online and book a tee time three or four days in advance. Members can book, I think, a week in advance. But that's a service that's never been provided before that we think will, again, help us market the course to a broader audience and fill that tee sheet. One of the things that we're proposing in our budget for this year is actually doing some advertising and marketing. Nothing fancy, just ads in local papers, some online media, et cetera, in an effort to fill up that tee sheet primarily in those weekday mornings and early afternoons. This is a snapshot of some of the history of greens fees and cart fees, both actual and projected, that was put together with help from Diane and some of the historic analysis. In 2020, we collected about $125,000 in cart fees, about $164 in greens fees. You can see a drop in 2021, and I think that can be attributed to the expiration of the lease. I think the members understood that this was their last year, that there wasn't going to be a need for any projects or revenue to carry forward beyond 2021. So even the work that they would do, marketing the course and allowing public play, was reduced somewhat substantially. So I think that's why you'd see a revenue downturn in 2021. The 2022 is actually, the third column is actually the calendar year 2022. That is both a combination of our actual revenue to date and our projected revenue through the end of the calendar year '22. And as I mentioned, if you look at where we were at this point in calendar year '21 versus where we are in calendar year '22, we're up 50% right now. Now, I don't anticipate that our year-end is going to be up 50%. I just mean to say that the revenue and interest in the course is very robust. Fiscal year '23 projections, now we're shifting over to a fiscal year which starts in July of this year, has a number that is historically in line with what we saw in '20, what we're expecting in calendar year '22, which is part of fiscal year '23. It is quite frankly, I think, conservative. If these upward trends continue, I would anticipate those numbers being higher than the approximately $300,000 that you see in this graph. Food and beverage. So back in the end of 2021, the city issued an RFQ request for qualifications to supply food and beverage up at the golf course. Food has been an on-again, off-again service that has been provided up at Furness Brook, especially in recent years. Politely, the kitchen is, and the facility is very tired, it's very old. As the members knew that the lease was going to expire, there weren't a lot of significant capital investments in the property, and the kitchen reflects that. They've had caterers run the kitchen for a little while. At one point, they were shuttling pizzas up and down the street from Adams Street. So food, I think, is part of the service package that is provided at a typical golf course, and we were looking for a partner that could provide both a consistent food and beverage product. And we were very lucky to receive responses, not just from two businesses, but from two businesses from Quincy. The Fours Group was picked from the two that replied for their RFQ, not just for their job at the Fours Quincy, Fours Noel, but they also run the East Bay Grill, and more importantly, they run the Pine Hills Golf Club down in Plymouth and the food operation down there. Supplying food at a golf course is different than a restaurant. You have the ebbs and flows, you have the seasonality, and you also have the need to service tournaments and other golf events. So they were an excellent partner, and they were awarded the RFQ. Our RFQ that we issued at the end of last year was based on similar local public courses, for example, President's Golf Course here in Quincy, DW Field Golf Course in Brockton. Instead of doing the revenue sharing model, we went with a flat rental payment. The flat rental payment calls for a $40,000 annual rental payment or a $10,000 quarterly payment. What we saw is many of the golf courses that use the revenue sharing agreement were typically golf courses that were into function businesses, such as Granite Links, Social Country Club, and golf courses that relied heavily on functions that this golf course does not. The other piece of it is we want a predictability in our financial modeling and our budgeting, so we took the bird in the hand and issued an RFQ with a flat rent payment. And quite frankly, I was very happy. You know, we're right in that marketplace that's almost identical to what the President's golf course rent is as well. So if I can get into our fiscal '23 revenue projections, we talked a little bit about fiscal '22 at first, coming into the next upcoming year, based on the factors that we've talked about. Here are our projections. We project to generate approximately $853,000 and some change next year. Again, the lion's share of that is membership dues revenue. I think that's an area that is probably going to be higher than 480, but coming into our first full year, we want to be conservative in our revenue projections to make sure that we end up in the right side of the ledger. Same thing with cart fee income and greens fees income. We're essentially, despite transitioning from a semi-private course into a public course, we still want to hold those numbers relatively steady to where they were last year and the year prior. Golf merchandise. Golf merchandise is an interesting financial category. I first started to ask questions about why so many people buy shirts and hats and all other merchandise. I mean, it's okay to love the course, but what I found out is a little trick the golf courses do when you have a golf tournament, part of the fee for the golf tournament are prizes, and those prizes are gift certificates to the golf shop. So they basically create their own revenue. When you hold a tournament, you come in for a second, a third, you'll get your gift certificates to the golf shop, and that'll generate revenue for the course. So that's not a lofty goal for me, thinking we're going to sell a lot of hats. That's a built-in revenue that when we hold revenues, when we hold tournaments, the revenue is built into that because it comes back into the course. The rental fee is largely generated by the $40,000 we expect from our food and beverage partner. We do have a small amount in there. Like I mentioned, occasionally, there's a member that wants to have a baby shower or a birthday party. I want to be very clear that this isn't a function hall. I mean, many of you have been in that room. It's a nice little room. It's good for community meetings. It's good for small parties that you may not want to have inside your house. But this isn't a wedding destination. This isn't Granite Links. This isn't anything like that, and nor would we intend it to be, whether it's in this facility or if we're lucky enough to build a new facility. I don't think that would be the intention for that either. So that's the genesis of the 853,360 figure you see as projected income. That revenue schedule and cash flow is similar to what you saw for the fiscal '22 revenue schedule. As I mentioned, the memberships are collected from January through June. Cart fees and greens fees will, and merchandise will ebb and flow with the golf season to get us to that figure. Let me talk a little bit now about our proposed expenses that are in the natural resources budget. We talked about the staffing at the course. We have three full-time positions in the seasonal help, and there is approximately $292,360 requested in our personal services. In our contractual services, we have $288,000 request. The lion's share of that is our turf management and turf science services. The city has an RFQ out on the street right now. Essentially, this is for soil testing, pest and fungi identification, seed, fertilizer, chemicals, everything that we need to do to keep that asset which drives all of the revenue in place. This is a critical service, and we're looking for the right partner. We didn't just bid out bulk seed or bulk fertilizer. This is a service that we bring in expertise from the outside, scientists from the outside, and help us manage and maintain the quality of the golf course. We have a number of other contractual expenses from the cleaning of the locker rooms and portions of the clubhouse, equipment rentals for projects that we do during the course of the year, from drainage improvement to tee box replacement. For example, on the seventh hole, we have some work to do. We may have to rent some additional equipment to fix that particular issue. The maintenance shed, I haven't talked much about maintenance. Unfortunately, right now, the maintenance shed is not in great shape at all and will need some improvements over the course of the next couple of years. We're storing equipment in Conex boxes. We have Conex box rental costs associated with this budget, security systems, and we have other contracted services from utility costs to pest management to laundry service, et cetera, built in to this year's budget request. Expenses, one of our main expenses are golf cart rentals. We have a contract that we pulled off the state bid list with Five Star, and our golf carts run us approximately in the upper 40s, and there's additional money requested for when we have to bring in extra carts for some of the big tournaments. Our computer software, I mentioned, we have a great partnership with a national partner in FourUp that has the online booking software. We're requesting money for improvements to the course, including replenishing the bunkers with sand, loom, and other soil replacements that we need to do. Office and pro shop supplies, that is both the funds that we use to generate some of the merchandise return, but it's also basic office supplies, as it says, paper, pencils, folders, et cetera, the scorecards, and a number of other office supplies. We're requesting money for advertising and marketing. As I said, we're relatively new to the public market, and I think it's important that we continue to get our name out there. So we're looking to do some pretty basic advertising in our local and regional media. And then finally, we're requesting money for golf course supplies and improvements, which include flags, hole markers, tools, fencing improvements. A lot of the perimeter fencing around the course is in desperate need of repair and replacement. We also have an issue on the seventh hole, which I'd like to address this summer. The Bernazani School Playground is on the left side of the, left the seventh fairway. From time to time, the course will play it as a par three. I even think, it doesn't- will play it as a par three. I even think, it doesn't have to be school hours for children to be playing in the playground. I'd like to put some additional netting up at the tee box and along the playground as well, too, to avoid any problems at all there. So our revenue expense comparison, we mentioned the fiscal year twenty-two is looking very robust, primarily based on the timing of the collections of our membership dues. We're looking at approximately two hundred thousand dollars that'll likely end up in our free cash calculations, based on the surplus that we're running for the last six months of the fiscal year. And our revenue expense projections for fiscal twenty-three, the upcoming budget year, I think are a little modest, they're very conservative on the revenue picture, but certainly they continue to show a surplus. So that's the presentation on the golf course. If I can just answer a couple of the questions that were submitted. Ms. Manning submitted a bunch of questions to me from the last meeting, and I think if I can just run through a couple of them quickly, that would, that would help. So one of the questions was, is there any work planned for the Forbes Hill Park? There's a ongoing planning and design process. I sent you the first iteration, which was very heavy on park incursion, and right away, the community and the neighbors said, nope, that's not at all what we want. So we went right back to the drawing board, and we're not finished yet. We still have a process to go through with the community and with the Ward Council. I want to thank Councilor Kane for all the work that he did in conducting that meeting and fielding a lot of the emails and phone calls that he's been getting. We've been working pretty closely to try to address as many of the concerns as we possibly can, while still balancing the need to create a financially viable forty-five acre golf course next door. So, you know, we still have some work to do, but I submitted the original plan and then the supplemental plan for the council's review. Maintenance plan for Forbes Hill Park, our, the plan traditionally has been to maintain it. Similar to other parks, I think there is a particular issue that the Friends of Forbes Hill have raised, and actually were very cooperative and helpful during cleaning Granite Quincy and addressing some of the invasives and the impacts that we're having on the tree population up there. We've heard from both the Friends of Forbes Hill and the Quincy Tree Alliance about potentially doing a, a tree survey and then addressing some of the invasive species that are impacting the native vegetation. So we're developing a plan this summer. I've had the good fortune of running to a gentleman who's volunteered for a particular organization that works exactly in this field, and we're meeting up next week up at the park and hopefully starting a process to address that. I do have a request in the Department of Natural Resources budget for tree pruning and removal that would include a tree survey up at Forbes Hill Park. Membership costs, I submitted a schedule for the council to see the membership costs from twenty-twenty-one, all the categories and the benefits of those memberships, and then the updated letter that went out this year as well. Social membership and projection and costs, we're not doing social membership only because we're a public course now. Everybody has a social membership. Anyone can come up there. It's a public facility. Grab something to eat, grab a drink, enjoy the beautiful view from the clubhouse. Plans for the function in the restaurant, I submitted a copy of the agreement between the city of Quincy and the Forbes at Furnace Brook. It highlights a pretty basic, straightforward relationship, and I mentioned the fees and the rent associated with that agreement. Golf cart revenue, I think that was part of the presentation. Number of employees and titles that was in the presentation, collections of revenue was in the presentation. Open space designation, I think that question was maybe a zoning question, and I believe the course is zoned as open space, was done so a number of years ago. Stormwater management report, this is another issue that came up regularly in our community meeting that we had up at the clubhouse with Councilor Kane. There are existing issues up there that probably stem from the site's histories of reservoir. For those of you that don't know, the old MDC used to operate a reservoir up the top of the hill. The tower is actually a steel standpipe surrounded by beautiful granite, and it was basically filled in with soil, and the bowl still sits in place, which creates some unique issues that have to be addressed. And I've spoken with both the mayor's office, DPW Engineering, and our architects and engineers from Fosse and O'Neil, who are in the process of developing a plan to, A, address any existing issues that may exist, and B, ensure that any new developments up there are actually an improvement. Now, I will say that the parking lot, which is probably forty, fifty years old, was built well before MS four standards. You know, we have a plan for a stormwater swale on the site where the courts are in the park, and we will be building the parking lot under, by MS four standards. And there are other areas and issues that we'll be addressing, including wicking off some of the water that tends to settle within the bowl in the old reservoir. So we don't have a plan to present tonight, but I will say that we are working collaboratively with DPW Engineering and our outside engineers to make sure that not just any new impacts are addressed, but they become improvements. The cost break-down to the maintenance plan was included. Other funds being used for Furnace Brook Golf Course, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. So I do have a request before the CPC for funds to replace the basketball court and tennis court and plant trees at Forbes Hill Park. No matter what the final design is of the park, that basketball court and that tennis court need to be replaced. Ms. Haley will tell, Ms. Haley will tell you that it's one of the more popular recreation summer programs that we have around, and the, both the basketball court and tennis court are in difficult shape, and the plan all along has been to replace them as part of this project. So regardless of where they sit on the site, whether it's in the exact location or now or close by, we're going to have to replace those. We do have an irrigation, an irrigation project that's being done up there that isn't in my memo response, that is being funded by a capital account from municipal finance as well, too. We had a question. Can I go off the golf course? Do you want to stay on the golf course?
I see a presentation.
In the memo, sure.
Yes, why don't we finish that, and then I'll open it up to the councils.
So the other questions in the memo, one involved the downtown costs. I broke down in the memo. There's currently the downtown coordinator overseeing four employees that take care of the three parks. In a lot of the spaces in between the parks, it's not just in the parks themselves. They've picked up a lot of additional work. They've also picked up responsibilities that were once in the park department, and that's why we're justifying a position leaving the park division and coming into the downtown, because they've picked up the mowing and maintenance and a lot of the carrying of the, the tree boxes and the tree pits in the downtown. One of the questions was the estimated cost to maintain the fountains. According to our downtown coordinator, that cost is about twenty thousand dollars per year. A lot of that is based on the chemicals, the bromine that has to be put in. They don't use chlorine in the replacement parts. Fortunately, that work is now completed with in-house personnel, whereas it used to be contractual work. So I think, I think that covers it, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the council's patience. I said it was going to be fast, and it was a little bit longer than I thought.
All right. I'll open up the floor for questions. The council is, Councilor Yang.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioner. I just want to say thank you because, you know, you had about twenty-four hours to turn a lot of information around, and so I very much appreciate you. And, like, I'm sure members of your team as well, who put together this really thorough presentation, as well as the information packet for us. So I have a question. I'm just referring to the slides because that's why I wrote them down. You gave pretty good historical data. I think it was on like the tenth slide for the greens fees and the cart fees history. And so I'm just curious as to the thought process behind using historical data to project future data for the greens fees and carts history. Did you do an average? Did you, you know, like, what were the considerations that you took into place when you projected the greens fees and cart history based off the history?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. My inclination was to look at this as a very different golf course than it was as a private course. As a public course, I believe it's going to get some additional use, based on the fact that it's being marketed, that people know that they can go up there and play. I remember as a young kid, I went up there and was told I couldn't play, and everyone back. I haven't been back to this day. So, you know, the inclination is to intuitively to suggest that the revenue was going to go up. That said, where it's our first year as a public course, I didn't want to be aggressive in increasing those by any percentage that we couldn't justify other than the actuals from twenty. So we tried to land at a place that the course has already been.
All right. So it's pretty conservative estimates then, that you projected?
I believe so. Time will tell.
Great, thank you. And then I'm just curious, what happens with the, and this, maybe it's more appropriate to ask during the question I have about creating that offset. So let me hold on a second. The other question I have is about the restaurant. So I was going to ask about whether or not you were considering doing a percentage rent, right, of their profits, but then you explained the reasoning why you went away from that and went to the flat rate instead for their lease. What's the lease years on that? Like, is it ten years, twenty?
No, it's a three-year lease.
It's a three-year lease, okay. And then at that point, depending on what the revenues look like, first, I appreciate that you're doing it the year lease. I think, you know, between the two parties, we are probably coming out on the better side of that, right? Because we have an opportunity to, no, but honestly, right, we have an opportunity to look at potential revenues and, you know, if and when there are any events, what that looks like. And so I just want to acknowledge that for negotiating purposes. Thank you, because I think that gives us a huge benefit to go back to the table. And at that point, depending on the revenues, decide if we want to go percentage rent to make some more money, that's great. And if you want to keep things the way they are, right, you can enter into another three-year lease at that point, or is it as long as you want to for the lease years? Like, we have full disclosure over how many years we want to go after the three years, right?
That would depend, Counselor. I think the lease language suggests that if we're going to go beyond three years, that that would come before the council in order to do that.
Okay.
The X factor in this discussion is whether or not we have a new facility up there. You know, three years from now, are we talking about the same facility? I don't know. I mean, I know they certainly don't hope so.
Okay, all right, great. So, the other question I had about the restaurant, too, so when it came to, or when it comes to renovations in that space, who's going to be responsible for renovations? Is it going to be the tenant, or us, or some combination of the two?
It would be us.
Us entirely?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, let me see. So then that would also be us if there's any upcoming maintenance to the facility, like if there's a leaky ceiling or something happens in the kitchen for whatever. Like, there is, we are responsible, like entirely, for the maintenance of the space?
We're responsible for the facility. If there's an issue with particular equipment, I would suggest that they would be responsible for repair of the equipment. We're responsible for the facility.
Great. And then, let me see, I'm just trying to go through my notes here. Thanks for your patience. Oh, okay. The other thing I had a question on, too, is over the next however many years, right, if we, based off of our expenses, whether it's staffing or, again, just, you know, maintenance when it comes to materials and all of that, you know, just with inflation as things start to increase, or we're going to look at that annually to then determine what our membership fees are every year as well?
Through, yes, Counselor. I think both the membership categories, the membership caps, the membership prices, and along with the greens fees and cart fees as well, too. So our goal, we're trying to thread a needle. So we're trying to be a course that an average Quincy resident can access. So I don't want to go too far as it relates to greens fees. I like where we are with greens fees. So would have to review all of our revenue sources on a yearly basis to make sure that we're keeping ahead of our costs. So I think the direct answer to your question is yes, but there are a number of different ways we can get there.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, again, I'm not, please understand that none of these questions are, you know, me looking to gouge anybody at all. I just want to make sure that at a bare minimum, at least, we're going to be able to break even year over year. Surplus happens, phenomenal, right? I just want to make sure, again, like, these questions aren't to motivate us to gouge anybody. It's to make sure that we at least reach that break-even point. So the last set of questions I have are, it pertains to the question I had about a budget offset and adding that in there, and I think it's a more logistical question to speak to Mr. Mason about, correct?
Yes.
And, sorry, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I go into the offset questions versus just sticking to the golf course itself?
No, I mean, this is part of the whole package. So, yes, that was about one of the questions that was asked the other night, and that determines the budget. So I would rule that this is part of it.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Mason. So you had said in here in the memo, and I apologize, I meant to follow up with you. So I appreciate that you at least gave me the information in the, in the packet here. So just reading through it quickly, it looks like the decision is that it's not possible to do an offset. So if we can talk about that, though.
Absolutely, Counselor. So a direct offset, in other words, taking the way the funds are received now into the general fund?
I'm sorry. This is going to be really complicated, and I can't really hear you. Could you speak louder and slower for me, so I can make sure I fully understand this? Thank you.
Is that better? Oh, all right. So, yes, currently, a direct offset. So shortly after the council meeting on Monday, I actually had talked to Jim Powers, our external auditor, that night, and we had a long conversation yesterday discussing the nature of a direct offset. Direct offsets have existed in the state of Massachusetts up until the Modernization Act. They actually still have a form in our tax recap called the A1, but there's only allowable, and they are grandfathered in, direct offsets. So when an offset's received to the general fund, like it is in this case, and the expense is generated through the general fund, which it is in this case, you can't reflect those. They have to be held separately. Now, you can do an indirect offset. You could do a reserve appropriation offset, which is what we see in the other parts of the budget. So parking receipts is Fund 4501. So that's a fund held separately for reserve appropriation. The body votes to move that. Similar for tourism. Even in the parks budget, we do see that for moving from Fund 4512, which is the hotel motel tax. So the funds have to be held separately. There's also the option for a revolving fund, for an enterprise fund. A direct offset is no longer something that the state, the state actually, I believe, you could get clarification on it. I just don't believe since the twenty-sixteen Modernization Act, that language exists anymore. I'm not tarrying. I'm only talking about specifically within the municipal finance procedural outlook.
So we can't, unless you grandfathered in prior to twenty-sixteen, we can't create that separate line item for just an offset line item?
The body would have to establish a reserve appropriation account.
We would have to establish that.
I believe so, yeah. So it's, we're in a conversation with.
So that is something necessarily that we could do between the approval of this fiscal year's budget and next year's fiscal year, right?
No, you couldn't, because under the law involving, involving reserve appropriation accounts, there has to be a legacy of revenue.
Mm-hmm. How many years for that?
It could actually just be one. So you'd be able to project for, say, FY twenty-four budget, I'd feel very confident approaching the Division of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and saying, okay, here's what our revenues look like. Here's a revenue report.
Gotcha, okay. But we need at least, we need this one fiscal year under our belt at a bare minimum first, before we can move forward with that?
Yeah, from a practical standpoint, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. So I guess, and the other question I have, I just want to clarify this, is that, you know, my thought process behind adding in the offset to the budget, right, is that when you're looking at it for accounting purposes, right, let's say, for example, there's, you know, this one budget, right, it's eight hundred thousand dollars for a golf course, right? So we need to approve budgeting eight hundred thousand dollars, okay? And then we have revenue of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So then, all of a sudden, now the bottom-line budget is negative fifty thousand, right? That looks great, because now the bottom line is I'm not asking taxpayers for, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars. In fact, I'm saying, we're not asking you for anything. We're getting fifty thousand back. That being said, that decision's important because it impacts the taxes set in the fall, right? So.
It doesn't. If it's all received through the general fund, it has the same net effect.
That's what I'm asking. That's what, so, sorry, let me finish my thought. Wait. So even if we don't have the offset in the, in the book, in the budget book, when it gets passed, that impacts the taxes, right? When we go to set the tax rate, we actually take these revenues and then apply it, right, as income, and then that helps to set the tax rate. So we're setting the tax rate based off of the income coming in, regardless if it's in the tax, I'm sorry, regardless if it's in the budget book or not, because the account, the money's coming into the accounts, right?
Correct, Counselor.
Okay. That's, I think, for me, the most important thing, is like, even though the number in the budget book is not less that revenue, we're not going to set a tax rate based off of the fact that that revenue didn't come in. We're setting it based off the fact that it does come in. So it brings that back down to what it's supposed, so that's my concern, right? And that's, I think, moving forward, you know, something that I would want to make sure to clarify when we have that conversation in the fall. And that's why, just for, like, accounting purposes, having it in front of me, why I prefer to have it in the, in the budget book in the spring when we have a conversation, versus making sure we have that conversation in the fall, if that makes sense, right? So I appreciate you clarifying it. It's, the bottom line for me, right, is what happens and how this impacts the tax rate, and it looks like it's fine. It works out the way that I need it to work out. But moving forward, I think, coming into next year's conversation, I would love to get together and see what this, you know, year's revenues look like, and if it does come in, you know, where it's more than, it more than covers the costs. If we can potentially create an offset line item then for next fiscal year, that would be great. So.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate that, that I have the breakdown of all of that. Let me just make sure I had the other question for, oh, okay. So this is the last question I have for you. What happens with the surplus?
Okay, so that's quite interesting. In this case, it reduces the tax levy. It's general fund revenue, same thing as if building fee permits come in higher, or if we have an increase in motor vehicle excise tax. It's just, in the fall, it's less money that's be raised. That certainly changes depending on if it's a reserve appropriation account. That would not be the case. That would not be the case in an enterprise fund. Excess revenue becomes part of fund balance that can't be moved to the general fund. If it becomes part of a revolving fund, it's a little more of a gray area. There's a little more flexibility at the county level, but it's still very similar to the reserve appropriations.
Okay, so regardless if it's in the budget book as an offset or not, if we have... I'm just throwing out random numbers here for conversation, right? The cost to maintain is $800,000. We get $850,000 in, right? So now that $800,000 is a wash, right? That doesn't impact the taxpayers. They're not having to cover that $800,000, because the revenue covered it. But now we have a surplus of $50,000. We take that $50,000 and apply it to reducing the tax rate, correct?
Yes, and that's done mechanically with... There's no action that needs to be done for that. It's just...
Well, but my question is, like, that will always happen regardless if there's an offset line item or not, right?
It would not happen in offset line. That particular law... How it works is that if, say, for example, you... Body decides to put an $800,000 offset in there, and ends up spending $750,000, additional $50,000 would go to reduce the tax rate. But say the net revenue that came into the golf course was $1 million. It would only be that $50,000 that the body chose to appropriate that would count.
Oh, I see.
The remaining $200,000 would stay in that reserve for appropriation fund.
So if I don't create an offset, then I can use even more money of that? I could essentially use the entire surplus to reduce the tax rate?
Yes, effectively, yes.
Okay. It seems like my need for accounting actually is not beneficial to reducing the tax rate. So maybe that's a different conversation we'll have going into next year. At a bare minimum, I do want to make sure that it gets... The costs get covered this year. And then, again, as far as the accounting conversation goes, it sounds like we need to at least get this one fiscal year under our belt first before we can even go there. So looking forward to diving into that further with you. Again, it's really good information, and I appreciate the way you've explained it and put it in front of us tonight. So thank you. Those are all the questions I had for this department and this item here. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we'll go to Council Mahoney.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, you can stay close. I am, but I'm going to start with Mr. Murphy. Thank you very much. There's a lot of information, Dave, and I knew you could pull it off, because, you know, I know that you're more than capable of getting it all together. One of the concerns I have is that, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, is this a equitable opportunity for our residents? Kind of like schools, like, we want to make sure every kid in every school gets an equal opportunity to get educated. Well, in this particular case, everybody who wants to golf gets an equal opportunity to come golf, because it's a public course, right? But are we marketing this as a destination as well? Meaning that we want people to come in from out of town to come golf it? Or is it just a public golf course?
I think it's a community golf course. I think a lot of the programming that we described doing primarily through the Recreation Department is going to build that. So it's not just a one-time, get up there, play around the golf, and be done. I think what we're building is a community interest in the golf, whether it's a beginner golfer, a youth golfer, or even a senior golfer. You know, I think that our mission is to become not just a public golf course, but a community golf course, so...
So when you say community, that means anybody in the surrounding towns, anybody who wants to come, just to make sure that we're talking about the same thing? Because, you know, a public golf course for the city of Quincy is a public golf course for our residents. A community golf course is, hey, if you're in the area, come on over and golf at First Park Golf Course. We welcome everybody.
Well, I think that's why we reserve those programs through our Recreation Department. We just put blocks where we're encouraging a local community use to other golf courses don't necessarily do, or at least not as much as we're planning to do. So are we going to have people from surrounding communities?
Probably. I'm just asking, because obviously now we've taken... We've gone from a, you know, semi-private to public golf course. And so one of the things that... This is just, you know, somebody checked out your membership, and I see that you gave it to us in this package. You have a family for 35, unlimited for 25, and limited... Oh, no, limited for 2,000. And if I read the unlimited, it says, "Shall entitle an individual to play at any time you can..." Anytime, and you can play in tournaments and invite guests within the guest policy, $2,500. And then I get to the $2,000 one. It says, "Shall entitle an individual to play at any time, and you can play at tournaments and invite guests within..." What's the difference between the 2,000 and 2,500? They're both exactly the same description. So if I signed up for a $2,500 one, I'd be pretty disappointed that I was paying $500 more than the next level down. I'm just curious. It might be just a website issue that you have to fix.
Yeah, limited is actually, "Shall entitle an individual to play during the weekend anytime, but not before 12:00 p.m. Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays."
You might want to check your website out, because it's incorrectly. It's marketed incorrectly. That's a...
Understood.
That's a problem there. So then again, there's several different questions that I have, but I'm just going to go to the... Because I don't want to take up too much time. I want to go to the largest one that I have, and you're with me. And it kind of goes back to, it potentially might be Mr. Mason that might need to help me. So it's some of your revenue generating issues, I guess, before we do that. Where do you put the golf carts? There's 26 of them. Where do you put them?
There's a shed next to the existing clubhouse that they're stored and charged in.
Wow, that's... That's how many can fit into that shed?
We're pretty efficient.
That's impressive. Do they have, like, second shed, like a second shelf? I was like, I didn't think you were going to have that many. I was like, I don't know where you're putting them. So, okay, so my question is, for fiscal year 2022, you spent $401,000, and you... And your revenue, right? So your expenses were $401,000, and your revenue was $623,000, right?
Well, our budget was $401,000. I'm not sure that we're going to actually spend the full $401,000, but that was approved to be spent.
Okay, so you were approved to spend the $401,000, and your revenue was $623,000? So your last page, revenue expense comparison.
That sounds about right, yeah. Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Mason, did you say that that $200,000, that would go into the... I just want to make sure I'm following. That goes into the... If we have that... Because this is all underneath one park, underneath the parks revenue, like, all of this would be underneath the parks revenue. We're not separating out Furnace Brook Golf Course, if we have $200,000 extra.
No, Furnace Brook Golf Course is actually considered miscellaneous recurring revenue.
Okay. So that $200,000 extra, you're saying, potentially would go in to offset our taxes, correct?
It would increase our miscellaneous revenue account, which would offset taxes.
Okay. And in the revenue section that... I was not here for that meeting. In the revenue section, what we estimated was $1 million, correct?
Yeah, so when we first structured this, we had to do a resume...
It was your estimate, yeah.
During, before we took over the golf course. So the process of doing the tax rate recap, when you're doing... That's called Page Three. You work very closely with the state. And the state has a lot of preset models that you kind of just plug in the data. What's interesting is that those models work on a 12-month curve. In fact, we've only had the golf course for six months. So in discussion with the state, I said, you know, "How do you want to handle this?" Because the state has seen far more golf courses than I've ever seen in my life. They said, "Plug in your data." The data even includes stuff like number of rainy days to be expected, percentage of cart rentals, likelihood of guests to occur. Then they even have, like, some factors in there, like population. So I worked with the state and filled that in. That's what it generated. Our projected expenses were far, far lower than even what that number would be. So that's using that kind of generally accepted model, which doesn't work well in half a year, but works fairly well in a year timeframe.
Yeah. So the model... Yours was far from... I'm confused, because there's a side conversation going on. So could you repeat that again? You thought it was higher, but you knew it would come in lower, is that what you said?
Oh, no. What I'm saying is that we had kind of a standard package that virtually every golf course uses.
Yeah.
And it's usually for a 12-year cycle, a 12-month cycle.
12-month cycle, yeah.
We only hit six months.
And you do six months, yeah.
So when I told the state, they said, "No, just plug in the metadata. You'll get the result."
Because you plugged in the annual data and...
Oh, yeah. A lot of it's standard data, like population and rainy days, because that's a huge factor in ability to golf.
So then can I check with the auditor, Madam Auditor? Could you tell me how much we actually collected this year?
To date, well, I should say, through the end of April, we've collected $369,718.61. And we have two more months of revenues to post.
So that's through today, and that's... It looked like there's about $200,000. So where... Do we anticipate that $200,000 to come in? And where do we anticipate that coming in? Is that the fees to golf, or where is that coming from?
That was a combination. The revenue schedule, the six-month revenue schedule we show for fiscal '22 primarily is another...
In your package?
Yes. Yeah, it's another two months of membership dues. It's greens fees, and it's cot fees primarily.
They pay their membership dues monthly?
Yes.
Okay. So we're anticipating that will come in, okay. And then, the other question that I had, so when we're... The prior... So I appreciate this. This would have been great last year. It would have been great two years ago if we could have had this meeting two years ago before we went off-lease with the golf course, because we could have probably been all on the same page and even had neighbors and everybody buying into some of the things that we're having up there. But we're really kind of jamming this into becoming a city entity. And it feels like we're creating, you know, a business when, you know, there was a business there. It's turnkey. We're not going to do any major changes, but there's been major kind of conversations of things going on. And one of the things that's in here is that the city of Quincy came to acquire the 45 acres of open space. When did we acquire that 45 acres of open space?
Through the expiration of the lease.
Through the expiration of the lease. But when did it become designated open space for the city of Quincy? What year?
I guess that's a zoning question, Counselor. My understanding is it has been zoned open space in the past.
I think it was zoned in 1975 through a legislation auditor. And open space is something that it stays open space, whether it's a golf course or anything else, correct?
Unless the zoning's changed, yes.
Yeah, okay. So a lot of times what we hear up in this neighborhood is that you got to be careful what you're asking for, because you could end up with condominiums. But it's zoned open space, and there's actually a state legislation going through right now to actually protect open space. So open space will stay open space. One of the concerns that I have, and it's in this budget, and it's because it's next to a park, and that park has some... Same thing as Kincaid. Kincaid had some major flooding issues over in Kincaid. So if you just went in and you just made Kincaid look nice, and you didn't solve the problem, then the same problems will happen over there, right? The neighborhoods would get flooded and the same thing. We have issues over at Forbes Hill Park with flooding, and I know you mentioned that in your presentation, but it would have been nice if we could have actually taken the due diligence to look at these things separately and then together. Not just about a parking lot, but about actually really solving the problem there. So I do think this is a project that there's multiple things that are going on. We have a golf course. We have... We've committed to that golf course. We have to figure out how we're going to be able to manage that golf course. And then we also have a neighborhood that hasn't been, you know, completely embraced in it. One of the things I think would be great is, much like the URDP, when you had, like, a neighborhood community group that came together to actually work through those processes so that everybody can feel like they have buy-in. Maybe we do something like that. And I'm just making... I'm throwing that as a suggestion, because I know you've done a lot of work, and I know you have done a lot of back-and-forth on it, but really, it needs to be, you know, a little bit more open to the area that's up there, because it's not like President's Golf Course, where it is in a neighborhood, but it's kind of off to the left of the neighborhood. This is in a neighborhood. And the restaurant, I believe, was not in the prior management. It wasn't open until 11:00, and now we're going to keep a restaurant open until 11:00. Isn't that correct?
I can't say that the... What we're referring to is a restaurant. I mean, it's a golf club with a bar that's serving food. We can call it a restaurant. We can call it a grill. We can call it whatever.
It wasn't open until 11:00, I don't believe. I don't think it had hours until 11:00, or it shouldn't have had at the time. You know, that's something that... It's definitely something that needs to be thought through, though, because it is in a neighborhood, and it's, you know, it's... I believe it's Residence A up there, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. So in Residence A, we can have Airbnbs, but we have a major business. It's going to... It is a business. It's a business that the city's operating, and it's going to serve alcohol in that neighborhood. So it has in the past, but now it's different, because it's a public entity. And, you know, we don't serve alcohol at Kincaid Park. So we have to consider those types of things. I'm just throwing that out there, because I do think it's something that we have to be considered. We didn't do a traffic study. We didn't do certain things with that. Those are the types of things that I think we really have to kind of narrow down in that neighborhood with this. And the due diligence might have been done if we had done it two years ago. Again, this is inherited. The keys got transferred. It was definitely hard-pressed that if we didn't do this, it could have become something It was definitely hard pressed that if we didn't do this, it could have become something else. That was that was something that was said last November to us when we were voting on this. So those are concerns of mine. And I I definitely feel like those are things that were missed opportunities from the city. And, you know, the fact that we didn't take into consideration the flooding issues that are up there and that we're saying that it's going to be taken care of by a parking lot you're going to create. These are the ways that we have to fix them. The other thing that I had a problem with, how much money has been spent up at the golf course so far? So I know what your budget is. What was approved in the in the in the in the budget? But one of the questions I had asked is how much did we spend so far? How much has the city invested since we've taken it over? I think you probably answered that, but, you know.
Are you speaking of the the 401,000 from the budget appropriation?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Was that your question of how much what percentage of the 401,000 from the budget has been spent?
Nope. What I'm asking is how much money has the city has Furnace Brook Golf Course? How much money has the city invested in Furnace Brook Golf Course to date since we've taken it over?
It was a I mentioned in my opening comments irrigation improvement project that was done up there. I want to say that was approximately a million dollars. I think I'd have to get the actual capital report printed out on that. I think there was some equipment added up there. I'd have to get the cost through a number of mowers purchased to make sure we could maintain. One of the issues that we ran into, Counselor, was as the lease needed expiration, the members weren't investing in the course and the equipment, what have you. So, you know, we know that, you know, there are certain components of the asset that were critical for us to be able to maintain the revenue up there.
Again, this isn't something that was new to the city coming up. We knew the lease was coming to an end. We knew that there was problems that were happening with the the golf course in the sense of how it was being managed. And we knew we were going to when the keys came due and the lease expired, we were going to come into that. But we did spend $1,131,000 to date on the golf course. That's not taken into consideration within our budget. But that $1,131,000 does kind of does end up being some that the taxpayers pay because it's it's money that we'll end up paying for. So it's and it's not transparent. So, you know, this these are the problems that I have is that we have these projects that we do in the city. And if you're a homeowner and you buy a home, you know what the expenses that you bought the home for, if you've put any investments into it, you kind of keep track of that because if you're going to turn around and sell it, you're going to want to make sure you're making a profit on that. But these are like little pockets of gold, or I believe what they like to say is let the wizard find the money. The administration will find the money if it's needed. And, you know, that's great, but the public doesn't know that. And this is to be transparent in what we're doing. If you want to say you're breaking even or you're making money, that's in your general budget. But we're spending a lot of money. And then there's going to be a bond that's going to come before us for more. And when we first talked about this a year ago, it was 5 million. Then it turned into 7. Now it's looking like 10. It hasn't come before us, but it just keeps growing. I have concerns with projects like this because they become out of our reach and out of reality. And I do expect like we the city council have to push back on those things too. But I also expect some transparency from the administration, the department, and everybody that's bringing it for us to tell us exactly what we're spending. So it's nice that we have talking about the the revenue, the the budget book, what we're talking about. But that's an expense that you have that you know. And there's a lot of them that are going on throughout the city. And it's it's just not transparent to the taxpayers. It's not transparent to us here in the city council where we're making these decisions. It should be added up in the total cost of anything that we're doing so we know what we're investing in. If we want to play the business people and say that we're going to open a business, a golf course, then we have to be transparent with what we're doing. The bank wouldn't give you money if you weren't being transparent. The taxpayers can't afford to keep giving money too. And I think that's an important important piece of that. One last question that I have and is the membership. When you opened up the membership, when the city of Quincy took over the membership and they opened them up, how did you open it up and how and what's the percentage of new members that you have?
The membership was offered to the existing members first. And then when we lifted the caps, folks that were on the waiting list were added. And if they were depending on the category of membership, if there were additional spots, they were added into the additional spots they were seeking. And if they were capped, they were added to our waiting list.
How is that equitable and fair to everybody in the city of Quincy? Maybe I was just asking this question because before it was, you know, it was Furnace Brook Golf Course run by a separate entity, and you could join if there was openings. Now it's a turnkey into the city of Quincy, and the first thing it was open to was the current members that were there. So maybe somebody wouldn't have become a member or didn't know they could become a member. But now it's a public entity. So how does that become equitable for everybody? So if I was not a member and I wanted to become, you know, a member and I didn't fit in those categories, I'm a taxpayer. So how I mean, how does that become equitable?
I don't think those groups are mutually exclusive either, Counselor. I think within those members is already a number of existing taxpayers as well. And I think the answer to that question is does the.
There's not a criticism. I'm just trying to understand it because it wasn't it didn't seem like it was an open process is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I I do think there's there's two ways to play this course. You can play it as a member of the public. You can play it as a member. The course is certainly far more open than it ever has been before. So I do think depending on how much golf you play, I would encourage each individual to do an analysis of what a membership costs and then what a round of golf costs up there. And I think that relative to access to the course, I mean, unless you're playing.
I should play more golf because my maiden name was Mulligan. But, you know, my brothers play golf and my sister play golf. But I bet, you know, I was always good to take because I could give you the the pass. I understand what you're saying, but I guess I'm going to go back to that equitable piece once it becomes a public entity, you know, opening it up to the general public for them to. It's the same thing. You said you offered it to the members first rather than opening up to everybody. And the members are all from Quincy, so I'm sure that they would everything would have stayed the same. It's just the way it looks. It just looks like, you know, we took over a golf course to maintain a golf course for 200 members. And trust me, I know that it's they're very passionate. Golfers are very passionate. I I know golfers in my family. I I watched a lot of golf in the last 19 months. I know all the players. I know they start on Thursday and they go until some never knew that before. I was like, I never had I never knew golf started on Thursdays on TV. Didn't know people watched it on TV, but spent a lot of time with my dad watching it, so.
But but just to be clear, Counselor, there are categories of membership that aren't capped. So if you wanted to sign up for an unlimited membership and were told you're put on a waiting list, you were given other options to become a member in a different category?
Which ones are not capped, just so I understand?
I believe the which ones are not capped? So we've capped everything but the junior membership now?
We've capped every so there are memberships that are not capped, but we've capped everything but the junior membership?
Right.
So if you are ages 18 and under, shall entitled the member to play anytime Monday through Thursday, but cannot play after 11:00 on Fridays or before 2:00 on Saturdays and Sundays. And that 18-year-old has to pay $300. Okay, that's the only one that's not capped. Everything else is open to the public in between the hours when they can. And because I've already heard from people that they've tried to golf at this public golf course and they can't get on the public golf course because it's full, which is a good thing, I guess, because that's what you want to do.
A lot of golf courses are facing that same difficulty.
Yeah, it just reminds me a little bit of like when Granite Links was happening and it was like, it's going to be open to the public. We're going to promise it's going to be open to the public. It's going to be this public thing and it turned into it's never going to be open to the public because it's only going to be open to the members, but you can come up and have a drink if you want. And that's not what I'm hoping for this at all. And I don't think that's what you're going to let happen, but I just it's concerning. I mean, I know you know about that. You remember that you were around in Quincy during Granite Granite Links when it was opening up. And come on, you remember. It was not pleasant. We were supposed to have walking trails and all sorts of things, and it didn't happen. But I don't want to see that happen here. And, you know, so this is really a golf course for 200 people or potentially 250 people that are members, plus the public can come up and and use it. And, you know, I heard I I did I did hear that there was going to be social memberships, like Squawna Mia Club, I think, has a social membership. You can join it for $100. You can you don't have to have a boat, which is great because you can go sit in the water and have a drink. But, you know, this is a public entity, and you said they're not going to be doing that. But people will be coming into this neighborhood maybe to go have a drink and or a burger potentially. Who knows? I'm not I'm not sure. I just I think there's some traffic issues that we have to mitigate as well.
I don't mean to debate you, Counsel, but the notion that this is a golf course for 250 members, I think, is categorically contradictory to the notion of us opening up the new.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the members. I'm just saying if it's 200 it's about 250 members. It's open up to the public, but, you know, there's priorities to those members. Again, you can say what there's priorities to the members of when they can play. And then there's the rest of it can be open to the public. And in the winter, you know, the park rec can have some facilities that were open up there too. Looking into some other areas, this is 18 holes. I guess I'm confused by that too because I always thought it was nine holes. So I just when it said it said in your front of your package, it was 18 holes. I'm like, did I miss something? Did we grow double? Do you do two sets?
Go around twice, yep.
Okay, and is that how most of the community golf courses are? Is it they say 18 holes, but you go around twice?
A lot of them are, yeah. There there are a fair amount of nine-hole golf courses out there that you can just play around twice. And they have different tee boxes you hit from when you play the second round.
So a few of them that I did look into that they they actually are run not by the park department. They're run by the recreation department. Is that something that might change in the future? Or is this going to be something that's strictly run underneath the park department?
I would love that. I'm sure Michelle would have something to say about it.
Well, I think if we did that, we we got we went a little too fast in Michelle's budget the other night. So she didn't A, she didn't get a raise, and B.
Yeah, well, hey, listen.
And B, the average 3% that went across didn't actually count for the 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 increase in 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 the help for this summer because the minimum wage actually went up much more than 3%. So Michelle's going to actually be working with much less than she would normally because it was an average 3% that went across the books. And those kids that work for us are entitled to their, you know, their their minimum wage. So that's going to be a problem. But but anyway, that is all my questions. I do appreciate this, and I I do strongly suggest I'm going to back up in one second and just say, I know that this is in the budget. I didn't approve this to be in the budget. I didn't I think we were premature. We didn't really have this is the discussion we should have had last year. I'm glad we're having it this year. I'm concerned because I think I would like to see things slow down tremendously so that you can get your footing to make sure that we know what we're doing before we go changing a whole area or doing certain things that are that might be, you know, just not right for everybody that's there. And suggests that maybe we work with the the group that's that's talking to you and potentially set up something that's a little bit more like how you do the URDPs in the past or different charrettes that we've done in the past so that everybody can feel as though they're 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 not being told that this is already out of the gates. I know a lot of things are out of the gates in the city of Quincy. I'm hoping that this is not. And I trust because you're running it, Dave, that we can work that out.
Yes, Counselor, I I think what you're seeing now is a slowed-down version. I think our original hope was to come into the council in the spring with an appropriation. And I think what you're seeing is a slowdown based on some of the community feedback that we've received. So I I don't know that that's going to satisfy everybody that will ever have unanimous consent.
I don't think every I I personally, I think you maybe people don't know this about me. You cannot satisfy everybody when it comes to that. But you can actually have some good mitigating conversations that can can potentially, you know, cross some bridges for people. And if you can do that, then the projects are usually far more successful because, believe it or not, the people that you engage with can help you make a better project.
I agree.
There's many times in this community that I do not see that happen. They it's it's you're told what this is. You have meetings and it's already done. You know, it is it I've I've been at them and I know they happen. I find them frustrating because I think we could do so much better. This is a great city. We deserve to have open comments and commentary with the people that we're going to be impacting to make sure that we're, you know, we're being able to create what's going to be the best environment for maybe a golf course and a park in a neighborhood or any other project that we're having. So I just I would hate to see you hit miss on something that's important and deserves that kind of open and transparency conversation. Again, I'll go back to I have concerns. I I've had concerns since we started. If we started this many years ago, we probably wouldn't have some of the things. We would have already had some of these things maybe figured out or input provided from the neighborhood. And you might have been before us in the spring. But, you know, we can't go backwards, but we can go forwards. Thank you.
Counsel, I'll say, okay.
With this one.
Okay. Counsel Palmoche.
Thank you. We're doing the whole budget? Okay. Okay. Okay, all right. If I stray afar a a field from somewhere, you've tried to fence this in, just let me know. Because I really don't understand.
Of course.
Okay.
It really wasn't most.
I was I was absent from the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure I can ask some other questions.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Counsel.
So you you have nine holes and you tell people to go around twice and call it 18? You're a heck of a salesman. I like it. I'm going to start telling people I'm 12 feet tall. You just got to count me twice. Can you explain to me the? No, I love it. I love it. Can you explain to me open to the public? You said something that a colleague of mine had made a statement. You said that's not in line with what we presented and what we believe. Just explain to me what do you what does open to the public mean? Like, it's not a trick question. Like, so tell me how we're how the golf course is open to the public.
Sure. So in the past, as a semi-private course, I use my own personal example. I went up there to golf and was told it was a private course and there wasn't a lot of golf up there. I don't know that that's everybody's experience, but that was mine.
It's probably just you, but let's just say in general citizen.
They must know how I golf. So essentially, right now, the the you don't need a membership. You can book an online tee time. You can golf there outside of those premium blocks that are set aside for the membership, which is Friday afternoon, Saturday morning, and Sunday afternoon. What we do do is depending on how many members sign up for those premium times, Tom will free up some of those blocks so you could golf. If there aren't a lot of members golfing on Saturday morning, you can slide in there. You can slide in a Sunday. So as a member of the public, you can go up there and golf when there are open times, Monday Monday through Thursday, Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, Friday morning, and then specific pockets that open up when the members aren't there during those premium times.
What's the benefit of I I don't mean to try. So I understand that that makes sense. What's the benefit of? I've never been involved in the management of a golf course. I, you know, I don't know the business model. What's the benefit of memberships? Is it because you just have a steady stream of of income? Is that what it is? Okay, and so then in order.
For rains.
Right, good point. See, look at you're a great salesman. You're selling golf. You're selling golf even when it rains. So so that's the premium that they get is they get exclusive times, which are preferred times for golfers, I presume, and.
Yes, and our pro runs tournaments through the course of the year for members.
Okay, okay. And do we run public tournaments? Do we run public tournaments, like general public tournaments?
We have not. We have tournaments if the Quincy Fire Department wants to have a charity tournament or something like that. We'd certainly partner with them. There are a handful of tournaments that do that there now. The nine holes does restrict how many folks you can have on them, so it's not the most popular option. But that does happen from time to time. So yes, the public, if the Quincy City Council wanted to have the first annual Quincy City Council golf outing and have a golf tournament up there, there would be spots available. You could call the golf pro and say, you know, Thursday, August 12th, or whatever it may be.
You want to bring Counsel Mahoney up there and give her a club, is what you're saying? I amuse myself. I amuse myself sometimes. So what are we doing? One of the things that you had talked about previously, I'm not a big fan of of being in the golf course business, which you know we've discussed. But you talked about one of the things, excuse me, one of the benefits to having a public course is that you could increase the diversity of of membership and utilization as well as introducing it to perhaps more kids and students who otherwise wouldn't when it's a private course. So can you just tell me? I mean, I don't expect you to have accomplished this yet, but can you tell me kind of what the effort or what the thinking is that you'll do to reach that goal?
Yeah, we actually have the plan in place. Michelle has put together a robust set of programs working with Tom this summer. And it's not just for young people introducing them to golf. It's a beginner golf league where folks go out and play four holes. And it's for folks that, you know, maybe not be sure whether golf is for them or not. They want to try it, but it, you know, they got to adulthood and they want to give it a shot. So we're looking to target every segment of our population. We've got a junior Quincy Junior Golf League that we're going to do. We're going to do the SAG, which is an introductory to golf program that Michelle's been doing in our parks for a number of years. Now we have a a more consistent and reliable facility at the golf course with the putting green, the the net that Coach Salvucci built across the park. So, you know, Michelle has laid out a whole program to get more folks into the game of golf. As you know, golf has a lot of barriers. I mean, if you watch golf, you know that not a lot of diversity in golf.
Right.
It's growing, which is great. But, you know, we have an opportunity as a community, I think, to get more folks up there, whether they're young folks or whether adults that haven't played the game of golf before. And part of that is not just access to programming, but part of it is cost. You can go up there and play around the golf for $20. That's that's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of the things that concerns me, I suppose, is that, you know, we're a city of what about 40% minority population, you know? And I I don't expect you to know, but I would I would venture a guess that the same representation of 40% minorities probably isn't made up, you know, in your membership. So I I think it's important that public facilities represent the city in a way. Obviously, we don't want to force people to do things, but but it's about reaching out to different parts of the community, different income levels, things like that. Do you have a free or reduced membership rate? Obviously, not a free, but I mean, if someone's financially impoverished or or.
Well, I would suggest again that if they're impoverished, they should go through the greens fee piece because it is extremely affordable to golf there. And I guess what I'd say is it relates relates to introducing the game of golf to people of socioeconomic demographic means versus the membership. Even if the membership doesn't represent the groups we're trying to reach, they can certainly underwrite our ability to go out and get those groups into the golf course. So even if they're not represented, they're an important part of us getting the groups in there that aren't in there right now.
No, that that is an important distinction you make. I I think golf I think golf clubs historically have diversity issues. I mean, it's.
To say the least.
Yeah, right. So I just want to make sure that our public facility doesn't, right? So but that's a that's a really good point that what's more important is not the membership, but the actual utilization is is open to everybody. So maybe I'm naive about this, but are all the members Quincy residents?
Are all the members Quincy residents?
Yeah. Do you know what percentage?
I want to say between half and two-thirds, but I'd have to get an actual printout. I haven't seen.
Are or aren't?
Are.
Okay.
But again, Counsel, I'm.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I won't hold you to it.
Estimating.
Yeah. And there's no restriction on who can play? Is there any preference? There's no restriction. Someone from Stoughton can or Randolph can come over and play, right?
We charge them all. There's a resident fee and a non-resident fee. So the course is open to non-residents, but they have to pay more.
Okay. So there is a resident preference?
Yes.
In terms of fee? All right, that's good. Let me see. Okay, can I talk to Mr. Mason about the? Thank you. Good evening, Eric.
Good evening, Counselor.
You were talking about enterprise funds with with Counselor Liang.
Correct.
Um, and I went over and got a private tutoring lesson from the auditor to explain to me what you were explaining to to, you know. But so I guess in the in the memo, is it from you? Yeah, from you. You say it doesn't there's weaknesses in I thought you were just leaving. No, I'm done. You said there's weaknesses in the the model to use an enterprise account.
There's I think every option has a weakness. I think there's some weaknesses in enterprise fund due to the elastic nature of golf demand that and it's very acyclical, unlike water and sewer where like no matter the weather, you have to flush your toilet or you have to drink water, shower. The seasonality of golf can sometimes create issues with that because golf courses, if they're in the surplus, an enterprise fund, if it's in the surplus, can't subsidize the general fund. But if it's in the deficit and it doesn't have fund balance, it would have to take subsidy from the general fund.
But isn't that what happens now if it's a general fund liability?
It it does, but you lose the benefit of if it's a surplus, the general fund gets it. So it's again, there are positives and negatives to it. I think there's no perfect enterprise fund. In fact, it's very if you the law is very unique. It actually doesn't say golf courses. It says recreational facilities. It kind of broadens it up a little.
And so what about a what about setting it up as a revolving fund?
So revolving fund, again, was one of the topics in here. It follows a very similar parameter of the reserve appropriation account, except on the last page, I have some examples of what what actions would have to be taken by the by the body in the for the formation and for annual. Revolving funds are very interesting. Revolving fund is very interesting. Only the, the council chooses to set a cap and specify what can be, it can be expensed on. In the event there's a surplus, it becomes a, it just stays in the fund. In very rare occasions, it can be moved to the general fund, but it has to be tied to expenses directly. And that's because Massachusetts General Law 44, Section 53E, and yes, I feel very weird quoting the law to an attorney. That makes me feel a little awkward, does specify that it has to be related to directly incurred expenses. The concept of indirect expenses doesn't really exist in revolving funds. But revolving funds are cash-based accounting, for lack of a better term, where you only spend exactly how much money's in there. And there's no way to project receipts. So even if you think, so say during the off-season, you know, you have to take a $100,000 expense, which you know you can easily pay for once the fund starts, once the golf tournament starts, the golf starts, you would have to demore on that until you have the funds in, which can really...
You'd have to what on that?
Is it demore, isn't the term?
Demore?
Yeah.
Is that a term? Is it a word?
Pretty sure. I've read that in economics, but we make up words all the time.
Okay.
So like, yeah, we have to defer, I guess I would say.
All right, I'll Google it when you're done talking.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, you would have to wait. So when you do the maintenance during the off-season, you don't have the cash receipts yet. So then you're trying to do maintenance when the golf course is open. I don't think there's any bad option here. They just have strengths, weaknesses. I believe I even mentioned in the memo that I do, I don't see a structural, there's nothing that I can tell you as the director of the state of finance, like, no, that's impossible.
And if it was a revolving fund, if the, if the golf course operated through a revolving fund, how would that affect bonding for capital projects?
There wouldn't be, for, for two reasons. One is materiality. It's, the city has about $400 million in governmental activities a year. The amount of activity up at the golf course, our materiality level is about 500,000.
So, no, I get, no, I don't mean the, the general, the general fund's ability to bond. I mean, the golf course's ability to bond.
Okay. If it's enterprise fund, it's still, they'll still get printed as general obligation bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the city. The reason Massachusetts does that, and it's such a fantastic, Massachusetts has the strongest credit rating across all municipalities because of this, is that every enterprise fund can be subsidized by the general fund.
Right.
So that's something that's baked into our fund structuring. That is why we have very competitive rates for sewer debt and water debt. Even airport debt, it's like pretty sellable in Massachusetts, surprisingly.
So if we're set up as a revolving fund and we take a bond, it would just be through the general fund? It wouldn't?
It would be, it would, sorry, you said through a revolving account?
Yeah, if we had a revolving account.
So if you, if you want to do it through a revolving account, the council does have the authority to say, hey, you know, this can be used to pay debt service also. It would still be backed by the full faith and credit of, of Massachusetts, actually by the City of Quincy, but even on our bonds, Massachusetts is referenced in it too. There's a very centralized borrowing process in the state.
So there wouldn't be any negative ramifications in terms of the golf course's ability to borrow money if it was a revolving account? That's different than if it was an enterprise account?
I actually don't think there'd be that much of materiality between either, to be honest with you, Councilor.
How long do you think it'll take before we, we have a good idea of what the consistent revenue and expenses will be for the golf course?
I would expect by this December. I think that gives us a nice beginning to end viewpoint. It's, if you look at the demand for golf, it's a very, it looks, it's very normal distribution based on weather patterns and the calendar. So I...
Not a lot of winter golfing.
No, I do know some winter golfers, and that's a very confusing thing to me.
Okay. I just hope that if I don't vote for this budget, that I don't see Dave Murphy out there in December kicking me and the Palmucci children off the hills on our sleds. So I'm, I'm, I guess, Eric, I'm, I'm still not convinced that this isn't an albatross around our neck, that we're not just taking on more than we can chew, you know? It's like, it's like someone giving you the gift of a puppy. It's like, oh, yeah, that's great, but now I have to walk it every day and feed it and, and train it and, you know, it's like you're... Of course, she, she says, keep it from biting people. But so, you know, it's great. Like, we have this public utility essentially, and we can do so much with it. But there was never really a discussion, I mean, I'm sure the administration had one, but there was never really a discussion with this body if we, if we wanted to be in the golf business. There are models in which the municipality or county or whatever do an RFP for private management, and then they receive a standardized fee. The municipality receives a standardized fee, and then the company runs the golf course, and they handle the ups and downs and revenue expense issues, right?
Oh, correct. There's examples of all formats. There doesn't seem to be an immense amount consisting in any one of the structures.
Right. And I don't, I don't want to ask you the mayor's thinking, but we, but we would never, there was never a discussion here. There was never a policy. This is, I say this every year, the budget is the policy of the City of Quincy. This is our chance, the council's chance to, to, I guess, have our say about the policy direction of the city. And a lot of times, there is no outside discussion of, of policy decisions such as this, such as the college. So I guess my concern is that we, we haven't been shown, perhaps the administration went through this exercise internally, but we haven't been shown why this makes the most sense. We haven't been shown the multiple options. Sell it to a private golf course company, maintain the land, own it, and, and do a lease for a private company to run it or own it outright. Those, to me, are the three, three options. And we just are going with one option, and we're being asked to, to fund it. And I still have questions about whether or not this is the option we should go in. So I have a little bit of a, of a hard time. Again, I'm not convinced. I'm not saying that I know one of the options is better. I just don't know enough at this point. The revenue, first of all, we say it's going to be revenue neutral, or we anticipate it'll be revenue neutral.
It's certainly a possibility. I would say based on the modeling, based on the expense, that that's very rational.
But does that include the vast amount of capital improvements that we have to make?
That's purely based on operational because we, we haven't had capital improvement. Depending on what that found note would look like, we could certainly model that in. You spoke earlier about the revolving account. That would be an example. Obviously, enterprise fund, I know the council is very familiar with that. Revolving account, you would actually, you could work that into that financial model too. And it's a defined variable, yes.
And that's why I raised it, because that's what I was thinking, that it would be cleaner to me if the golf course was a little more separate in terms of the operational expenses, that's fine, because that's not the thing that's, to me, that's not the, that's not what's going to get you. You know, you'd be off by a fraction, one way or the other, you know? Five, 10% maybe, you know? But it's the capital, it's the capital expenditures and the capital needs. And Mr. Murphy had mentioned tonight that there was, there was a lot of capital needs that had not been met under the prior ownership that now we take over and we have an obligation to fix. Obviously, we have resources, but it's how much resources are we willing to commit to the golf course? So saying it's revenue neutral is operational only. When you take into account the capital needs, I mean, we, the projection is what? Six to eight million dollars over the short term?
Yeah, so if we look at the stated revenues of about $853,000 that Commissioner Murphy brought up, and we see about the $480,000 in operational expense, that leaves a difference of about $400,000. I mean, this current rate environment, $400,000 would support about six and a half to seven million dollars. I can hash out that number much better than off the top of my head, but generally speaking, $1.4 million of revenue equals $20 million of 20-year, of $20 million worth of 20-year bonds.
1.4 million?
Yes, give or take, in a five, in a rounded four to five percent interest rate environment.
Okay. Because I, I think the golf course should be, there are people who run them as profitable enterprises. I don't think cities, and our city should be, but if we're going to, and it looks like that's the decision that's been made without discussion here, I would hope that we can do it in a way that doesn't burden the taxpayer, that makes it self-sufficient in operational and capital projects. Because I think we've been told revenue projections three or four times since the transition was about to begin, and every time they've gone down. It was like, it was supposed to be a million dollars, then I think it was 800,000, and I think I saw somewhere in here that it's 600,000, which doesn't exactly fill me with confidence. Is that wrong?
Yeah.
That's six months. Will you step up to the microphone and tell me? So correct me, I mean, I'm not, I'm not playing gotcha, like...
I understand, Councilor.
What am I missing?
The 600 figure was for the six months of fiscal '22. The projection for the 12 months in fiscal '23 was that 840-something number.
Okay. But that was still down from a million, right? Didn't we, didn't I, I remember seeing something that was projected a million.
Yes, the million is what we discussed with Councilor Mahoney. That's the, kind of the formula the state has, and it's quite interesting. It has days, sunny days and stuff like that. So, but that was before we began operation of the golf course.
Okay.
So once those variables become clearer and clear, the modeling can become more and more precise.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mason. I do have just a couple of the questions. I apologize, I missed your presentation on Monday evening. The tree warden obviously departed, was, was poached away because he was such a great talent. I think I, I'll say this publicly because I, I think I said it to you in an email or on the phone, that it's very rarely that you see like an uproar from residents about any city employee, you know, leaving and taking another job. But, you know, I got a bunch of emails, I think probably other councilors did too, that like, we got to replace him with someone just as good. This guy was great. So it's a big loss, and I know you're working on that, trying to fill that void. What, what's the plan with trees overall? Not just a warden, but what's the operational plan for the year?
Sure, there are two factors in this particular budget council that impact, there are many, but there are two in particular I want to bring your attention to as it relates to trees. You know, one is a requested increase in our tree pruning and removal line. Primarily that is to try and catch up with the backlog that was submitted. I'm sorry if it was a lot of data in the spreadsheet. We have about 417 outstanding requests from residents for our tree work. I know that I hear from a lot of the councilors, probably more so on tree issues than any other issue. Some of that, it isn't all tree pruning and removal. Some of that is to do some projects in both Faxon Park and in Forbes Hill Park. But we're requesting additional money to try to keep up with the demand so that we can get into more of an urban forestry management program instead of a crisis management program as it relates to trees. I sent out a, a couple of slides and a link to the Seattle/Washington website. We're working with Steve Washburn and Jacqueline Devon from our GIS department, and they have developed a urban forestry management website tool that I think is going to be the envy of Massachusetts. They've done incredible work, and we're inputting a lot of odd data into it. We are very close to hiring a new tree warden. We have an offer out there. It's a, the profile is similar to Chris Haywood, and fortunately, Chris was, his personality was such, he's going to be very difficult to replace, even with the credentials. But it's a tree warden from another municipality, certified tree warden from another municipality, that we're hoping to land. And I suspect that we'll be announcing that by the end of this, this week and starting him in mid-January, uh, mid-June, sorry. So that's as it relates to the outstanding tree requests in our urban forestry management. We do have a request for 400,000. Last year, the council approved an increase from 300 to 400. With that, we planted 551 new trees. Our tree planting to removal ratio is now at 3.24 with the city. If you combine our partners from DCR, who through their Greening the Gateways are planting approximately 400 per year, our city is planting 5.8 trees right now for every tree that's removed. That's something we should be proud of. That's a goal that we should be attaining right around that number five, to make sure that we can keep up with our canopy. And, and, and some of the work that we're doing through GIS measures canopy in each neighborhood, recognizes where we have deficiencies, where we have to do more planting, and we're working with the DCR on that. And I, I think that's going to be an extremely helpful tool, not just internally, but for the public to understand what we do and why we do it.
Very good. The 400 or five, the 500 trees that we did last year, how does that compare historically? Are we, are we moving in the right direction in terms of how many trees we're doing? Because if we still have a backlog, obviously we're not.
So as far as new trees go, absolutely. We, we went from 300,000 a year, which I think was only in the budget for the last number of years. I think that's a relatively new phenomenon, to 400,000 last year. So that, there's efficiencies of scale there too. So 551, I would suggest is probably the most trees we've planted in history in one year through the, through a budget appropriation.
Okay. You don't remember how many we did the year before?
I do. It was increased because we did 100 trees at Concade alone, but it was a number that was just over 500.
Okay. Okay. And the GIS, the mapping of trees, I feel as though we've discussed this before and that this was already to be done or done. What's the, tell me about the whole GIS world and our tree mapping.
So we are doing it. We have an active tree inventory that has been maintained. Every time Mr. Haywood would go to out to do a tree assessment, it would go into our inventory, into our GIS system.
Can I, I'm just going to jump in and say, is every tree accounted for in the system?
So it has been accounted as an existing tree. So we can count the number of trees that were captured in the flyover.
Yeah.
The actual data that has been drilled down as far as species, condition, size, et cetera, we need to continue to populate that data.
That's just ongoing.
Yes. So one of the exciting attributes of the tree warden that I believe we'll be hiring has been the community that he works in, which has far fewer trees. Not a lot of communities have 20,000-plus tree trees like we do. We're very lucky. They worked with an outside company to come in and populate that data in a short amount of time, so...
Just like a contracted service, just?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't we use the, the kids who aren't going to get hired in the rec program, right? I mean...
Everything will be a maple.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's good. Are we still, we still doing the tree fund thing, or is that just never gotten off the ground?
Which tree fund thing?
Yeah, okay, well, that answers the question. When you said replacing trees at a five to one ratio, does that include, is that just public trees or is that private trees as well?
Public trees.
Public trees?
Right.
So do we, do we calculate private trees lost?
Only if they're removed and invoke the tree protection ordinance. The council passed a number of years ago, the tree protection ordinance, which deals with trees that are cut down as it relates to development of holding a permit, and trees that are eight-inch in caliper are larger. So there is a bit of a loophole that if I had a 12-inch caliper tree on my property and I wanted to plant a garden and I cut it down, there would be no mitigation required at all. If I was putting a shed there or some other structure and had to pull a permit, I'd have to present a planting plan to the tree warden and either replenish the tree canopy on the property or pay into a mitigation fund.
Right. The other loophole is you buy a big forested, not that there are too many, but you buy a lot with significant number of trees that you plan on developing. You immediately cut down all the trees while you do your design phase for six to eight months and then request your permit, and you don't have to pay into the tree fund because you have a cleared lot.
That's true.
Never quite got off the ground the tree fund, unfortunately. It was a good idea. I believe it was Councilor Coughlin's idea, but...
We're working right now, Councilor, with a property on Adam Street that is going to have a significant liability as it relates to the, the tree protection ordinance. We did a massive survey before that lot was cleared. Mr. Haywood did it for us with help from Mr. Cosgrove, who's a certified obus who works for us. And, you know, they have a liability based on how many trees that they replace on those properties, close to $100,000. So my guess is that those properties will be planted.
Yeah.
And we're not going to receive a check for $100,000 into that tree fund.
Right.
But...
Which is fine. I mean, at the end of the day, we just want more trees.
My, my guess is that there'll be some type of hybrid solution to, to get that level of tree cover that they need to, to meet their requirement of the ordinance.
I mean, at a certain point, if you're, if you're, I don't know how the science works, but if there's a certain, we get to a certain point where you can determine whether or not a tree is likely over eight-inch caliper. From the surveys, you can see, you know, we could put in legislation that says, you know, if you take it down period, right, without timing, in terms of it's not tied to a permit, right? Like what you were saying, clearing for your garden, you take down a, a tree. A brain tree has a very aggressive tree ordinance that they're considering, which is both public and private, and I think it's like a four to one. It's like if you take down a tree, you got to put four up, including the, the city itself. Okay. And then this downtown coordinator, and the downtown, sorry, I wanted your memo. That's, that falls under your department?
So within the budget, I, I think the council is aware of the process which led to this being split evenly between public buildings and the Department of Natural Resources. I think the attempt was to create a separate downtown department when that wasn't successful. Plan B was to put the positions between natural resources and public buildings. So half of the salaries for each of these positions is in the DNR budget and half is in the public buildings budget.
Not, this isn't necessarily directed at you, but that, it's definitely not directed at you, but that entirely misses the point of why we didn't want a downtown department. Speaking for myself only, I didn't want a downtown department because I don't like, I, I don't like the idea that we have certain neighborhoods that have dedicated services that other neighborhoods do not. That creates a system of haves and have-nots. And I think it's a bad precedent to set. I understand, I understand the mayor's reasoning for these positions. I, I don't disagree that these facilities need to be maintained. We spent a significant number of tax dollars on fountains and statues and, and public spaces that need to be maintained. I just, I would prefer to see them as general positions added to a budget. And if that happens to be part of their work, then that's part of their work. But having someone whose job is specifically downtown, when you don't have someone whose job is specifically Germantown or West Quincy or Brewer's Corner or, you know? It just, it doesn't feel right to me. I didn't, yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't look good when, you know, my soapbox is a little bit here, when it was the downtown and its revitalization has been 100% built off of the support from these other neighborhoods. It was their tax dollars, and it's, and it's the, the support that the rest of the city gave to the revitalization of the downtown that's created this nice area that we want to keep nice. But now it's like, okay, well, thanks, and we're going to, you know, have this enclave of, of, not to mention, there's very little affordable housing in the downtown. There's, there's a nice project that Leo Martin is, is building, that's significant affordable housing. But if you look around in terms of the, the large-scale apartment buildings that have been built, there, there's no affordable housing. So now you're, you're creating a neighborhood of, of a certain economic distinction that has dedicated service people hired by the city to make their neighborhood clean and keep their neighborhood functioning when you don't have that in, in other parts of the city. It just, it's, it's not a good look. I find it troubling. So I don't know if anyone is going to cut that. I'd be happy to cut that, but I'm not going to. I, I've made, I've, I've tended to make cuts to it before. I've said my piece. I won't, I won't, I won't belabor it by making everyone take a vote on it because I, I think I, I think I speak for myself here, but... Thank you. You do a great job. You do a great job. Keep up the good work. You're talking about poaching talent, and you know, when you have someone as good as our tree warden was, it's natural to lose him. Made me think of how Randolph must have felt a couple of years ago, right? We poached some talent.
You'd have to ask him.
Yeah. No, they were happy to see you go? Let's get into it then. They were happy to see you go, is what you're saying? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll go to Councilor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave, thanks for putting all this together. Dave and Eric, such last minute, nice to see this come together. Great thoughts coming from my colleagues tonight, especially on the public access piece of the club. Curiously, is there a charter for the, for the membership? For some sort of governing document on membership outside of what's offered?
Not under the public course, there is not.
Would there be? Like, could we make one?
I, I suppose we could.
Yeah, I only ask that because I think, I think there's some valid points in saying that, you know, if we're gonna make this a community course, let's make it a community course and give preferential access to the residents of the city, right? The minority angle is interesting, even though I was just talking to my colleague, Councilor Yang, she said the AAPI community does not necessarily play too much golf.
I don't play golf.
Yeah. Just, you know, as a data point. But, but yeah, just to have something that we can, we can use as a guide for public access and for membership, because I think that that would be an integral part of this piece, to make it a little bit more palatable, I think, if that's what this issue is about. And for the stormwater management piece, when should we expect, I guess, more info on the plan from Fussin O'Neal? And I know that isn't necessarily being run from your department, but I know that you're in close coordination with others, so.
Well, Councilor, I would have expected us to have some preliminary information at this point. I think the reason why we don't is the plan inside the park has evolved, right? So depending on what happens in there, we want to make sure that we mitigate any existing problems, but make sure that what we're doing new is actually an improvement. So I would ask for a couple more weeks till we come up with a plan and allow concurrently the kind of park golf course combination plan to evolve to that point where we could come up with drainage based on that.
Okay. Yeah, because that sounds like a main component of this, too, especially going forward. And so I get the piece about the, the membership subsidizing the operations of the club, right, and making it possible for there to be no restrictions and for, you know, reduced rates for people to play, open to the public, quote unquote. But I'm curious as to what our other options would be to just make this more accessible. So President's Golf Course is in fact a public golf course, correct? It's managed by Norfolk County, but it is a public golf course. How is that operation funded?
Similar. They have annual permits or memberships. My understanding is that they're in the process of phasing those out and going to a full public, eliminating memberships, if you will.
Just open?
Just open, yeah.
Okay. So something to consider is, again, as we move forward, what could be a supportive and sustainable model for this operation if it's to stay as this operation so that the space can remain open, the club can be viable, provides ultimate access as a public utility to the city and to residents, you know, but how would we fund that is an important question? And then I suppose if it didn't, you know, operate as a golf course, what are our options?
I would think we'd be spending a particular amount of money maintaining it as a 45-acre park. You know, that would come at a substantial cost. But if you're talking about not running a nine-hole golf course, you know, I, I think, you know, you start with open space and you work backwards from there. What are your options as an open space parcel? Considering the activity, the Granite Links gets up at the driving range, we could probably make as much revenue operating a driving range as we could.
Oh, to do something like that? Yeah, for sure.
I say that in jest. I do also want to suggest that the membership up there has more value than the financial contribution that they make. They have become kind of the community up there. They look after the course, they make sure that the people are using it, using it right. So I don't want to discount the value in dollars and cents that the membership has up there, being part of that community and making it the club for many years and now kind of standing by the city during the crossover, if you will. I don't want to miss making that point and, you know, offend folks that have been very active up there for a number of years.
Totally fine, and I appreciate that. I just want to look at it from a dispassionate angle that is dollars and cents from the decisions that we have to make up here tonight, right? So, yeah, just, I'm just curious. I want those questions to be out. Again, I appreciate the work that you've done in providing more information along this process that we've been going through and trying to acclimate the city to running this course. I'll be making these publicly available and sending them out to residents in Ward Three. And, you know, we've been talking about this for two hours and I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve on the table. Council McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Murphy, for the presentation. I think one thing that, you know, and I think Council Kane touched on it a little bit about if it wasn't a golf course, I think we'd be fighting every developer from every corner of, of land up there. I know that there's been a lot of passionate emails going back and forth from the Forbesville residents, but that golf course is beautiful and it'll just get better, in my opinion, up there. The administration's made a few moves. They grabbed the Marina in Ward One down on Southern Artery. That would be another prime spot on the water for a developer. They took the Hamel and Wickens Funeral Home over here to look forward to a Presidential Library down the road. And I was glad, even though it's not in my ward, but I'm glad that the Furnace Brook Golf Course is, is gonna say. The Council Palmucci's point about nine holes and then playing another nine, usually I'm good for the front nine and then I want to give up, so I play too much in the woods. So I usually don't make that back nine. But to operate a community golf course and to kind of bring it forward to the point of having all citizens having a crack at it for, for years, and we've had this conversation, that private-public aura that was up there really made a lot of people that if you weren't in the North Quincy-Wallaston area, you really didn't go near it. You didn't know what the rules were, you didn't know if you could play up there. If you had an inn up there, you, you kind of went with it and you knew what was going on, but most of the city didn't. I think by being public now and getting it out there that it's available, I, I think you're really gonna take off because your rates are really good. I know that Tom has experienced municipal golf courses before his days at Granite Links. He was at Pottery Ham over in Brookline, by Brookline Country Club. He knows how to run a public golf course, a great pick. And I think, Mr. Murphy, the staff, well, the staff with the superintendent, the golf pro, the four people, is it the same, was that the same number that we had up there with the prior group?
Yes, it's three full-time positions.
Yeah, so, you know, to me, I look at it as the way we do everything in Quincy, usually when it comes to almost all projects, they're gonna make sure it's a, it's a jewel. It's a jewel of the city. I think that'll, it'll work out, it'll, it'll work out in the end for everybody that has concerns. And I know that, you know, you put together a good staff and we got lucky with Tom Ellis and company to show up at the right time to take over something like this and to turn a nine-hole course into a, a moneymaker. Quick question. Braintree Golf Course, how does the town of Braintree do with that in regards to bringing in the dollars?
The golf business is very strong right now, Councilor, whether it's the Braintree Municipal Golf Course, whether it's President's, whether it's Furnace Brook, the golf business is very strong right now. It seems like from the pandemic on, the golf business has been very strong. I think they make a few hundred thousand dollars. I know they have a golf simulator that makes $103,000 this year that they put out for three months in the wintertime. They have two simulators there, and they didn't have a single hour that wasn't booked this winter. So Braintree's doing very well, President's doing very well. I guess what I'd say to the modeling question that's come up a couple of times between Council McCarthy and Council Palamucci is, we do have another golf course. We do have a private entity that runs a golf course that the city of Quincy owns. We don't have to speculate what that might look like. Granite Links is city of Quincy, or at least partly city of Quincy, and we, we have a private provider that runs it, and it's a fantastic championship golf course. But nobody's gonna confuse public access and Granite Links. You know, when we bring in a third party and the profit motive gets involved, it's a different product. We don't want to be Granite Links. We want to be the best Furnace Brook golf course we can possibly be. And I think, you know, I, I think from the thinking of where the city's coming from, getting into the golf course business, I think that's kind of a contrast to what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor. I'm gonna take a personal privilege. I have not spoken yet, and I want to have a couple of things I want to say. Just a moment of personal privilege. I sit on the Norfolk County Advisory Board, so I'm very familiar with President's Golf Course and how that has been run, and it has a lot of similarities to Furnace Brook. And they do make money. There's no question they make money. And I've looked at the plan, I've looked at what, what's been put together, and I'm very confident that we can take this in and do it. I'm happy to see the things. I know Council Kane has worked very hard on it, the things for the neighborhood with the stormwater management study, with the, now they're gonna do a tree survey up there, all of that, and look at the invasive species, I think is extremely necessary. And obviously, we have not finalized anything on a new golf club or anything like that, and that's something that I think needs to move very slowly and has to have community input and all that. And I know Council Kane will be very much on top of that. I am in very strong support of this. For years, I've sat there. I've also played regularly golf since I was 18 years old. And yes, you do go around twice on nine holes. I've done it several times over the years. And I know several municipal golf courses, all the way from the city of Boston, city of Brockton, Braintree, you go down Plymouth-South Shore, they're all over the South Shore, and they're all run by municipal golf courses. And I think one of the, I also, as Councilor, when I brought up Furnace Brook Parkway, and I had the same experience, I was told I could not golf on it as a city council. And I looked up the deed, found out they were not giving golf to North Quincy High School, they were not giving golf to Quincy High School, which is part of their deed, and they were not posting their prices. And I, at the time, it was, it was Mayor McCauley, and I made the rec department post those, those fees. I made sure that both Quincy and North Quincy got tee times at Furnace Brook. And from that day on, I said, this can't go on the way it is. It's not good for the neighborhood, it's not good, it's a private golf course, and we pay the taxes every year for it. And I thought it was a sham that was perpetrated on the people. So I am very supportive of the, the city had to step in and take this over because I don't think it was right the way it was being run before. I know some, a lot of those people back then, feel like an old man now. That's, that's, those people are long gone. And some of the people there, they're trying to do the right thing. And like Norfolk County, we've had, we've had membership for a long time. And also the county, the golf course always returns money. And what people all remember is a little before the pandemic, golf was way down. And one of the ways President's Golf Course supported itself was having memberships. And that provided a steady stream of revenue and it's never, since 1975, my first political action was helping then Representative Mike Morrissey get petitions signed to not allow presidents to go out as development and that plan be set aside as open space. And one of the big, best ways you can put open space aside with trees, grass, is golf courses and make it economically viable so we can afford to do it. I think this, this plan, I think we need some more fleshing out on it, we need some more, and obviously the council needs to be involved. But I am strongly in support of the budget, strongly in support of, of keeping Furnace Brook open space and a golf, and I think community golf course there is the perfect thing to allow the women's golf team, the men's golf team, all the golf there. And I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to take something and make, make something great out of it. But also taking into consideration that people are around it and taking the neighbors' considerations, and I think that is ultimately the most important thing. So we have a motion on the table. I'm done, so I know other councils want to speak, but right now we have a motion on the table, so I'll, Council Yang?
Thank you. Commissioner, the, I had a chance to read through the lease agreement that was provided to us. I see a couple of signatures on here, but the solicitor has not signed our copy yet. Is this in effect already?
Yes, it is. You may have gotten a copy that I copied and passed it up to the solicitor. So that may just be a matter of timing when, that, that might be my copy. He wrote it, so I'm sure he's gonna sign it as to form, so.
Yeah.
If he disagreed with himself, we'd be in big trouble.
I, I do. That's why I'm asking, because I, you know, I was hoping you'd say, no, it's not final, we can make some changes. So again, this goes back to why I'm grateful that we have, you know, just a short period of time where we can revisit this. I'm looking specifically at the condition, the bullet point, number 12, the additional conditions regarding operations. And it says here that, I understand, and because I asked you earlier about how we are going to be responsible for the renovations of the space, but I did not realize that that also included the depreciating items within the space, so things like stove, sinks, fryolators, freezers, microwaves, plates, silverware, right? All of those things are, in and of themselves, they may not be that much, right? But because these are all depreciating items, you know, that is concerning to me. It does say that if they want to bring in anything of their own, they will be responsible for it. That, that totally makes sense. It's, in my experience, you know, if we are, I have to see, now I have to flip my brain, right? We're the landlord now, not the retailer. So, you know, as a retailer, if we're bringing in items and renovating a space, right, and, and we're paying for that, that helps to then offset, you know, rent to a certain extent, right? Because we're investing in a fryolator and, you know, the landlord then owns it if and when we ever leave that space as the retailer, right? But again, it, it all gets factored into how the rent then gets determined, right? And in this case, it does, to my understanding anyways from reading this, it does not impact the rent. However, we are the ones responsible for and owning and maintaining depreciating assets, whereas the retailer does not. That is something that I would like to see changed. I understand, you know, respectfully, as a legal document, it can't at this point. But, you know, if we're, with this and other entities moving forward, acting as a landlord, you know, I think it's important that we set a standard and a precedent moving forward because, you know, a couple of times even mentioned tonight, right, there's going to be turnover of people, of staff. At some point, the talent, right, in this, like, we're all going to be gone at some point, right? And folks in the future will likely, I would hope, reference back to what has been done in the past, what's done here tonight, right, what's done here in this lease. And we have to protect our, protect our assets, right? I'm not in the interest of gouging residents, I'm certainly not in, you know, in the business of gouging retailers here, so I'm not trying to propose that they assume all the, the risk here. I simply just get a little bit nervous when I look and see that they are at a base rent right now that's not going to change. However, we are taking on the responsibility of the space and the depreciating assets within that space, right? So just in the future, you know, when it comes to reevaluating this in three years' time, and if I could make the request, you know, to any department that oversees a project acting as a landlord, so, you know, any building that we in the future come in as a landlord, whether it's another golf course, whether it's another building, whatever it may be, if we are in that business of doing it and entering into any lease negotiations, I would just ask that when it comes to depreciating assets, that we think about how we can split those costs between us and whoever that tenant or retailer is. Because, again, it's, we absolutely have to split interests, right, and split costs and investments here because everybody benefits, right? And so everyone should assume a risk. I just would like to selfishly, you know, make sure that we protect our assets as much as possible and reduce our risk as much as possible. So I'm disappointed that this lease can't be changed, particularly with that, that bullet point, but I appreciate the opportunity in, in flagging this and having this conversation with you to hopefully change any, you know, future lease agreements. So thank you for clarifying. Thank you for, you know, hearing me out on that concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, Council Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Changing the subject from golf courses to, I know the, and mostly inspired by Councilor Yang, because she just mentioned that piece of the lease, the Marina that we purchased, is that falling underneath parks?
I'm sorry?
The Marina that the city purchased recently.
Council Mahoney, we're on the budget right now?
I know we are.
I know.
I'm asking simply, no, no, I'm asking a simple question, if it falls in the park. I'm just asking, it's, it was, it was purchased for the, it was purchased as a, as a park, and today I'm just asking if it's falling underneath Mr. Murphy's department.
So it's currently being managed by the city's property management, RFQ with Granite City Partners. I think long-term, it'll be under this department. I think what we're planning now is a public process to go through a, kind of a master plan to unlock both the Marina and the adjacent Tide Mill property. As we all know, the Tide Mill property has sat fallow for a long period of time since it was taken over by the city and probably took. since it was taken over by the city in probably 2003, 2004, 2005. It's used by the lobstermen, really has a lot of potential that hasn't been unlocked. And I think we are going to go through a public planning process probably this summer where we talk about potential uses for both of those properties.
Okay. The reason why I ask is because it was, when it was mentioned, it was going to be a, it was for the parks. The park departments actually asked for the request for it to be purchased. I'm just asking because it does fall underneath there. And I know they collect rents there, and that's a whole other problem that the city has. So I would like to make a cut to this budget. And I appreciate the fact that Council Palmucci was like, it would be mute because it won't pass. But the point of the matter is I'm very much in agreement with what he was suggesting. And I had highlighted it and mentioned it to him as well and said, although I know this won't pass, and it might, it's, the real point of the matter is that our downtown and soon to be our waltz and will be treated differently than the rest of the city of Quincy. And we pay our taxes in the city of Quincy, and the DIF pays down, you know, DIF pays for itself. We're always being told things pay for itself. But, you know, we get special, we do not get the special treatment that the downtown has. I can tell you, when snow removal is happening, when you're seeing certain things happening, you're seeing it happen in the downtown, but you're seeing people walk over Quarry Hill, walking over Quarry Hill, and they're almost getting killed because they're walking in snowbanks because we don't have that same treatment. We don't have special, you know, snow plows removing snow throughout our whole city, but we have it in the downtown. And we have it in the downtown because we have these special little pockets of money that are being spent. And it's not fair to the rest of the city. Now, we were all on board, people were all on board for improving our city, improving the downtown, improving our destinations where our trains are. However, we're not getting, what we're getting is we're getting extra special treatment for different areas. So I'd like to cut 501, 402, 502, 074. And I believe those two add up to, I had the number somewhere.
Counsel, are you offering that as an amendment? Because we have a motion on the floor.
Yep, it's an amendment to the motion. Yep.
Okay, on the amendment.
On the amendment. I would like to cut 501, 402 for $51,988, and 502, 074 for $115,030.
Just give us one second to get all those.
What was the total again?
What was the total, Counsel? I'm sorry. I'm trying to catch up here.
I think I wrote it down somewhere. Sorry. Yep, the parks. $167,018.
Okay, the motion is to cut 167,018.
In eighteen.
In eighteen dollars.
Eighteen dollars.
And eighteen dollars.
Yep.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. On the motion, we'll collect, read the roll. This motion is an amendment, which is, which is to cut 167,018 from the, from the parks budget. On the, on the motion.
It's a point of clarification here, and this might be for Commissioner Murphy. The downtown coordinator, can you remind me the additional department that you share that expense with? Public buildings. Thank you.
I'll be making the same cut in that public building soon.
Okay. So we have the motion on the floor. Clerk will read the roll. A yes vote will be for the cut. This is an amendment to the motion. So a yes vote will be for the cut of 167,000. A no vote will, we keep it as is. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
No.
Counsel DeBona.
No.
Counsel Harris.
Counsel Yang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
No.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
No.
Five members have failed.
Okay, on the, on the, on the main motion, which is the next motion, this is to accept the parks budget. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Sorry, what are we voting on?
Just on the budget.
We're voting on the parks budget.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Yang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci. Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Seven members have passed.
Seven members have passed. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay. All right. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to the rest of the budget. The first item on the agenda, I lost my batting average, will be the library. Megan Allen.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. On the motion, Counsel.
Good evening. Good evening. So sorry that you're leaving. I don't, I don't know what we're going to do without you. You'll, you'll be fine. In fact, I wanted to say, if you'll indulge me a minute. By all means. Since this is my last opportunity to speak to you is, I'd just like to thank this body for the support you've given the library over the years. I have one of my trustees with me here tonight, May Miasse, May Miasse. And my board trustees has been also incredibly supportive. And while I'm at it, the mayor and his team, and my fellow department heads, some of whom are here tonight, that I've worked with collaboratively all these years, it's what's made it possible for the library to do what it does. And then I have to give the real shout out to my staff. It just, I just, there could not be a more outstanding, hardworking, creative bunch of people. So they are the library. So I think without me being here, you won't really notice that much difference because they'll still be doing what they do every day, seven days a week. So.
I'm glad you're confident in that.
I am.
Every, just about everything I said about the golf course and what my concerns are about the golf course, it's like the flip side. Like, my concerns are that it won't be a diverse place that's inviting to diverse economic, ethnicity. The library is the model, right? It is the way it reaches people of all ages, colors, nationalities, languages. It's just an amazing place. I think it is one of the, one of the jewels of our city. And I just, you do a tremendous job, your staff does, and I obviously will support the budget. And very sorry to see you go, and thank you for all of your years of service in helping make the library really the jewel that it is in our city.
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody? Oh, Counsel Yang, Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Counsel Kane.
I, yeah, this sucks. You're phenomenal. I just wanted to say that, you know, to echo Counsel Palmucci's points, just working with you over the years and seeing everything that you have created and then has then been flawlessly executed by your team, it's unmatched, right? I, I think you have huge shoes, or the next person has huge shoes to fill. And, you know, every year that I've seen you come up here anyways, it's been an easy yes, for good reason, right? Again, the work speaks for itself every single day of the year. And you include us in that process, right? You make sure that we're aware of everything that you guys are doing. You give us opportunities to participate. What you have created is a huge service to, to all families across the city, right? The language education programs, the volunteer opportunities, the things that you offer for kids and parents to just come and have a safe place to, you know, to learn and to hang out after school. I mean, you've built new libraries for us, right? It's just, you have kept up and maintained the libraries. You've brought in new programs and equipment, right? You've trained new staff. It's just, I mean, you have been, when people talk about equity and creating these amazing opportunities, it's about being intentional to execute it properly, right? And you've done that. You've just, you've, I think, set the standard. I talked earlier about setting the standard for those who come after you, and you've done that. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you. You've become a great friend, mentor, somebody that I've really enjoyed working with, and I've learned a lot from you. And yeah, I just, you know, even though you're not officially going to be here, I guess I would just make an ask that you, you know, remain in touch, that you continue to come back to Quincy. And yeah, continue to just, you know, provide your insight and your professionalism. You're just, you're amazing, Megan. And it's definitely a huge loss. But yeah, always happy to support this. And it's because, again, the way that you run this ship, it's an easy yes. So congratulations on your next move, and thank you so much for your service over the years.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I just want to apologize that we took so long in the last budget because, you know, because, you know, you should have probably gone first. But I also wanted to thank you. And then, and just to say, you know, this is kind of close to my heart because my dad was a big user of the library. And he read two, he had two Kindles going during the pandemic, and the library feeded him, like, the Quincy Public Library gave him a lot of sources for that. And over the course of my time raising my family in the city of Quincy, the public library is just such a gem in the city of Quincy. And the things that we offer our families here are by far, I don't believe anybody can match what we have done. And you also, through the pandemic, also dealt with a lot of renovations that were happening in our city. And, you know, it doesn't, that's, that's enormous what you had to go through in the last couple of years, between the pandemic and then also the renovations. And I think North Quincy just opened up. Am I right about that, I hope?
North Quincy opened in February, yes. And we're not quite ready. There's a couple of little bits and pieces we're still finishing, but there will be some kind of an open house or grand opening later in the year.
So it's just, it's amazing how much you've accomplished and how much work has been put into it. I hope it wasn't the renovations of the pandemic that made you decide to, to retire or leave us. But I just wanted to thank you. And I, I just remember when, and this is just, it's hard for me to talk about this because it's about my dad. But I remember when the library opened up to the public again during the pandemic. And he went in and you moved a few things around, and he was yelling at me saying, why did they move these things around? I'm like, you know, Dad, there was a lot of stuff going on, you know, and it, but it was, it was just a treasure for him. He went every Saturday to the library, and he, you know, reveled in it. And if, he took a book out from me, and I didn't get it back in time. I got the 50 cent charge or the charge, whatever it was that was late because I was always the one that brought it back late. But, you know, again, it's, I could, the services that are there, everything that's done, open to the public. And it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's a value in what you've done and what you've accomplished. And I know it's going to be tall shoes for people to fill, but I just wanted to say thank you very much. And congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your retirement and a couple of good books.
I'll be reading a lot more.
Counsel Kane. Thank you. Hi, Megan. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Congratulations. I know that you and I haven't had too much personal interaction, but I certainly watch all of your amazing work from afar. I'm always recommending the programming through the Thomas Crane system to my constituents, to Ward Three Newsletter that I put out regularly. And, you know, I have such fond memories and attachments to the system, you know, growing up, walking down to the Wallaston branch, playing the piano at the house tours that they used to have up on Hospital Hill to raise funds for the expansion on the library, right?
Twenty years ago.
Right, long time ago. I was smaller then, still very talented. But, yeah, but it's amazing to see how well the system has been able to keep up with multimedia and to stay relevant with the times across, you know, books, computers, technology, you know, personal services for adults and children alike, and just creating such a special outlet for the residents of the city to have access to. And I'm very grateful for that and the work that you've done. So I hope you enjoy your retirement, if you are in fact retiring. I hope you do, as you say, get to read more, considering that you are in a place where you're promoting the concept and now hopefully get to enjoy it on the other side. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Megan, Megan, I've worked with you both as a department head and as a city councilor. And you've been a real professional, and you've always, your heart and soul has been put into the library. So, and I know it from even working with you. And I just want to congratulate you on your retirement, but you'll be very missed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other councils? Okay, motion on the floor. All in favor? All opposed, seen none. Thank you very much, Megan.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda. So moving right along, let's go right into the Health Department budget. Motion to approve. You want, you, okay, motion to approve. On the motion, Counsel Yang.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, Marley. I am very grateful for everything that you've done over your very short time with us. And I am very impressed. Again, you know, we talk a lot about, I think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to commend department heads and the staff for their work when folks are up here during budget season, but ultimately, it's to discuss numbers, right? And whenever I look again at former year's spending and I see, you know, just how diligent you are about spending up to what you have and, you know, making sure that you're making the best use out of the funds, it's very impressive what you've done here. There were a couple of questions that I had that I had an opportunity to speak to you about earlier that I'd love for you to just clarify for this body as well and for folks who are tuning in and looking at these numbers, just to explain the three things that had been flagged. But I was comfortable with your answers, and that's why I was comfortable motioning to approve. So the first one, as you remember, was the overtime, I think for obvious reasons, right? Your department had a lot of overtime that needed to be covered, and I appreciate that you, you know, asked accordingly for this coming fiscal year to make sure that that was covered. The second piece was clarifying the pump out boat line, just what that is. And if you can explain to us, you know, past expenditures for that line as well as future ones. And then the third one was that the contracted line item was added here. So if you, again, could just clarify for this body here, what you explained to me and clarify that for the public, that'd be helpful.
Good evening, councilors. We are asking for three increases to our budget. The first one is the overtime budget. The overtime budget we're looking to increase. We've never had one in the department. And the reason to ask for this overtime budget is basically for the inspectors on the weekends, either for the food section, food division, housing division, or nursing division. Also, emergency calls, whether it comes from the police or the fire department. And lastly, it's basically any of the events that are going on in the weekends, such as a Saturday event up at Pageant Field or Veterans Field, or any events that are approved, you know, by the licensing board. So that, that, that item is very crucial. The city relies on comp time. And our comp time has significantly increased based on the, based on not having this budget item. So by having this budget item, we're able to offer an alternative to the inspectors that are working on the weekends, either comp time or overtime for the work that they're doing. Lastly, I know you mentioned the pump out boat. So the pump out boat item that you may see that hasn't been spent yet, the reason for that is because we are now in the process, this is the, usually the time period when that is processed with the state. And that does not get approved until the second week of July. So we're able to backpedal and pay with the, with that budget item.
Okay. And then just lastly, the contracted line item was added this year?
So the contracted line item, that is this software company called Inspect2Go. And Inspect2Go, we are currently using at the administrative side for licensing and inspections and permits. And also, our inspectors are using their iPads to do inspections, daily inspections, be it complaints, relicensing, basically our daily, our daily tasks.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Counsel, I talk, Counsel Palmucci first, and then Counsel Mahoney. Counsel.
Good evening, Marley. Yeah, you're looking dapper, I have to say. Looking dapper tonight. Much better than Murphy. Where'd he go? I just wanted to say you're doing a fantastic job, especially, you know, starting out in the middle, right? Like, in the midst of a national, a worldwide pandemic, probably not the best time or like the most opportune time to start a position like yours, but you handled it very well. I've been incredibly impressed with the work that you've done and your leadership of the department. I've mentioned that to Mr. Walker and the mayor, that I think you're doing a great job. And we, just to follow up on our chat the other day, when I was asking you, I had said that I hadn't gotten any rat calls yet. I don't know if the other ward councilors have gotten them, but I said, I don't know what you're doing, but keep doing it because I haven't gotten a rat call yet. So fingers crossed, hopefully, the efforts that we're making, and, you know, we, we made maybe, Mr. Walker, three, four years ago, do we add that as a line item in the budget? The, you weren't even listening. It's okay. You know, we've put in extra money into the budget to address rat issues because really, when you talk about quality of life, that's a pretty big one. But the rat numbers looking good so far from your perspective?
Yeah, the numbers have decreased. And I know I chatted with Counsel Adronico as well regarding the rodent budget and Counsel Mahoney. But the reason for it, I believe, is, and to point out, that budget item that was put in four years ago was basically to hire me.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, look at it. It worked out in multiple ways.
It worked out great.
Yeah.
But when I took over in, in May, when I was appointed through the administration, I worked constantly with Jay Duka and the Inspection Services Department. So we added guidelines and requirements for any demos or any construction companies that are coming into the city to bait every 40 feet. Prior to that, it was, you know, as long as you have a pest control company, there was no guidelines of how many feet apart are the bait boxes. So we put those in, and I think we've seen, you know, significant improvement with, with the rodents. Because the, the construction companies are baiting more frequently. They're supposed to have the boxes every 40 feet, and they're They're supposed to have the boxes every 40 feet and they're supposed to be inspected every two weeks, just like we have for Ladybug and Clancy Brothers and our vendors.
Okay. Well, thank you. Like I said, keep up the great work. I think you're doing an amazing job. And thank you for the information you sent out about all the programming. I mean, on the phone the other day, you were telling me about some programming and I had no idea, but you're really increasing the amount of programming that's happening in the department. I think that's great, doing the, the public outreach and, and I think that's, that's an asset to the community. So thank you very much. I'm obviously going to support the budget.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you. Thank you, Marley. We had a great conversation the other day and I, I'm glad Counsel Palmucci brought up the rats and now we don't have to talk about it. But, you know, I'm also very happy to see that you're proactive in, in working with the developers that are working throughout the city and making sure that we increase that through inspectional services too, because I think it does make a big difference. And I also like the fact that when we were talking the other day, it wasn't just about what the budget is this year, it's about some of the programs and some of the things that you're hoping to enhance as we go forward, because you have goals, which was great, because you weren't just calling saying, hey, I want to go over what my budget's going to be next year. It was also like what my goals and what I'm going to try to do, if it's not going to be next year, it could be the year after. So you're really kind of looking forward to how you can really help our city and manage our health. I mean, in the last couple of years with COVID, we have all earned a tremendous amount and, you know, it's just, it, it also makes us realize that we have to be agile in being able to do things. And I, I know that you've already gone over what the contraction number is for the Inspect2Go, but maybe you could explain to the general public what that is, because it's your opportunity. Not very often do we get to explain what you do in your department, but that's also a digital asset for you that's going to make things a little bit easier. So if you could explain what Inspect2Go is, that would be great.
Yeah. And Inspect2Go is a software company designated for public health departments in terms of helping with their licensing, their permits, basically to automate the entire service that the city, that we do. We purchased brand new iPads. So the iPads that we purchased work with Inspect2Go. So our food inspectors are able to handle complaints, inspect the food establishment, housing inspectors are able to address the complaints and also have a digital copy right then and present in front of the tenant or the landlord and easily email it to them directly. Lastly, it also helps with our storage. There's a lot of paper in the department, so this helps by saving it to a data software company that basically has our own cloud.
You can always go back and research it and see what you've done.
Yeah.
Yep. And I think the thing that's great about that too is it's, it's, you're automating the, you're automating the resources, you'll be able to collect the information that, and the, and it's, it's just taking extra steps out of your process, which is helping you manage your time. So the last question that I had is, we did talk about the outreach translator. You said that there might be a chance that that line might change. Do you get any confirmation in regards to that?
So I believe we're going to keep it as is and the additional hours may be needed depending on the programs or initiatives that we have in the next fiscal year.
Yeah. Because I know that was one thing that we, when we were discussing, that you thought you might need. And I was just concerned that this, we can't add to the budget, but it's definitely something that was flagged, that you said it was, it would be beneficial to you. So hopefully the city will be able to work with you and, and if that becomes a need. But I, thank you very much. I do appreciate the, the outreach and going over all the numbers with me. So thanks.
Okay. Counsel Adronico.
Thank you for joining us, Marley. I'll do my best to keep this brief because I believe Counsel Palmucci touched on this, but I just wanted to say thank you for that more proactive approach to the pest control and partnering with inspectional services. I was just looking at the line item to see how much has been expended so far. I know policy has changed over the years where sometimes, excuse me, where sometimes you will just pick.
It's not me.
I know. You know, you'll focus on just Res A in single family homes. In my ward, it's, you know, you're hard pressed to find even a full block of just Res A. So we get a lot of calls from Res B and then, you know, they'll call the department and say, well, policy is they can't go out. Do you think there's enough funding in the budget for the current fiscal year? You might be able to get to some of those requests.
That's a great question, Counsel. And I, I think we can get to them. Again, I think we've been very proactive with road and control, you know, in, in terms of outreach, you know, brochures that we've created that we're handing out to the owners up and down the streets. I, I think we should be able to handle multifamily homes. In terms of multifamily homes, I would, I would most likely keep it at two family properties and have the three and four family homes to pay it through their, through their landlord.
Got you. Thank you.
On the motion, seeing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. Tourism budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Evening.
Did you want to say anything or are you all set?
Sure. As you can see, the, it's level funded. And I hope I, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, councilors. Hope I've been keeping you well informed with some of my emails on some of the tourism initiatives and I hope you all got your hot off the press guide. That has been distributed. We've just distribute, we printed 20,000 guides because there's a shortage of paper. Go figure. So we have to wait until they have the remaining paper to finish the 30,000 guides. So we started with 20,000. They're being distributed all around New England right now to visitor centers, hostels, universities, cultural centers, the visitor centers on the highway, trying to think of some, there's probably a ton of other things, hotels all around New England. What else? Some of the current initiatives beside the visitors' guide are, are successful cam, that would help if I took my glasses off because I can't see. Successful campaigns, we've included the Expedia campaign that I, I believe I shared with you all. We produced over $65,000 in bookings over the last year. We plan to start a new Expedia campaign starting June 1st. Most recently, we received $99,000 from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism for their tourism recovery grants. We use that to print the guides, to distribute the guides and design it. With this grant, we also did a partnership with the USS Salem, one of our unique partners and strong partners in the, in the city. And they are going to use some of those funds to update their website and to do some marketing campaigns as well. We've also increased our website visits, our app. We also are producing a new discovery map for Quincy that's in production right now. Again, with the paper shortage, it's taking us a little bit longer. We are so excited to start attending conferences and trade shows again. I will attend a national conference, June 5th, in Florida, of all places. That's a hard one to sell, but it's at the Convention Center and it's the U.S. Travel Association and it's, I'm attending with the Greater Boston Visitors Bureau as well as the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism amongst other tourism offices and colleagues in the state. And what else could I? Recently, I was elected to the Greater Boston Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I find that to be a good partnership because I believe if you're not at the table, you're not going to get a piece of the pie and I want a piece of their pie. They recently went, did a TMD, which is a, a travel assessment, so they do receive more funding into the Visitors Bureau. So I'm looking to partner with them and possibly get some of that grant funding this way. The Welcome Center is in progress again this spring and summer. We're training staff right now. So we should be open after Memorial Day with a decreased schedule until the end of June. And we hope to have staff to fit those positions Monday through Friday and hopefully Saturday. But as you all know, we're having trouble hiring people lately, especially the travel and tourism industry. It's one of, it's been one of the most hardest hit industries and it's going to be the last one to recover and rebound. But the tourism industry and hospitality and unemployment is still relatively down. So we hope to bring some of those, those folks back to work with us. And we will continue to increase visitation, occupancy, overall visitation to the city of Quincy and continue our marketing channels, which include, but not limited to, social media, digital, print, radio, television, billboards, and attending trade shows and conferences.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. Was there already a motion made? Yeah. Okay. On the motion then. Good evening. Thank you for the information and all the emails. I just wanted to ask you one question about, and you may or may not have an answer, but the council passed an ordinance that regulated short-term rentals in the city. And I was just wondering, and it's gone into effect, I was wondering, first, if you've heard from anybody who had short-term rentals that no longer can, and if, second, if you think that hurts us competitively in any way in terms of tourism?
I have not heard from anyone from short-term rentals in the city. And no, I don't, I don't think that would hurt the city at all.
Do you, do we, do the hotels in Quincy generally have high occupancy rates, do you know?
They're still, they're still down a little bit.
Yeah.
So that's one of our goals, is to put more heads in beds in those hotels and get that occupancy revenue back up.
Right. We need that hotel motel tax revenue.
Hotel motel tax.
Yeah. We like that money.
Yeah, we like other people's money.
Yeah, it's people who don't live in Quincy's money. That's the best kind of money. Generally, when, I said one question, I apologize, but generally when we're pitching Quincy, I think I've heard before that we pitch Quincy as like a second city, like, yeah, you're going to Boston, come, come down the red line and see us too. So is that why kind of occupi, occupancy rates wouldn't be as high in Quincy? Is that?
No.
I'm not trying to, by the way, I'm not trying to call us like a second class city or something, I mean, but.
Definitely not a second.
Yeah. But I've heard, but I've heard that before. It's like, you're trying to hit the tourists who will come to Boston and say, we have so much down here, you spend a day or two looking at all of our stuff and shopping.
Depends who your target market is. Some of our target markets are heading to Boston, so then that's when we use that pitch. But on a general, overall travel and tourism strategy, we try not to use that and we just say, just come to Quincy.
Because we're that good.
Because we're unique.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other councilors, I will take a moment of privilege. I'll say I was down in the Plymouth rest area on the way home from golfing down the Cape. And I walked into the rest center and there was the Quincy brochure. So you were definitely getting them out there and it's definitely going around all the way down the Cape, I saw them. So, great job. And on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're going to move right into the clerks. Okay. We're on the clerk's budget.
Hi, good evening.
Motion to approve. Want to say something?
Sure. You all have the org chart for my office provided and I just wanted to hit on a couple of things that are happening in the clerk's office. We did put up an increase in our budget in other purchase services for software and maintenance to the cloud for all of our council archives and everything going forward. So, and everything else is level funded in the clerk's department. And you will see, I put in the lines for early voting this year in anticipation in elections for the state election in September and November, there will be early voting. So however, we just have not gotten the, and I'm talking to you, Brian, because I have not got the dates yet, but as soon as I do, I will let you all know. And in licensing, the $15,000 from last year that came into the contractual line is up and running. Open Gov special use permits is ongoing, one-day legal licenses and such online. And the IT department did a wonderful job in doing over our webpage and it's very easy to use. Encourage everybody to go there and use the web. And census, we're sending out a second census for those who didn't return the first one and money to notify the residents of new warden precincts, ads in papers in multiple languages. And I'll take any questions.
On, on the motion, Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. Good evening, Nicole.
Good evening.
Obviously, we all think you're doing an awesome job. I think that goes without saying.
Thank you.
Just wanted to point out the surveys, the census, right? Fair to say that that's the number one issue or problem that prevents someone from being able to easily vote because they didn't return their census? So we take them off the voting rolls and they say, but I always vote here, right?
It absolutely is. And so that's why we are so determined to give them a second chance to answer the census again. And then we don't take them right off, we try to make them inactive first and then send them a card that says, now you're inactive and this will affect your voting rights.
Right. But then typically when you see the spikes in voting, like in a presidential election, that's when you see it the most. People come, they want to vote and it's like, well.
Yes. And then you'll see a decline from here on in and then it'll go up again at the presidential and it follows pattern.
Yeah. So just a good reminder, if you want to be able to vote, you got to return that census.
Absolutely.
Because I'm the type of person, I don't return any questionnaires or surveys or anything, but when I learned that you couldn't vote if you didn't get, I was like, I'd send that thing off right, right away.
It's, it's a great tool in our city too. We use it a lot for housing. We use it for kids in school and doctors' offices, things like that, funding for, for all kinds of initiatives that are offered in the state and federal.
Keep up the good work and everybody return your city census.
Thank you.
On the motion, we have the first, we have a couple of budgets. Who, anybody, oh, no one over here. Okay. This is the first of a, of a couple of different budgets, all under the clerk's office. So, on the clerks, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? Elections. Yes. Motion to approve by Counsel Yang. Any discussion on the motion, seeing none? Elections, all in favor?
Aye.
All, tongue tied. All in favor, seeing no one opposed, we'll move on to the next one. Licensing commission. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Counsel Yang. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none? We'll go on to the census. Motion to approve, Counsel Yang. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go next to the emergency management.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve on the motion. And I'm going to go to Counsel Adronico.
Thank you, Marley. First of all, thanks for joining us.
Mr. Chairman, councilors, pleasure to be here.
Hi. Just had a quick question for you. I know we've been in touch for a couple of years now on the compressor station situation in Point, the Ford River Basin. I was hoping you could just give us and the public an update on how emergency management in your role and your department's role has fit in, into the communication aspect on letting people know, and our first responders know about any blowdowns that are happening or unplanned natural gas releases. I know we've already had to deal with two. You know, we had one at 169,000 cubic feet in September 2020. We had another of over 11,000 in April 2022. And we're just hoping you could touch on, on that and your, the role your department plays.
Right. So the utility company, Enbridge, they're only required under federal pipeline administration administration law to report to the National Response Center, which is in Houston, when they have a release of over 3 million standard cubic feet of natural gas. There was another additional permitting law that was put in place through Mass DEP when they got their license for the air permit, which required Enbridge to notify public officials within two hours of any type of release, but with that, there was no actual, real-time notification to first responders, therefore, there was no ability for the City of Quincy to respond to that in any way. In discussions with, with Enbridge, you know, we asked multiple times, I did through my department, correspondence, for, you know, for them to notify us directly, they, they did agree to notify Waymouth initially, but not Quincy. Following the resolution, I forget which month it was, through the council, on your proposal, councillor, they came back on May 3rd, and they are now, they have now agreed to notify the city of any irregular type of activities at the compressor station. So we're now getting notifications of any time there's loud noise over there with construction, anything of that nature, they haven't had any releases of gas since April 2021, but they have agreed, we anticipate them to contact, non-alien communications directly.
I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate the work that you and your department do, and I know you and your team have always been on top of this issue in particular, and that means a great deal to me, thank you.
Thank you.
President filling in for Chairman, Chairman Phelan, anyone else? Council, Council Mahoney, you have the floor.
I just have a quick question, and, and, how many, how many, how many people are in your department?
We have two now.
Two, and then, how many vehicles do you have?
We have three vehicles, we have, well, actually assigned to the department, too, we have, we have a FEMA regional vehicle, which we use to transport our trailers, then we have a larger SUV, which we also use to pull equipment, and then we have a, a smaller technical rescue-type vehicle, which we provide to the police and the fire department that we maintain.
Those are all vehicles that are just used for the department, not used, just, they're just used for special, like, services, or?
Um, yeah, they're, they're operated on a daily basis, other than the tech rescue vehicle, we also have five trailers, all emergency response trailers, we have three generators, and four storage containers.
How often, that's one, how often do we use them for emergency management only, or are they used for other things throughout the city for other times?
Well, they're staged for emergency response, so there's emergency supplies in them, equipment, sheltering equipment, food, water, things of that nature.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is because, you know, your vehicle supplies are going up to 5,000, I was just wondering how many vehicles we had, and-
Yeah.
And how often we're using them that, that, that we have, that many repairs, not that, I'm sure you do, I just didn't know how many vehicles you had.
We use them on a daily basis, councillor, and, you know, we've, we've fully spent and overspent those line items, the last two FYI's.
Yeah, no, again, I just, I was just wondering, because I know, I knew you had, everybody has vehicles in their departments, I just didn't know how many you had, or what, you know, what the uses were of them, or, you know, how often they're being used.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Councillor Palmucci.
No.
No?
No, I didn't have a minute.
Okay. Any other councilors, seeing none, there is a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, you guys have it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next one is gonna be Department of Public Works, starting with engineering. Commissioner Graziosi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and City Councilors. First, I'd just like to introduce the DPW management team and acknowledge them, along with all the men and women of DPW, for the fine work they do in a professional and efficient manner for the residents of Quincy, and I'm extremely proud of their hard work. With us this evening is City Engineer Paul Costello, Superintendent Larry Prendeville, Business Manager Neil McColl, Operations Manager Mike Norton, and Program Manager Tom Henry, and they're here to answer any questions you may have that I may not be able to answer. For you this evening are the budgets that include engineering, public works, snow and ice, collection and disposal, and the water and sewer enterprise funds. The DPW is responsible for many functions, such as snow and ice, trash collection and recycling, street sweeping, pothole and sidewalk repairs, catch basin cleaning, litter removal and weed whacking. We're also responsible for managing and maintaining 15 pump stations, two water tanks, 56 tide gates, 187 outfall pipes, 250 mile, 57 miles of roadway, and our city network of water mains, sewer lines, and drainage systems, which include over 9,000 catch basins and 8,400 sewer manholes. DPW also manages a citywide GIS asset management program. In addition to the DPW demands, we have assisted other departments in managing their assets, a few examples are assessors' maps, the Park Department tree inventory, T-Pell's street signs and traffic signaling, Health Department vector control, and the Clerks' districting maps. Working with our city work software, our GIS team continues to expand our citywide GIS capabilities. We're also responsible for managing and reporting on all compliance issues related to the DEP and EPA, which has become quite extensive in the last few years. This past year, the DPW Water and Sewer Billing Department, under the guidance of Neil McColl, instituted a major software and hardware technology upgrade for our water meter signaling, meter read collections, and customer billing. The billing software was upgraded to a cloud-based solution with new reporting tools and service features, new signaling towers were installed, and existing towers rebuilt and modernized to allow the water reading collection system to last another 15 or 20 years. Upgrades of software will allow the residents and businesses the ability to access their account through a portal that will be accessible through a planned enhanced city webpage for water billing to be implemented, implemented sometime in the third quarter of fiscal 23. Outside of our daily responsibilities, the DPW is currently working on several capital, capital improvement projects. This year alone, we're finishing the Adam Shaw Seawall project, which I'm sure Councillor McCarthy is happy about. We're scheduled to reconstruct and pave 52 roads and sidewalks, replace water mains on another 35 roads, open cut and sewer line another 75 roads, and crack seal another 14 miles of roadway. We're also managing, coordinating with National Grid, who are replacing gas lines on most of the roads that we have scheduled to pave. And the Water Department just finished Phase One of our hydrant flushing program, several weeks ahead of schedule. This work is being done in incredibly aggressive schedule, and I am very proud of our employees for the way they are managing and carrying out these projects. All of these road projects and water mains were designed in-house, and are managed in-house by our engineering department, saving taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in design and oversight cost. So once again, I want to acknowledge all of the hard work. And this brings us to our first budget, the engineering budget.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve on the motion, Council Yang.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, good evening, Commissioner, I just have one question regarding staffing, the drafts person you cut completely.
That's a-
That's not, I didn't pose that as a question, but you-
We're cutting a drafts person, and it's, the person is retiring, Nancy Gavazza, who's been tremendous for us. We're going to incorporate her position with, within the current engineering, we have people that can do those functions and with our GIS people. With that cut, we've been able to take one of our engineer and training positions and move it to a junior engineer, and also add an engineering, level entry engineering and training program, and increase our overtime, all level-funded.
I appreciate it, thank you, I mean, across all of your budgets here, all the departments, you could see you're being really fiscally creative and conservative, which I appreciate, and I think this is a good example of that, but I just wanted to understand what it actually was too, so, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else on the, Councillor Mahoney?
I'm just gonna echo that as well, I mean, I, I go through these budgets, and I do have a problem with the way the budget was created, because the fiscal 22 actuals are not the, what was voted on, but by just looking at what you've done in the last couple of years, I, I can tell that when I go through it, you're, most of the time, very rarely are your budgets increased, and you do try to balance that, and there's a lot of work that's being done, I realize that we also bond out a lot of things, you have other monies that are coming to you, but you're managing your, you're not overreaching in your own budget, so I do appreciate that, and I think when you see that in a, in a budget, you want to call it out, so I do want to thank you for that, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, anybody else on the engineer budget? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none, we'll move on to the next one, snow and ice. We have a motion to approve on the snow and ice budget, public works. Yes. On the motion, Councillor Harris.
Thank you, thank you, I just want to say thank you to you and your, all your staff, I've said it, you know, since I've been the chairman of the Public Works Committee here on, on the council. You don't hear many complaints, complaints about your department, your, your budgets come in pretty, pretty level, like, like the last one we just voted on, and I just want to thank yous all, and just please keep up the good work, the city looks great. Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Anybody else, Councillor Mahoney?
Again, this is, Commissioner, this isn't really about you, but this, I, so in some of these situations, I know that the salaries are split through departments, like the operation manager, it looks like the operation manager and public works is only getting paid 24,000, but is that, how many departments is that split between, is it four or three?
Uh, operations is split between four, I believe, four departments.
Are there several employees that do that?
Yes.
Yeah, it could, off the top of your head, do you know which ones they are, and if you don't, it's okay, just ask.
How many employees?
No, how many that you split between, well, I do like, I would love to know how many employees, because that's a pet peeve I have, we never know how many employees we have.
We have 132 employees.
What was it?
We have a total of 132 employees.
Thank you very much, that's very helpful, and then of the ones that you split between departments, you know how, which ones they are, and if you don't, it's, it's-
We have several, because sewer water drain, those functions are-
Yeah, so this is, and this is not, this is, again, this is, this is, I said this to, I'm gonna forget, I think it might have been Mr. Murphy the other night we were talking, this is not really to you, it's the way the budget books are set up, it's really hard for the average person, even a councillor, to interpret some of these things, you have to kind of flip through, or we can come and sit with each department and say, help me understand your numbers, but if it takes us to do that, the general public can't understand it, and it's extremely frustrating, and I did call out the school department the other night, because the school department does actually list off their full-time employees, and basically breaks it up, is it 25%, you'd know it's 25% here, and you'd be able to look at your budget, it's 25%, that's not your job, that's not your role, you don't set up how that's done, that's set up by the Chief Financial Officer of the city, but I am calling it out, just because I think it's not transparent the way we do it, but I do appreciate the fact that you knew how many you had, because a lot of people don't, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, any other councilors, Councillor, Councillor President DiMona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, just, just want to echo the same as Councillor Harris, thank you for all the hard work that you've done out there, it's, it's like a big algorithm of strategy on where to go, what sidewalks, what's, what water mains, what gas lines are gonna be done by whomever, and I think you guys and your team has done a fantastic job with, thank you for getting back to me on all the issues that I've had, which are very, very small amount, and just keep up the good work, thank you for the team for coming out tonight, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other councils, Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Al, thank you, and as Councillor DiMona and Councillor Harris said, thanks to everybody sitting there, the whole staff, you know, mentioned the Seawall, which was a giant project, it's come out tremendously well, you know, still working at it, there's still punch list items, but on top of that, too, I had a lot of work in Ward One, with C Street getting redone, and, and just a lot of work in general from, from, from all the, from all the departments, and my biggest plus as a ward councillor, I think, is, when I make a call, and once in a while I'll call you guys, it gets done within 24 hours, I mean, it's done, it's addressed, it might not be completed, but it's addressed, you get on, you see the constituent, you know, and I hear about it, so, you know, that, that echoes to a lot of the departments, I don't think I said enough to Dave Murphy or to Eddie Grenon, you know, when they were up here, but you're, you're on top of it down at the DPW, have a great team, and I thank you very much for all the work you've done on Ward One for me.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, on the, on the motion, Councillor Palmucci.
Are we on the snow and budget, or the public works?
No, we are on the public works, my packet didn't have the-
Oh, really?
I can't, I went, but now looking at the list, yeah.
Okay, I just-
I was shot in my packet.
I just wanted to make sure, um, Al, I just want to, I'll echo, the, I'll echo the echo of the sentiments, you guys do a fantastic job, and, I mean, you guys get better-looking every year, I gotta tell you.
They clean up well.
They do, I mean, look at these guys, look at these guys, especially Norton here, yeah, but, no, you guys, honestly, you guys do a tremendous job, it just, I, I can't say how appreciative I am of how well you guys handle constituent issues, you know, and I know it's not just when a councillor calls you, I know it's, because I get the phone call after an issue is resolved that I didn't even know about, and you say, hey, just, just to let you know, you know, we're up there, we were doing this, somebody called, and I, I don't think you get that in every city, you know, a city of our size to get that level of personal responsiveness, it's terrific, so, keep up the good work.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Kane.
Yeah, it actually just made me think, I was driving through Milton the other day, and they do like half-streets, and it's, and it takes them maybe a year, that Milton, East Milton Square is just taking such a long time, it's like a nightmare, and that affects us too, right? But, no, you guys do, you guys do your part in spades, it's unbelievable, the work that's accomplished, and it's all hard labor and infrastructure, but yeah, I always appreciate getting informed on when streets are getting done, how people are notified, that makes my job a lot easier, because the information is communicated appropriately, and I just have to sort of follow up, so, thank you for your professionalism, for your organization, and for your continued service to the city.
Thank you, councillor.
Kane, thank you. All right, any other councilors, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the public works budget, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none, what, what, abstain? Now we are going to the snow and ice budget. Motion to approve, and Councillor Yang.
Thank you, I just want to, this is, this is another sort of extension of the conversation we've been having up here, sort of commending your work about being so fiscally responsible with, you know, the mountain of items that you have in front of you, I, I do want to call out that, you know, I spoke to you earlier about some line items where I noticed that there wasn't any spending, come to find out that, you know, we spent over what we had last year budgeted, and still you came back this year asking less, right, than you, than you asked for last year, so, you know, what you had budgeted last year, you spent over that, because obviously, you know, we need to when we're cleaning up our streets, and this year you still came back and said, no, I'm still gonna have a conservative ask, and ask for less, and hopefully, we don't need to spend that much, and then for even those line items that weren't spent, you said, no, go ahead and get rid of them, right, however, you can use those line items to help you if and when next year, again, we face that deficit, and so, I just appreciate that, you know, you are so willing to look at the bottom line with us and work with us, but at the end of the day, you know, we're not in the business of up here just simply looking at the numbers, we need to understand what those numbers then provide us direct services to constituents, and I believe there's value in keeping those line items here, right, with the understanding that, in talking through this with you, you know, you are able to use those line items next fiscal year, should we have a bad storm again, you know, you can use those to, again, purchase supplies to directly serve our constituents, which you do exceptionally well, so, I just want to, you know, personally thank you for the time you took to explain that to me, to work with me on it, to understand my concerns and where I'm coming from on making decisions on the budget, but ultimately, you know, I think this, this budget alone, again, just proves in spades our conversation up here with you, right, that you are responsible, you're a great manager, and you understand our fiscal responsibilities as well, so, I very much appreciate that, and I'm, I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, anybody else? All in favor of the snow and ice budget? Aye, and all opposed, none, we'll go on to collections and disposal. Motion has been made by Councillor Harris to approve, on the motion, Councillor Palmucci.
Thank you, I'll be brief, Tom, thanks, do a great job, all those missed pickups, I, I raise this every year since it changed, I think Wes Quincy and whoever else gets short-changed that our pickup is on a Friday, and Capitol is closed on Saturday, so when people get home from work, 5:30, 6 o'clock, Capitol's gone for the day, everyone in the DPW is gone for the day, there's only one guy in the city that you're getting, or in Ward Four that you're getting, and it's me, but Tom is great about getting them right out there, I appreciate that, but yeah, I wish it weren't on Friday, but, or we made them work on Saturday in general, so that they could come around and pick up all the trash they missed, but, and obviously, how is, how is, how are the reports of the mixing of recycling and trash going, are there-
We're, are actually, our contamination rates are down, I think we've gone from 18 or 17% down to 13%, we want to get to that 10% number.
Okay.
Done a good job with that.
Yeah, good, well, thank you very much, and thanks again, Tom, appreciate it.
Councillor Mahoney.
Just because all of your budgets are coming up, some of them are a little bit higher, some of them a little bit lower, but they all balance out to be very much level-funded. higher, some of them a little bit lower, but they all balance out to be very much level-funded. So, I know that we're having problems with like recycling. We're not saving as much money as we used to. It's gone up in price. And there's been some talk about composting. Has that, how far has that gone? Have we been talking about any further within, and would that fall underneath, underneath collection and disposal?
Composting, we've talked with the mayor's offices. We've had some people and some residents in to talk about composting. The question would be is, you know, where do you do that? Where do you have that facility? So, it's, it's still, you want to...
Mr. Walker wants, I mean, I was, for a little while there, I was going to some meetings, and then I kind of fell off. So, I can't say that I know everything that's going on. I know that there was a report, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chairman, exactly, Counselor. There's, there's a group compost task force, composting task force that was formed at the urging of this body a couple of years ago now. They, I believe, have finalized their report with a series of recommendations, sort of tiered recommendations. A couple of things are happening right now. They're working directly with the school system on a pilot program that we're very confident working with the school side is going to happen in the, in the very near future. The second piece would be, you know, what do we do curbside? There are a couple of options there. The gold prize brass ring is obviously, we incorporate composting into the regular curbside collection program. We're not quite there yet, based upon facility, based upon cost, based upon a number of other things. There are some other options that the task force, I think, should be reporting back relatively soon, relative to partnering with an existing composting firm that can offer discounts to residents. We can make it sort of a partnership where the city's marketing the availability of composting, and that company comes in and then does the collection, and residents would get a reduced fee from whatever that company normally charges. You know, folks that are really into it, you can do that now. There, I do see a couple of, there's a couple of companies out there, and I do see in my neighborhood, a couple of the buckets for these companies. We hope to build off of that in a, in a community, community-wide way, working with the task force going forward.
It's a big educational force. I mean, I just asked, because I've seen a couple too, but I didn't think, I wasn't, I was anticipating that it was probably individuals doing it on their own. And I knew that the schools, I heard that the schools were going to be doing something similar. But I just wanted to stay on top of that. And then, this is just a question, and I don't know where it ever landed. I just know that people will say to me, and it was before I was in the council, that there was a time that we were talking about standardizing trash barrels potentially. Was, am I wrong about that?
Yeah, we have, we have discussed that. We've, actually, we've been in contact. We've talked to the, to our vent, to our Capitol about doing that. We've talked about a program in-house. I think right now, and maybe Tom could speak to this, the cost of barrels are way up right now, like everything else, and you can't get them. But it is something that is on our radar. I think it's on the mayor's radar.
Yeah. Would it be, I mean, the question I'm asking this for is, is, there's a benefit, because, right, the way they pick up the barrels, it's more efficient, the way they're doing it, you maybe have larger barrels, or...
Right, and this is, you know, we've looked at talking about a pilot program in a specific neighborhood and see how that works out. So, it's definitely, the conversation is on the table.
Yeah. And the reason why I asked that also is, I'm going to just keep saying these types of things. You know, the, the federal government's talking about clawbacks of Opera money if we don't actually put initiatives together to actually spend that money. And I'm not even in agreement with how the money's been spent. I know they don't care about that. But this would be an example of something that we talked about. There could be a benefit to it, and it could be used for something like that. So, I just want to put that out there, because this is something that could benefit the whole city. It could benefit the way we're, we're in budgeting for these types of things. And we have to be innovative of what we're doing. And if there's opportunities for money for us to use that will not cost the taxpayers, this is an opportunity where we should be probably looking into, potentially even Comcast. I mean, composting, too, but I'm more interested in the barrels at this, at this process. But I just want to put that out there. It's not about your budget. It's just really about those innovations, those conversations. I know you have them, and I know trash is very exciting. So, but it's, it's, and I do hear, I hear a lot of the people saying that they're, they're cross-contaminating. We get a lot of that as well. But, you know, mostly those barrels are, are something. I know, like, Waymouth does, and other places do it. And, you know, when you, when you move or sell your home, you've got to give those barrels back. So, it's like a recycling of the barrels, so you can keep them. I just wanted to bring that up. I know it was brought up years ago, but never, it's always worth bringing it up again. Thanks. And Mr. Pamucci, Counselor Pamucci didn't ask me to ask that question.
I didn't.
He did not ask me. Thank you.
Counselor Pamucci?
Thank you. But since you mentioned it, Al, I, I know that the, the barrier to standardized trash barrels has been the cost of the barrels, right? Do you call them barrels? Is that totes?
Totes, yes.
Okay, totes? I'm going to call them barrels, because I don't like that word. But I wonder if, and one of the reasons we talked, I mean, I don't, from the trash pickup world, I don't know. But I believe one of the reasons why we first started looking at it was because of the rat issues.
Correct.
Because a lot of people just put bags out, and a lot of people put out, you know, like the Stop and Shop bags, just tied with trash. I'm almost, you know. So, I was just wondering, is there, is there a benefit? Would there be a justification for the council or the city to put forth, like, a regulation, you know, an ordinance that required all trash to be in a barrel or tote, so that people couldn't put things...
I mean...
...in a bag and just put it out?
One of the issues we have, one of the, and it's one of the issues, quite frankly, the mayor has, is, and he calls us constantly because of litter blowing around. And, you know, if you get a windy day, and it's trash day, I mean, even some of the, I've seen some of the, you know, 64 or 96 gallon recycling bins blow over and everything, you know, so.
So, those Capitol guys, they stop at every one, and they pick up every single piece of trash, don't they, Al?
They actually do a pretty, pretty good job.
Yeah.
And actually, they're, they would like to see us go to the barrels. It's, it's easier for them. So, yeah, that, that is a benefit. That's an idea. I, I think the loose bags drive everyone crazy. I know it drives the mayor crazy.
Yeah, I just say, it creates more litter. It, you know, it attracts the rodents. Yeah, but, I mean, those barrels are, the totes are expensive.
They're expensive.
Even if you're buying them in bulk, they're expensive. And I think that's, I think that's why we never went forward with that program. It was just...
Yeah, and, you know, if you go, go with that program, too, some communities go with those programs, but they limit the amount of trash being put out.
Right.
That creates an issue, because people then put their trash into the recycling, and then you have the contamination. So, they're actually, their, their costs go up because of their contamination rate. So, I think if we did something like that, we would not limit, you know...
Right.
...how many barrels you could put out, because that would, that defeats the whole purpose.
And it's a, it's like a case study of how to get a mayor thrown out of office to put in a trash fee, collection fee.
Correct.
People do not like collection fees. So, we wouldn't do that. So, again, to, you know, it makes it tough to, makes it tough to kind of control that. But I, sometimes I think about that when I'm, you know, looking at bags of trash. They're like ripped open, you know, ripped open, it's on the street, and it's like, well, if that was in a barrel, it might at least...
Yeah. It's Larry's nightmare, because he gets, the mayor calls him like 6:00 in the morning and says, "There's trash blowing around."
Sunday morning, Monday night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other councilors on the motion? Counselor Kane?
So, this is more, I guess, like, looking down the line, market-related, and then sort of policy-related. The, you know, we live in this magical world where we get to put trash out front, and it goes into a truck, and it, and it just goes away. That's it. It just disappears, and the waste, just, that's it. So, nobody knows where it goes. Nobody knows how it's handled. But it's, it's a big problem, right? But then, from a policy perspective, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the DEP, I think, just executed a solid waste master plan, which will essentially eliminate waste sites, landfills, right, in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, you know, currently, waste goes to different places. Anyway, wood goes here, you know, municipal solid waste goes here, plastics go here, and there's costs to all of that. And then, you know, we've, we've been feeling, I guess, the detrimental effects of the recycling market, because nobody wants to take the garbage anymore, or nobody has anything to do with it. So, just from a, you know, I love municipalities because you have the ability to have such local control of, of issues. And with waste, nobody wants, you know, to handle waste. Nobody wants to see it. Nobody wants to deal with it. They just want to think that it goes away, and that's satisfactory enough. But then, from an environmental perspective, putting on a policy document that says it's going away, it's going to go to another state, I think, you know, in the future. It's almost like some state in the South is going to end up just being the trash state. If you've ever seen a Marvel movie, it's like that planet that Jeff Goldblum runs. And so, that's a huge problem. But the costs will end up becoming a problem for us. And then, I mean, the waste will become a problem for us. So, are we thinking, you know, from an environmental policy and cost perspective into the future on what we're gonna, what we're gonna do?
One of the issues, you know, it's a great point. One of the issues this year is they instituted a new mattress policy statewide that will go into effect in November, I believe. So, they will not, no longer collect mattresses. Like, we can't put them out in the trash. So...
So, slowly but surely, it'll be individual things that are no longer...
Something that we now have to come up with a plan. And, you know, they come up with a policy, but are they going to fund that policy that we now have to pay for? So, those are the issues that we're dealing with.
Okay. So, it'll end up being individual items along the continuum that won't be accepted into the value chain?
I would think. Tom probably has a pretty good handle on this.
Yeah, so, all your points.
Good evening, councilors. You've all made some extremely good points. Aesthetically, the barrels look great. Al touched on the issue of material being left at the curb and maybe not handled. From a safety standpoint, the ASL for the driver, the amount of labor that you use, the efficiency of the program is all good. So, it's something we certainly want to look at. To your point, Ian, is that the, currently, of all, all of our waste goes to Covanta.
Mm-hmm.
Waste energy, we're contracted with them. They incinerate it. Energy is sold back to the grid.
Yeah.
There are going to be other options available to us. Some of that might be in the form of transfer out of state via the new Holbrook Transfer Station that's, that's been approved. So, as far as getting rid of the material processing, shouldn't be an issue. In regards to recycling, we've been the beneficiary of a recent tick-up in commodities, and you've also seen an increase in consumption of commodities in the country. So, we're not exporting nearly as much as we used to. So, of all the commodities, commodities we collect, curbside, single stream, I think only the mixed paper pack represents about 50% of material being exported. So, it's been pretty favorable.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I mean, it's a fascinating equation, but I'm glad to know that at least you're thinking about it now, because it's going to, I mean, we're in 2022. You know, I don't know if you're gonna...
And it's very important for those waste energy facilities to keep that light burning, so that that turbine is always. So, they need our tons.
Well, yeah, I mean...
Keep that going. So, our tonnage is important to them.
Right. And, and then...
But we do have a Plan B, should we ever run into a situation where, you know, something goes down, that we continue to move the material safely out of, out of Quincy.
Yeah. It, it doesn't solve the environmental equation. Right?
As far as the, I mean, those, those burn facilities are very closely monitored.
Yeah.
So, the material that's being handled, those are looked at by the EPA very, you know, there's been a moratorium since, I think, 1960 on the building of new burn facilities.
Right, right.
But at the same time, the ones that are in place are handling the material safely.
Yeah. Well, great perspective. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Any other councilors? Seeing none on the, on the land, on the collection and disposal. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. We'll move on to the drain department.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Do, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. We'll move on to the, next is Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. On the motion?
Commissioner, it's the same question I had for the other one, where I see elimination of one position in addition of another. But the addition of that other position is actually, it's lower than the one that was eliminated. So, it's not a bad thing, right, that this new position is less than that other one that was eliminated. But could you just explain if it's the same responsibilities, or if they're unrelated? It's, so the manager of accounts looks like it was taken out, and then we put in a head administrator.
That was a long-time employee, and we're eliminating that position, but we're adding a head clerk position that we think can do the same job, and for a little less money.
Yeah, a little less money is great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any, Counselor Mahoney?
On other assets, or other assessments, I know that's, I believe, or could you just explain what that is, I think? Is that an increase that the, that the state makes?
That's an MWRA assessment.
And that's mandatory, right? That's not something that you decide they'd do?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just ask that, because again, that's, that's your biggest...
That's it.
And I, I just bring it up, just because, again, we've been just talking about how that's, that's, that's not within your control. And the other, other thing that I, that I just want to bring up is the principal long-term sewer. Again, that's because of bonds that we've taken out in the past, correct?
Correct.
Yep. And you have a couple that are before us in the city council right now for, and again, I'm going to make a pitch for the fact that that is definite use of what we should be using Opera money for. So, I'm hoping that this, this group, this city council, and I guess Mr. Walker left the room, but, you know, I, I really hope that that's something that they're going to come back and say that's what we're going to be using that for, because that's the appropriate use for Opera money. And, and by doing that next year, when you come to us, or in the next several years, once we start paying that off, we'll see that, we won't see that there. So, it is a way for us to hopefully balance our budgets going forward, if we're using the money correctly to offset the costs that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor of the sewer enterprise?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we'll move on to the water enterprise. Motion to approve. On the motion, Counselor, Counselor Mahoney?
I'm just going to comment again, the same thing. Other, other assessments, it's the MWRA. That was your biggest, or that was an increase in the MWRA. It doesn't look like it's that big, but, and then the same thing with the principal long-term water, and interest long-term water. Those are things, again, I believe there's a water bond that was in front of us, too. Am I wrong? Something?
Yeah, those bonds are MWRA, SRF loans.
Yeah, okay.
Pay through the water, but they're, I think, 0% interest in prime, there's some of, they're also eligible for principal forgiveness. So, that's why we do the water through them.
All right, just wanted to check. So, thank you very much, Al.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're on, I think that's all for you. Okay.
I don't know if you made a motion.
Oh, well, that's a good thing to do.
I don't want to come back.
Get a little old. It's past my bedtime. Okay, the motion is on the floor. All in favor will accept the water enterprise. Aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, councilors. I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item. Moving right along. We have public buildings, and we have Commissioner of Public Buildings, Paul Heinz. Motion to approve the public buildings. On the motion, Counselor Yang.
Commissioner, man, good evening, Commissioner. It's similar to some of the other department heads I was able to speak to before the meeting on some clarification items. If you could just, I, I always appreciate making sure that we make that information accessible to my colleagues in the public. I want to first of all, just note that, you know, you went over on your overtime, but then came in without asking for an increase in that. I appreciate that. You know, you're looking forward and trying to say we're going to rein that in, and, you know, certainly looking forward to seeing what that looks like next year. But specifically, we had talked back and forth about the hand-and-man labor line. Looking back at the historical data for it, this is the, and the personal services, 512, 412, there were no expenditures there. But I believe that when you spoke to Mr. Mason, you were both able to clarify that there is actually money coming out of that account, correct? So, it seems like it's an accounting error more than anything else?
Yes, Counselor, and thank you for having me this evening. I did speak to Mr. Mason today after you and I spoke on the telephone. And as I indicated at that time, that hand-and-man labor position is one of the downtown group positions. That's now within the Department of Public Buildings. As Commissioner Murphy described earlier, there's certain positions that are split 50-50 per the two departments. This is one of those line items, and... And they had earlier cleared up the overdraft of one account that should have been charged to the Park Department handyman account. They didn't do that to public buildings until today, when I raised the issue with them again. So that handyman line has now been charged the wages for that position. And the other line that had mistakenly been charged to has been credited back. So it also looks as if for several years, there's been no charge to it, but my understanding is, and again, it's not under my charge, but my understanding is it is a new position, and that would explain not having the prior year expenditures from it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you working with me to clear that up. And I also appreciate the fact that, you know, in doing so, it's important to, I think, you know, not for you, but certainly for Mr. Mason moving forward, that, you know, when we're going through and looking at these things, it's, I think Council Mahoney was talking about this quite extensively throughout the budgeting process, right? That we look at these things and we try to make, you know, decisions based off of it, and certainly not by your fault, right? Like, the important thing is like, when you see stuff like that, reach out, try to clarify, and that's what happened here. So I appreciate that. I just think that, you know, it's stuff like that that does make a difference in our decisions. And so moving forward, you know, I certainly appreciate that you will answer our call when we have clarifying questions like that, and just hope that next year, the line items will be up to date for us when we start reviewing this. But those are the only questions I have, and I appreciate, again, you working with me to clear that up. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors on the public buildings? Council Adronico?
Paul, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
I had a question about the Four River Clubhouse. That's been closed for two years now, and we just got a couple folks in the neighborhood, I think rightfully so, they're getting a little antsy about that fully reopening. I know a lot of work has gone in over the past two years. I mean, just to read a couple of things that I know we've touched base on, you know, we had a large area of dry and rotten termite damaged sill, sidewall that needed to be replaced. We're under process for a new electrical system installation to be done. I believe we replaced the underside of the roof as well to be insulated and fireproofed. And I feel like every step of the way, something's always come up where you wanted to do one thing and you had to make a few more trips to the hardware store for a new project.
Correct.
Was hoping you could just fill us in on where we stand on that.
Certainly. And to be completely candid, it has been closed that period of time, but not all owing to the renovations. It, of course, was closed initially to COVID, like all of our other facilities. And the time and the resources of the department were spent in our other facilities, schools, firehouses, city hall. You know, we have 70-plus building and structures that we care for, many of which, most of which provide critical services to the city and every department, where the stage that the rest of the city performs on. So it did honestly sit idle for a bit of time. When we got our other buildings back up and running, then we turned our attention to the Four River Clubhouse. And with the urging of Madam Clerk, we got it back online, the fireplace room, as I call it, for the voting cycles. We put it back together with the temporary bathrooms that we had planned. So that section of the building is still available to folks, with the caveat that it's currently not, because we've had to disconnect the fire alarm system. So if there is going to be an event, the neighborhood needs the use of the building, we would ask that we be told that, and have informed Park Department as well, because we'll just need to have a fire watch during the term of the public entry in the building because of the fire alarm system. But the building itself has been a nightmare. You know, the pitches that I sent you are indicative of a larger problem, both between water infiltration and vermin and rats for all of these years. But some of it just complete human stupidity. There's four-by-eight-inch wooden beams that hold that building up. Somebody wanted to put a window in, the service window in the kitchen. They just cut it off. So people wonder why upstairs is like this. So we've had to go in before we could do the full bathrooms, everything else, jack everything up, replace all that rot, replace the stupidly cut columns, and there's more than one. That is all by and large done. The stairways had to be brought up to today's codes, they were very narrow, very steep. They're much wider and more gradual. The gang bathrooms, the concrete floors were jacked up, all the rough plumbing has been replaced, the new concrete floors are down. So we are advancing it through the request of the mayor. The planning department has made a half a million dollars in CBGD funds available to the project, and we're working closely with Sean Glennon from the planning department to implement the required documents stuff to meet the federal regulations. And we've got that in place now, the MOU, and those funds can now be tapped, as well as the earlier community preservation funds that public buildings requested, and some other appropriations.
Gotcha. I appreciate the update. It's, you know, the building's over 100 years old at this point, so I know there's a lot to do. And I know you have a lot of projects, and you and your team do. You know, you mentioned the schools from 2020, you know, having served on the school committee during that time. I know that was priority number one, and I appreciated your work there. I appreciate it now.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Council Mahoney, and then Council Palmucci.
So I'm just looking down here for, so maintenance staff, are you going up on the maintenance staff?
The maintenance staff, we, not, the maintenance staff line item is 114.
512-204?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm just, I've written so many notes on this, it's hard to read. Available budget, so 1214. Actually, for what is illustrated here, there's a reduction. Oh, wait, no, that's the, I'm sorry. There we go. So there is. What's gone on is, over the last two budget cycles, there was different individuals, but each out on long-term workers' compensation, and they're now expected to be back. And that, and with the planned increase in steps under the existing contracts, the line items are by contractual obligation going up.
How many people?
In that maintenance staff group, there's 21 currently.
How many people in the department total?
Just under 50.
And then, as I'm going down, downtown coordinator?
Yes.
You're splitting that with the Parks Department, right?
Correct.
And mechanical technician, Park Department?
Correct.
Horticultural labor, I know you just spoke, Council Liang, about that.
Correct.
And handyman labor, both of those are, they are there for the downtown as well?
The downtown group, yes.
Okay. And then the director of construction?
The director of construction is a new position this year, after a conversation with the mayor's office. We do anticipate a senior-level retirement, and this position was created as a new way to cast the old job and brought in earlier so as to have training, real-time training in the position before the retirement occurs.
And who, which line item is the retirement gonna happen in?
That is 512-013.
512, which one is it? 512?
512-013.
Worth, thanks. So it's 107, so it would be a wash, is that what you're saying?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. All right. And then down into your contractual line?
Yes.
503-303, could you, it's gone up $600,000?
Correct. And I understand that that's significant jump, and, you know, by and large, the budget is level funded, but for that. And there's several reasons for that. One, we have an increased number of buildings we care for. Some of our newer buildings are much more sophisticated in their systems and more expensive to maintain.
Which ones are those?
Quincy High School, Southwest Middle School, Central Middle School, any of the things for the new, this building, believe it or not, the new systems that are going into North Quincy High School. The main library is a very expensive building.
The new systems that are going into North Quincy High School, the ones that aren't there yet, you're already budgeting for?
No, the systems that went on the roof, the new cooling towers and such that are on the roof, they're got high maintenance requirements on them. Same with the equipment that was recently replaced at Point West to Middle School. So that's just one component of it, though. One of the things, obviously, we read about it everywhere, the supply chain issues and inflation, the cost of our contracted labor is up, the cost of materials is up, and...
Do you have this great slush fund that you've been using with premium bonds, that I know Greenleaf Building was actually, a lot of money was spent in Greenleaf Building there, too? I just have, that's a huge number, and I went to see what you were spending your money on, and I'm not completely comfortable with $600,000 there.
Okay.
But the Greenleaf Building, what's your update on the Greenleaf Building?
If I could just give you one more component of the contractual line, a significant portion there is that we have had in place three-year on-call contracts, which...
What, sorry?
Three-year on-call contracts with outside trades persons, trade firms, which have all expired and are out to bid now, and we anticipated a significant increase in the labor rates and the costs of those contracts. So we're building that into the line as well. The Greenleaf Building, I respectfully wouldn't call it a slush fund. It's funding the...
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not calling you, I'm calling, I'm calling the premium for bonds, the slush fund, that's what the slush fund, because that's basically, there's every project in the city, including projects that we don't even own the property for yet, so that money's being spent on. So, so, yeah, I do, I think that's a great place for you to spend money out of, and you've been doing a great job out of it.
Well, thank you. I take pride in my job.
Mm-hmm. I should.
So on the Greenleaf Building, I am not prepared to give you a dollar figure last, tonight, on what has been spent on that building. I wasn't asked to do so. I can say that it's moving along slower than anyone anticipated, myself included. We clearly...
Why is that? I just had a curiosity.
Well, several reasons, and part of it is, if I were to spend my time and resources and budget on, in first priority, that building, to neglect of the fire department and the school buildings, I would be chastised for that.
Okay.
And also, the inverse right now is having focus on the firehouses, the schools, and city hall and such, and not focused on Greenleaf. I'm being chastised for that.
Yeah. You're not being chastised. You came before a body and said you could have something done in six to eight weeks, and that was in 2017, and it's on tape, and I watched it. It was questioned and was supposed to be for your building, your department, to move into. And it's, you know, six to eight weeks is long gone, it was only supposed to cost $750,000 or something, yep, nope, it's on tape. I mean, you can go back and watch it, I did, it was very entertaining. Not so much for the taxpayers, though. And it's just kind of systemic of some of the projects that we have going on, and it's bothersome and it's troublesome to me. Last year, when we had the budget, you had a building that your employees were working out of that you didn't even notice was falling down. That was bothering to me, too. I see that that got fixed. There's one right next door to it that's also in terrible shape, and that's not being, that's not being addressed. So I do have some issues with that, and I, I know that I can be, I'm very direct, Paul, you know that about me, so I'm gonna be direct about those types of things. It concerns me, and in your budget, you've gone up, you know, a substantial amount of money, and some of it is not your, not your doing, it's the downtown coordinators and the mechanical tech, those things that I don't believe should be in the budget. And you get, you get hammered on that from, I'm gonna say just for myself, because I don't think that's a good use of taxpayer dollars to take care of the movie sets that we're creating, that we only want those things to be perfect, but the rest of us don't get to have that, you know, same, same attention to detail, because down the street at Greenleaf, we don't have time to do it, but we definitely have money in your budget that allows us to, you know, really fine-tune everything. And even in the money that we have for the downtown, when I walk around and I see certain things, and I'm not, I'm not the gardener in my house, I can tell you that, I'm not, but I can tell you that I know enough that sometimes things are cut back the wrong way and things aren't being taken care of the right way. And those same things are in your, in your budget, they're in the Parks Department budget. So it's not being done to the efficiencies that should, they should be, and I've seen it in other parks and other areas. Sure, there's some things that are getting done that look great, but for the most part, there's things that need to, maybe you have too many projects going on. That could be one of the biggest issues that you have, if you take on too much. But that doesn't mean that we fix it by throwing money at it, it means that we're not managing things correctly, or we should say we can't handle that. But we have a million different places that it's being spent from. So for tonight, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna just start, I'm gonna go down a list of things that I'm gonna cut, but I'm gonna start with the downtown coordinator, 510-402, for 51988. The mechanical technician, 512-074, for 115030. The laborer, the horticultural laborer, for 512-411, for 3742. The handyman laborer for 3742. We have plenty of parks in the city of Quincy that don't get that kind of special attention. And then I'd also like to say that the director of, I'm gonna just start with that, 'cause I'm gonna have a second cut, but I just wanna start with those ones.
An amendment to the motion that's already on the floor. So on the amendment, do we have an amount?
I think she's adding now.
Okay.
No, I just, I just did it wrong.
Looking, we got four lines, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, sorry, I have to do it all over again, because... For those four line items, it's 241,982.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to cut, to cut four lines and amount of $241,982. So Council Yang.
Chairman, I just wanna say that...
On the amendment.
I'm sorry?
On the amendment.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I mean, look, I think, much probably like to some annoyance of some folks, right? Like, I'm always happy to cut any amount possible, even if it's 10 bucks. Y'all have entertained me, like, cutting, you know, very minimal amounts, right? Because every dollar counts. But I don't ever do it, right, for the sake of doing it. I do it because I wanna make sure that every dollar that is being spent is being spent in a way that is going to be effective. And Paul, Commissioner, to your point, when you say that you're being chastised for doing one thing and not the other, I kinda looked away, because I'm one of those folks. You know that, we've had a conversation about this, right? That there are projects that have been near and dear to me, there's been projects that I've been really excited about, you know, seeing get done. It hasn't been, to Council Mahoney's point, it hasn't been done in the time that, you know, I would anticipate and hope that they would get done, and we've had conversations about those. And to be very frank with you, right, it's about, you know, capacity, it's about making sure that we're prioritizing things a certain way. There are only so many hours in a day, you're only one person, your team, your staff, they're all only one people, right? There's an addition of a person on here, director of construction, great, right? Let's have somebody who focuses specifically on, you know, the development and redevelopment of existing public buildings, right? And as Commissioner, you should manage the entirety of the department for those things. And I feel as though taking away your resources is gonna put me in a position where when I pick up the phone and say to you, Commissioner, why is this project being delayed? Why is the firehouse still not getting done? Why is the North Quincy Library still not done? I personally would not feel comfortable picking up the phone and demanding that we get back on track with those if I'm directly taking away your resources. So, you know, that's all to say that I would hope folks understand that, again, I will happily cut $10 from something if I need to, but in this instance, with all due respect, Commissioner, I, yes, will, you know, come to you and talk to you about when I'm unhappy about the timeline on things. I cannot ask you to improve on that, though, if I'm taking away your resources. I do believe that, you know, I've said to you in the past as well, if you need additional resources to complete this work, let's have a frank conversation about that. You're doing that now by asking for director of construction. So I appreciate that you've taken those conversations to heart. Again, it hasn't been perfect. I am still going to look at these projects and make sure that we're on track with timelines that you've given us, and we'll have a deeper conversation about that, which you anticipate and you know that I'm going to bring to you when we talk about it during capital improvement conversations. It's a very long-winded way of saying that I support giving you these resources, because I want to see these results, and just know that these resources come with the expectation that they will then deliver on items that you are telling us you'll deliver on. So I won't be supporting the cut for those reasons. Thank you.
Council Palmucci.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. On the amendment, I appreciate the intent of the amendment.[1695.65] I supported this same cut when it was on Mr. Murphy's budget, and I still support the principle behind the motion. However, Mr. Walker pointed out to me that perhaps I made a suggestion in the past council meetings, that this is exactly how the money should be broken up, when I had advocated taking it out of the DIF. So, in an abundance of caution, so as not to be intellectually disingenuous, I'm not gonna support the cut, but I do, but I wanna state that I do support the principle of not having a neighborhood that has its own services compared to the rest of the city. And I already made that, I already made my little speech about it in the other budget, but just explaining my vote. I'm not gonna support the cut, but I support the principle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have, we have, on the amendment, Council McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Hines.
Good evening, Counselor.
Before I talk a little bit about not supporting any type of cut in our department, I wanna thank you for the work in Ward 1, Adam Shaw Library, at the N. Howell, the fire station currently, and all the other things that have happened down there. I really don't get into the neighborhood, you know, type thing. I know that you make a call up to the departments and, you know, there's no, there's no preference, really. I mean, the downtown folks that are taking care of the downtowns, because the downtown's growing and needs a lot of attention. When I call you up for something in public buildings in Ward 1, it gets done, you know, and I don't have to chase you. It's not like, you know, the downtown's getting everything, and Ward 1's not getting anything at all. So, I'm not gonna support any of the cuts. I think that, you know, with some of the senior guys I know that are leaving, and I think there's, might be another one that'll be following soon.
Correct.
You know, that the addition of an experienced construction guy, and any addition of anybody in the construction or public buildings arena, it would be, you know, well worth it for the city. I remember when we had control of the public buildings department and the school, and I thought it was gonna be a bad thing to relinquish the public buildings over to the city side. We'd never get any attention at the schools. We'll never get them to come back. They'll always be tied up with city things, and I was completely wrong. You know, the schools probably are the priority, as they always had been, and we didn't miss a beat, and the department has grown in the right way. And back years ago, when we just had a small public buildings group, we were always making a cut here or there in other departments to take care of public buildings. So, I won't be supporting a cut, especially a cut that's just kinda looks like we're just picking on things to pull out and try to make a cut. I think the public buildings department probably needs a little more oomph in regards to dollars to get the jobs done, and I think you do a great job at all the locations, Paul. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Counsel, Counsel President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hines, thank you for coming in tonight. Just wanna say thank you with the North Quincy Library, the branch up there, they finally got reopened, and I know it's a little bit of a hiccup since trying to get, you know, you're very busy every time I'm calling you. I'm like, "What's going on, Paul? How you doing? I'm busy, I gotta go do the..." So, I know it's a busy position, and you got a lot going on in the city, so just wanna thank you for getting back to me on a lot of other issues in the city, and just keep up the good work, and just keep on chugging along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other counselors? We have a, we have a vote on the amendment, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
No.
Counsel Kane.
No.
Counsel DeBona.
No.
Counsel Harris.
Counsel Yang.
No.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
No.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Chairman Phelan.
No.
Eight members of the field.
Eight members, that passes. I'm gonna go to-
Phil's.
Phil's.
I didn't wanna do all the cuts at once, I just wanna have another amendment.
You have another amendment?
I do.
Please speak your amendment, Counsel.
So, thank you for explaining the Director of Construction, and you said it's gonna be-
Placing the Director of Plant Facilities, which is the same price, right?
It is.
Okay. So, if we let that go through, you'll have two bodies that are available to, it's basically that 107 will stay in that budget, it doesn't go away. So, what I'd like to suggest is you get a 30-day runway when you hire that person, that's 30 days. You hire the person, they have 30 days to work with the person that's making the Director of Plant Facilities, and their salaries will change. I'll leave you with $8,924 in that budget line item for 512-022, and I'd like to reduce 512-022 by $98,198.58.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. What was the amount? I'm sorry.
So, the motion is to cut the budget, 512-022, Director of Construction, by $98,198.58. That will leave this department with a budget of 30 days to onboard the new person that's gonna be taking the place of the Director of Plant Facilities. They can change the title, but we would have the same amount of salary. But we'd only have one body.
We, okay, we have a motion on the floor, an amendment to the motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Chair will take a moment of privilege and ask word to Commissioner Hines. Somebody's in that job right now. Are they gonna be leaving when the new person comes, or is there a training period?
There's a new person in the new position.
Okay.
And then there'll be the retirement.
And do we know when he's, is he retiring, or is it just?
It's been postponed once, but I understand it as it's the end of July.
Okay. So, is the position needed in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, point of clarification. Are you saying that we have a new budget Director of Construction, $107,093, that you're putting in our budget for 2023, but you're saying that person's already been hired and being paid in the city of Quincy?
The new position is hired and being paid, and the ultimate date of retirement of the current employee is not within my control.
Mm-hmm. So, what was in our control, though, is that we're hiring people before we actually create budgets, so the person, you already, this person's already in the budget. That's fantastic. Why do we even bother doing these meetings if, you know, you're already hiring them and putting them in the budget? That's awesome. Guess you just never anticipate people are gonna cut anything. That's fantastic.
I forgot to ask you, how's the construction of the Ward 4 clubhouse going?
Very well.
Okay, good. Can you explain this? I don't, this doesn't seem to make sense to me. Somebody's retiring, so you're bringing someone in to replace them. You already hired them, because there's been a delay, so obviously you thought the person was gonna go, and it made sense, but the two positions then become one, so I don't understand why you would need to have funding for both those positions for an entire year right now. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
So, thank you.
I can't ultimately control the retirement date. If it delays again, it delays again. But in the meantime, the added position has helped me immensely, as I suggested. I was lying in bed doing paperwork at 11 o'clock at night, because I'm doing project managing during the day. So, it has eased my burden greatly, and allowed me to free up time to go and do the project meetings on the Learning Center, the police station, the new central fire station, the animal shelter, all these other projects in front of department. So, currently, the two positions have been very helpful, and I can't say when it reduces back to one. It's ultimately up to the retiree.
So, I, and it, look, I'll take that a second if I could. I just wanna, I just wanna, you pointed out how hard you're working, I wanna acknowledge that, that I think you're doing a tremendous job. It's a big job, a very important job, and you essentially, you know, created it from nothing and have done a terrific job with it. Whenever we create a new department, there's always a worry that, you know, we're just creating more bureaucracy or whatever, or government bloat, but you certainly earned your keep in that role. Yes, Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, I-
Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, just to clarify, I think Commissioner Hines is talking about the process that led us to where we are today, but there's no question, you have a new job description in front of you. This is a new job that we're creating. The retirement issue led us to hire prior to the budget being complete at that time, so that's why the number's in a little bit of a deficit. This is absolutely a need. This is absolutely a second job. We don't intend not to replace that other job under the retirement. The difference being that if the council's purview is to cut this position, it doesn't, we're not gonna lose a person, okay? In some of these other cuts, we would ultimately lose a person. If it's the council's decision that we don't need the extra job, the construction manager plus the job that exists, we're not gonna lose anybody. Commissioner Hines and the mayor hired this person because of the expected retirement at a certain time that was postponed, but we brought this person on. There was a window that we had. We understood that we would be coming here for the budget, but with the expectation, this is absolutely an additional job. I don't wanna make any doubt about that. This is an additional administrative job that I think is very much needed and has been discussed with you folks.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. It boggles my mind a little bit that the situation you're describing, in terms of someone like retiring, unretiring, not knowing if they're gonna retire when they serve at the pleasure of the mayor, kinda boggles my mind, but leave that up to you, Chief and the staff over there. So, it comes, so now I understand it better, okay? So, now it comes down to, no, that's fine, but now it comes down to whether we, whether we support adding a new position to your department. That's essentially what it boils down to. So, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't like the other way that I thought I understood it. So, I don't know if I support it. Can you just tell us why it's needed, what they're doing, what's the difference between the two positions, and just justify the position?
The position of the person anticipated to retire oversees the tradespeople, the licensed tradespeople, the competent, the painters-
It might be helpful if you stop saying the person who retires, because it's just the position, right? So, if it's not, so I don't know what that one is, but if you just call it that position, and then the other position, that will help not confuse me.
The existing position, the previously existing position, is the one who oversees, the person in that position's the one who oversees the licensed tradespeople, and sends about on a daily basis to do the work orders and the other tasks that come in from our automated system, phone calls from the counselors, phone calls from the mayor's office. They directs them, and they are accountable to that person. The new position is more of a construction oversight for new construction projects. What I was doing, I was running around during the day doing project manager work, literally in crowd spaces and things like that, and then late afternoons and evenings, doing the administrative work and running the department, and sitting in bed doing paperwork at 11:00 at night.
So, stop having me picture you in bed, please. It's really, it's disturbing.
Close on.
Okay. So, is it essentially a clerk of the works for an overall citywide clerk of the works?
You could phrase it that way, yes. The responsibilities ultimately are that, yes. And with the number of new buildings coming on, you know, going in the ground, going forward, it was at a unsustainable level, the way we were.
Which I feel like-
It speaks to much of the topic of timeframes and timeliness in completing existing projects.
Right, which is, which was the same justification for the creation of the department, too, and that we needed to do it, so it's growing, right? Do we have clerk of the works built into the contracts when we create, build a building, like, say, for the Public Safety Headquarters? Will that project include an onsite clerk of the works?
Under mass law, we're required to have an honest project manager, and that's an outside person or firm that's solicited and brought in. In addition to that, we have department staff embedded in the team. As for instance, weekly, Walter McDonough and myself, Dave Scott, go to the project meetings on the Public Safety Headquarters. We go to the public meeting, the project meeting in all of the buildings that are either in design or in the ground and being built. So, there's both, so yes.
And so, would this new position, how would, what role, or how would that, the new position, fit in with that?
Well, like, Dave Scott has his maintenance work as well, in addition to sitting in these meetings. I've got my administrative work in addition to sitting in these meetings. We're now undertaking more buildings and more significant. The Public Safety Headquarters building is going to be huge, it's going to be a big undertask, undertaking. We need the bodies to embed into that team and follow that project, and have our own eyes and ears in the room, directly reportable to me, so that we can make timely decisions and oversee what's going on, be responsive not to hold the project up, and also to get the project we want at the end.
So, essentially, it's a volume issue, right? It's, you have more volume than you can handle with the bodies you have.
Yes.
So, this person would kinda just-
A pressure relief valve.
For you and some of the other employees? Okay.
And that doesn't remove us from that process? It's just there's so many of those processes, we need more coverage.
Right. I mean, obviously, the more things you're doing, the more prone you are to making mistakes. I mean, that's human nature, or missing something, and-
Deadlines and such, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's also overseeing, you know, smaller scale things. We have a PJ Kennedy replacing a boiler at the Clifford Marshall School, so there's got the eyes on them, things like that.
Getting the temperature right in the Lincoln Hancock pool.
That's right.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
As challenging as that was.
Yeah, right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on the, excuse me, on the amendment, Counsel Andronico.
Thank you. Just to try to simplify this a little bit more, the Director of Plant Facilities is potentially retiring, and you're planning to refill that position this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. And in addition to that, there is the creation of a Director of Construction as well, which my understanding, that individual has been hired to date, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, and I think similar to the sentiments that Counsel Yang brought up, it would be hypocritical, I think, to say and talk about timelines for things like the Ward 2 clubhouse, or, I don't know, when you'll ever get started on the Ward 4 clubhouse, you know, to get started on that.
Dispossess.
I don't know, I'm not sure if he'll ever get to that one. Maybe he's just jealous, I don't know. But it would be, I think, disingenuous for us to talk about these timelines and then not give you and your team the support that they need to execute. And I understand there's a lot going on, we mentioned it, the number of buildings that you have, so just wanna say that. Thanks.
Counsel Mahoney.
I'm not gonna withdraw it. So, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, you're saying you have to go to a lot of meetings, and you have to be a lot of different places, and those are all great. I understand that. The problem I'm having is that, in this budget that you brought before us, you said this was a new hire that's gonna replace somebody, and you knew very well that you already hired that person.
I was forthright up front about that.
You didn't, no, you said you were gonna hire this person that's gonna replace it. That's what you said. That's the first thing you said. I'll go back and watch the tape, but here's the thing. The real issue that I'm having here is that, even if you're hiring this person that's gonna replace this person, it's still in one body supposedly, because this person's gonna retire, correct, eventually?
No, it's been clarified that it is a new position.
It's a new position, but so we're not the person that, so I just wanna make sure I understand this again. It's a new person that we were gonna hire that was gonna replace the Director of Plant Facilities when they retire, is now we're gonna have those two bodies for the continuous year.
I misspoke. I mistook and blended the conversation about the timing of the hire with the retirement versus the second position. I misspoke. Mr. Walker jumped in and clarified for me, corrected me.
So, Mr. Walker, we're not decreasing, we're gonna have those two?
Correct.
Okay. And we already hired them, so where are we paying the Director of Construction from?
Currently, as is explained to me by Mr. Mason, I have in my maintenance staff line the 512-204. It was $40,000. That sum of money is there only because I have a high-paid employee out on extended workman's compensation, so is not receiving a paycheck. So, that created a surplus in that account that was transferred over up to line 512-808, because they're gonna have two positions with that title, but they ultimately elected to change and have a separate title for the new hire.
I don't even see 512-204.
In fact, 512-204, maintenance staff. It's above your horticultural laborer.
Okay.
So, then there's the, so there's a $40,000 transferred out of that, and again-
So, that's the one that I asked you what the difference was, and you said that was, I asked you that also, and you said, in that particular line item, that that was a differential in steps, that's-
No, that was, that was above, that was in the maintenance line.
You just said 512-204.
Correct. So, that's the maintenance staff.[1660.96] So I'm talking about the year-to-date transfer out of the $40,000. You were asking about the 2023 appropriation.
Yeah.
So I'm speaking of the year-to-date. If you look at the year-to-date report, there's a $40,000 transfer out. I'm suggesting that the money was there in that line today to transfer out because of the long-term workman's comp case. But you had asked, and we spoke earlier, on the appropriation for 2023.
I'm going to continue with the cut. I actually find the whole thing bothersome that we're hiring people, we're creating, creating jobs and hiring people and paying them from other places, and then we, this whole thing has been convoluted from the start. And I agree, if you're really busy, you should probably let us know, but you should probably be able to do that more articulate without the chief of staff having to jump in and do it for you. So I'm going to keep the cut just because I just-
Thank you, Chris.
I just, I'm just really very frustrated by this whole process. And you are having two more people that come on board. And quite honestly, I do project management for a living, too, and I'm in tons of meetings. And guess what? I have to stay up until 11:00, too, at nighttime doing projects. And I'm going to be here until 11:00. I'll probably be up until 2:00 in the morning so I can be prepared for my meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00. And quite honestly, they don't automatically just make a new person to come into work for me so that I can manage those things. In fact, what they do in the real world is they look at their bottom line and they say, you know what we can't do? We can't afford this. We're going to lay off five more people and you're still going to have to get your work done. But it's a luxury to be able to hire people just off the cuff in other places. So I'm going to keep the cut, and I know I'm not going to win the cut, but that's okay.
Okay. Any other councilors seeing none? This is on the, to cut the-
Director of plant facilities.
Let's just call it 107.
100, okay.
Just maybe, if we don't need 30 days, they've already been hired.
All right. Okay. So on the, on the motion, a yes vote would be for the cut, a no vote would be to leave it the way it is. So on the motion, the clerk will read the roll.
Council Andronico.
No.
Council Kane.
No.
Council Debona.
No.
Council Harris.
No.
Council Liang.
No.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
No.
Council Palmucci.
None.
Chairman Phelan.
One other.
Council Phelan, no, yes.
Just because I'm on a roll now and really, but the contractual line item, 5303, I mean, I could cut a $600,000 there because you're getting money from every other place, there's lush ones all over the city. So cut for $600,000 in that line.
Okay. There was a motion on the floor to cut 600,000 from the contractual line. On the motion, seeing none, a yes motion would be to cut the 600,000, no motion would be to maintain it as is. So the clerk will read the roll.
Do you have a voice vote?
I think where there's going to be opposition, I prefer to do a, do a paper vote. Clerk, who will read the roll?
Council Andronico.
No.
Council Kane.
No.
Council Debona.
No.
Council Harris.
No.
Council Liang.
No.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
No.
Council Palmucci.
No.
Chairman Phelan.
No.
One to either fields.
Okay. Now we're back to the public buildings budget. And there is a motion on the floor to pass the public buildings budget. So I'm seeing no other councilors. I'm going to move the question, and we'll take a vote on the public buildings budget. I ask the clerk to read the roll.
Council Andronico.
Yes.
Council, Council Kane.
Yes.
Council Debona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council Palmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Eight members passes.
Eight members, eight to one passes. Thank you, Commissioner Hines.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Now, moving right along, making great progress. The Chief of Staff, Mr. Walker, to explain the mayor's budget.
I'll give it a five-second pause? No. Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just point out a couple of things in this year's, this year's budget. You'll note the two lines, secretary of the mayor, clerk receptionist, those are being combined into one, secretary of the mayor. This is a pay equity issue. They're basically the same jobs, and historically, they've done the same job. So we're just upgrading one of those positions to create that pay equity. And you'll also notice, and you'll have in front of you, the job description for community liaison is a new position in the office via the recommendation of the mayor's EDI commission. This is something this body has discussed throughout last year and this year. And Council Kane was good enough to agree to chair the commission through the process. We had asked, and Council Kane can get into this if the body so desires, we had asked that if any budgetary matters or budgetary recommendations were going to come from the commission to try to expedite those before any final report from the commission. And what's before you is that recommendation from the commission. And that's it for the mayor's office tonight.
Okay. Council Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would love to beat you up a little bit about putting in a request for a position that's going to be recommended in a report that hasn't come out yet, but because I understand why you did that and I really like the position, and I think it's a positive step forward for the city, I won't. But I do want to just take the opportunity to publicly thank the mayor for adding this to the, to the budget. I think it's an important position. Last year, I stated my disappointment, so when it wasn't included. So this year, I want to express my appreciation and optimism about it being in the, in the budget. So I thank the mayor for that.
Okay. On the, Council Andronico.
Thank you. I actually just want to take a moment to commend my colleague, Council Kane, for his work with the commission. I know he, maybe he's a bit more quiet about the work, but he put in a lot of hours on it. And I know it was a longer process, and Council Kane, I just want to say thank you for all that work.
The budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve by Council Harris. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Next item, Mr. Walker, celebrations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just note that this is a $50,000 increase from last year based upon the increased number of events we're having. We're continuing to build the events throughout the city. Costs to go up for our traditional events, and we're trying to build this a little bit year by year.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve by Council McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Council Mahoney.
Who, who actually organizes the celebrations? Where's that salary?
There are any number-
Do we have one person that was hired to do that?
We do.
Yep.
But that's, that's relative to downtown. This is a discussion that came up last year that is an events planner, events coordinator. It was in the DIF, some discussion with the council. It's been pulled out of the DIF. It's now being funded federally.
By the APRA money?
Yep.
Okay. So when the APRA money runs out, where will we fund it?
We'll make that determination at that time. My sense is we'll try to-
Can we put the $50,000 for celebrations in the APRA money and save the tax dollars? I mean, we are certainly not doing anything with the APRA money that's actually benefiting the taxpayers.
I respectfully disagree with that.
Well, you're buying buildings, but you're not actually doing anything that's going to be great for our taxpayers, taking things off the rolls and creating revenue accounts. So, yeah, I think, I do have a problem with that, but I just ask this question because that's a, you're creating a structural deficit by not having them in your payroll, and you're putting them in DIFs, which we shouldn't have had them in the DIF in the first place. And then you just took them from the DIF and you threw them all into APRA. So, you know, and you didn't do a presentation for that that was asked by Council Andronico to come back before us to be able to explain to us what you're spending the APRA money for. That would be something that's public and transparent, which all other communities are doing, yet this administration's not doing that. So I do have that question. I would say that I'm going to cut $50,000 for the celebrations account because we just, I just, I just, I'm on a roll now. So $50,000 from 570-800. I'm just going to keep cutting.
So the motion is, is to cut 50,000 from the celebrations account?
Hmm.
Any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment, clerk will read the roll.
Council Andronico.
No.
Council Kane.
No.
Council Debona.
No.
Council Harris.
Council Liang.
No.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
No.
Council Palmucci.
No.
Chairman Phelan.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. On the, on, there is a motion on the floor for celebrations. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
One. Okay.
I've never seen this person.
Next item, the office of substance abuse. Motion has been made to approve. Discussion on the motion. Council Palmucci.
Thank you. Through you to the mayor's representative. Chris, what's going on with the settlement with the Sackler? Yeah?
Yeah, I think we're at the, we're at the tail end. If we're talking about the eight, there's a couple of different ones going on, Council.
Tell me anything you know. Yeah.
We are working with the attorney general's office on the settlement through the state. We are working through the process of what the city's going to be receiving back from the attorney general settlement with the, with the pharmaceuticals. The other lawsuit, I'm not 100% sure exactly where we stand, but I think it's continuing to move forward. There's, you know, a lot of stuff, there's some movement in terms of the federal government getting involved relative to how this is all going to get played out over the course of the next couple of years. But we're, you know, on top of it. Lawrence is doing a great job. The office director here is doing a great job.
I agree with that last part. I would, I was talking to someone the other day, and it occurred to me that I thought, I thought we were paying this position with the mitigation money, mitigation money, whatever you call it, from Vermont.
We were.
Were we doing that at one point? And then we put it on the budget? What's the?
I think-
And I don't have a problem with it either way. I'm just-
I think there was one year, I think this gets to Eric Mason, Jim Powers, sort of the similar discussion we had with Furnace Brook, that the marijuana revenue was not a special revenue account. So there may have been one year where, or one or two years where we showed the actual offset in the budget, and via Eric, we probably just took it out. So same sort of thing as the Furnace Brook Golf Course. We are getting marijuana revenue. It hasn't been terrific relative to Vermont. But it's still an offset. We don't, we haven't increased this budget in any great deal. I think we're still paying for it via the marijuana revenue. And we do anticipate, we have our first recreational facility set to open later this fall, and we expect a good deal amount of new revenue. And the mayor has said from the beginning, working with you, Council, working with other councils, that, you know, a bulk of that money is going to go back into these sorts of programs that we're doing.
I think it was a terrific use of the money. Obviously, I was involved with the Vermont host agreement, which, can I just say, I don't know how they can't make money selling drugs, but, you know, the pharmaceuticals certainly make enough money doing it. But the, yeah, I think, my recollection was this person, this position was originally started in the, originally came into the solicitor's office, and they kind of split time between these roles. And then we did a good job. We liked the programming. We were able to expand it, and then it's on the budget. So it's a, again, a very forward-thinking initiative that the mayor took in the opioid crisis. He's done a tremendous amount of work on that and been a national leader between the Narcan and in this. There aren't, there aren't too many municipalities that do this. And I know we're not on the police budget, but it's often overlooked that the Quincy Police Department has had a mental health professional on staff for years, long before it was a national talking point, when talking about people who were in mental distress and trying to ease the potential for conflict with law enforcement. And that, that unfortunately, for me, it's not something we vote on because I would love to support that and be able to say support. It comes from a grant through the DA's office. But I'll obviously support this budget. I think it's, it's terrific that the mayor does this, that he started this program, and I'd like to see it continue and thrive.
We have a motion to approve on the office of substance abuse. Council Andronico.
But you had brought this up, just the settlement that had been paid out and the divvying up of the funds. Just through the course of my day job, I figure I can let you know, Quincy can expect through 2038 a max abatement of $2,160,903. It's front-loaded, so there'd be a step down gradually throughout the terms through 2038, but the city can expect those payments annually every July.
Council, Council Palmucci.
I appreciate that, Council Andronico. So by my calculations, if the city's going to get $2 million in unregulated funds that won't have to go through the council, that will come in 2038, this body would see a report of how those funds intend to be spent by 2040, perhaps?
I got it. Whatever. Sorry.
Okay. All right. On the, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Last item on the agenda. Council President Debona.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, it's been seven years since there's been an adjustment to this budget. And since 2015, the increase or the adjustment that's being made is for each councillor at 675, 7650, which will not go into effect until January 1st of 2023. The last time was 2015, obviously, and it's been seven years. The travel allowance is going to be ending on December 31st, 2022, and be equaled out and then put into the city councillor line item, which is 510002. On the wishes, on the wishes, on the wishes of basically my colleague, Bill Harris, he does not feel comfortable taking the adjustment at all. As a personal privileges, who on this body does not feel comfortable at all with taking any of it? Just raise your right hand. Okay. All right. I'm going to make a cut. It's a, it's a either yes or no, and I make a cut for those seven people that just raised their hand for $53,550. And that will go for Bill Harris, Brian Palmucci, Chuck Phelan, Ann Mahoney, Nina Liang, and Dave McCarthy. Did I miss anyone?
Yes.
There's eight. And Anthony Andronico. I'm sorry. So-
No, Anthony deserves a grade.
Okay. And Ian Kane. Okay. We're going to make a cut for $61,200 for those eight councillors. Bill Harris, Brian Palmucci, Chuck Phelan, Ann Mahoney, Nina Liang, Anthony Andronico, Dave McCarthy, and Chuck Phelan. Is that correct? There's a motion to be made to be cut.
Motion on the floor. On the motion, Council Harris, did you wish to speak?
Well, we'll vote on this one.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Council Palmucci.
Through you, Madam Order. So that level funds the positions? Is that what's happening?
Nope.
Counselor Palmucci, no, it does not level fund the position. It would, it would make a cut out of the city council line, but there still would be some of the increase left in the city council line.
Which is just the offset?
Which would be, I believe, so currently the line is increased by 101,245.86. And are you taking the cut out of that line?
The travel allowances, yep. And the travel allowance is moved over to the requested amount. $32,400 is moved over to that line item.
Is this cut including the 32,000?
No, it's not including that, no.
Okay, so there would be 32,400. You would, you would have to reinstate part of that travel allowance line.
So, Madam Auditor, if I could just ask you, would the level, if I were to make, if I were to wish to make an amendment to President DeBona's motion, so that the salaries were level funded?
Okay. That would be a cut of?
Would that amount be $69,650.01?
Uh, that would be $68,850.01.
I would ask the council president to accept that as a friendly motion or I would move to amend the, no, I wouldn't. We'd vote on his amendment and then I'd make a new amendment. I think that's the way we go.
Can do that. Okay, there is a, there is a motion on the floor. To cut.
Speak, can I? There were, there were a few counselors up here that were willing to take some type of income. And then there was a few counselors up here, I don't think, that want to take anything. It puts everybody in a bad position, so I figured everybody can make their own decision based on what they wanted to increase at all. Some folks don't feel, after seven years, it's been, it's been nothing. Of the, of the nine counselors, the only one that's been on here with the increase has been yourself, Counselor Palmucci, back in 2015 with that group. I thought it would be beneficial to everybody to at least let everyone vote on their own, you know, situation.
Okay, if I could just, a point of clarification. So I see what you were doing. I don't, if I may parliamentarily, I don't think that's what, you're essentially cutting each line by the amount and asking for nine individual votes. Is that what you're saying? So that all, the entire body votes on each person's salary?
No, the, the cut was made for 61,200 to be cut upon the folks that did not want the increase in pay.
Based on, based on us raising our, so some people get?
So, okay. May, may, the body speak, please.
So, so if there's nine of us and we all are getting proposed a $1,000 pay bump, right? You're only deducting the $1,000 per person that you heard from that does not want that $1,000. I feel like I just explained it in a more confusing way, but it made sense to me. And so, never mind, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to understand, like, what?
Well, we're actually cutting from one line.
Yeah.
We are not.
Right.
Yep.
Bucket is the city council salaries now.
You cannot divide the portions.
Oh, the bottom, I'm sorry, the bottom line, I'm sorry, Madam Auditor.
Right.
So that, so that the positions will not be paid independently. I, I appreciate the gesture that you've tried to make, Noel. I think it, in certain circumstances, it makes sense, especially if this body were to collectively make that decision, which it doesn't seem like it's going to. And in which case, it's probably in, in poor form to move forward. You know, I, I think we all respect the roles that we play. And I'm not speaking for everyone, I'm speaking for myself. I know I respect this position and the time that I put into it. And, you know, I think this is, this is public service, right? And so we signed up to take this role at a certain level. And we probably don't really do the position because we get paid, right? We do it because we care about the city and making great improvements therein. So, you know, I just don't think, it doesn't sound like it's going to work tonight. And I don't think we can split it so that somebody takes it and others don't.
Okay. I understand. Is there any other propositions that we can cut some of it from the budget? Is anybody willing to do that?
It sounded like there was a cut from a line, from the main line, right?
Why don't we vote on his amendment and then I'd be happy to make an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. That seems to make some sense. All right. Let's, let's take a vote on the, the motion that's on the floor from Council, from Council President to make.
To cut 61,200.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's why it's always good to have Jen next to you.
What's the motion?
The motion is to cut $61,200 from the city council line in the budget, made by Council President DeBona. Okay. We'll read the roll on this.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
I love him.
Oh, he's like, great.
I understand.
Well, after, well, after counting the votes, someone tell me what just happened.
Counselor.
Go ahead.
Yes.
It passes.
What was it that passed?
Yeah. What passed?
The cut of 61,200.
We cut 61,000 from the city council line.
We said we got 61,000.
200.
$200 from the city council line. Where it says city council, we cut that line. We can't cut individually. You're cutting basically as a, there's just a line. And we cut the line.
Okay.
Counsel, Counselor Harris.
If the, if the two people that are watching us on TV right now is looking, they have to be confused. But I'm just going to say something because the lack of communication that's come out of the presidents, as far as I'm concerned, and, and the fact that, I don't know what just went, what just went on here, or what, what type of that was. But I'd like to make another cut to that, that will equal that the total. I don't have, I don't have the math, but it, I want the total cut that it's, that should be is 68,850.01.
It would be an additional cut of $7,000.
Right. And that, that should put us where we were.
Okay, there is, there are motion on the floor. On the motion, Counsel, Counsel President DeBona.
Yeah.
So this is in addition to the, the vote, or?
Just a point of clarification.
Point of clarification from the auditor.
So the, the cut that was made was the 61,200. By cutting it, from what I understand from Counselor Harris, he would like to cut an additional $7,650.01. That would bring your total budget down to 650,253.95. And that would leave you at what you're currently making as we stand right now in fiscal '22.
Okay. On the motion, Counsel Palmucci.
I plan on voting yes, but I'd also like to acknowledge that this is the most difficult salary negotiation that's ever occurred. We're negotiating with ourselves, against ourselves, and we're not even doing a good job at it. So I, I'm going to vote yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
It's, it's a motion to vote to?
To cut an additional $7,000 so we're even with what you currently made.
So we're even with what we were last year.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy. Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. Sorry, skipped you.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm all.
All right. Counsel, we, do we, do we have a motion? Okay. Counsel, Counsel President DeBona.
Can I make a motion to approve with the amendment?
Okay. Well, we, the amendment's what it is.
Oh, yeah.
We've already voted on the amendment.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve, Counsel Liang.
I respectfully ask if I could, um, just, you know, want to make things a little bit more complicated for my colleagues, if I could, to actually make a motion to restore $8,517.66 to the total budget. Joking aside, right? Look, I think as much as we are stringent, or I believe as we are stringent on every single department that comes in front of us, I, I think that, again, joking aside tonight, we are the most stringent upon ourselves, right? And I think we're the most critical on ourselves in this department and this budget. And we're the most conservative about this work, you know, as we should be, right?
Can we do it?
But I just want to acknowledge that the staff that we have that come in full-time, that make this work possible, respect our decision to be conservative and stringent upon ourselves. And the last few years have reflected that when their salaries have not seen an increase in, in the fiscal year. And so, you know, in the conversations that we've had in deliberating any increases to the council budgets and the amount of work that goes into it and how we can be effective, I want to acknowledge and recognize that that is possible because of the staff that we have on hand. And so I respectfully ask my colleagues to restore $8,517.66 that equates to a 3% raise for three of our staff that are with us full-time. And, you know, over the course of the two years, that they have not received any increase, it equates to a percentage and a half over the course of, you know, each year. So, again, that, you know, I know we said multiple times that we can't add to a budget. This isn't adding to the bottom line. In fact, it's significantly still coming out less than what was being proposed tonight. So I would respectfully ask that we acknowledge, again, this conversation we're having, ten and about being able to get work done, is due in large part to these staff members, so.
Okay. All right. Trying to figure some stuff out here.
Sure.
I'll occupy some time.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. I support the addition of the monies. The municipal budget process, again, is a policy statement. We're talking about the city council budget right now. And Counsel Liang has made an amendment that would make a statement that we would like to see a modest, a 1.5% increase averaged on our, to our, to three of the four positions that work in the city council office, the fourth being excluded because it's currently or assumed to be vacant. I'll support this. I think it's, I echo everything that Counselor Liang said. That, are you done? You want me to stop filibustering?
I am listening and.
Oh, no, no, no. No, but, so I, so I support that. But through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor's representative. Ultimately, it doesn't matter what we say. The bottom-line number can be applied however the mayor wants to apply it in such a situation. So I trust that, that the mayor would apply, would apply this additional increase with the intent that we are expressing that it go to the three staff members, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed many times, Counsel, I mean, the, the mayor views the council's budget as the council's budget. He has for 15 years and he continues to believe that. I'm not going to call him this evening to get his opinion, but, you know.
He's on the phone with Larry about some trash anyways.
Um, I think it's safe to say, based upon our practice over the last 15 years, that he treats, as I said, the council's budget as the council's budget. We could, we could do that if it, if it takes. Actually, I don't want to go any further.
Okay. Just, just a point of clarification. We have not yet final voted the final vote on the budget.
That's correct.
So we, we, all we're doing is really, what are we going to take off the bottom line?
Correct.
And where those lines go, that we can, we can decide that. That's not a, not a problem. Because there's one other thing I'd like to bring up too. But let's, let's keep on the vote. There's a vote here. We have an amendment. And there is a vote to, to restore. And we're, Madam Auditor, please clarify.
Okay, for clarification purposes, the cut that you just made that was for $68,850.01 came from line 510002. That would leave still in that line $235,000 and some change, I believe. What you need to do now is you need to move from that line the remaining travel allowance for the first half of the fiscal year, which would be 32,400. That would make that line whole because you need $64,000 in that line. And then that would bring your city council line down to 203,278.85, which is what you would need to fund your salaries for the full fiscal year in 2023 with no increase.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay. Well.
There's already an amendment.
We got, we already have a motion on the floor. We got to deal with the motion we have on the floor right now. And that is Counsel Liang's motion, which is on the floor. And then we can come back and deal with that one, okay? Because, because one of the things we're all saying is we're going to restore it to what it was. The, the travel allowance was taken out. So we also restore the travel allowance and then do the cut to cut the rest of the council salary to that, to what it was before. Okay? So we have the motion on the floor to take, take $8,517.66 and move it into the staff salaries of the council? Does that make sense? Is that what it was?
Three out of four.
Three, three out of the four, yes. Okay. The motion's on the floor. The clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona. Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members and the vote passes. Okay. Now, another motion with Counsel, Counsel President DeBona.
What she needs to do here is we need to take 32,400 and restore it into the travel allowance to make it level-funded for all of us moving forward.
Okay, motion has been made to restore.
To move it, to move that into, yeah, basically. 32,400 has to be restored.
32,400 to the travel allowance, which will bring the council pay back to what it was before. Counsel Palmucci.
Madam Auditor.
Yes.
The 68,850.01 cut that we made and was approved created a level funding if you were to add the travel allowance to the salary?
Correct. That would have level-funded it.
So why are we doing anything else?
I guess, I guess because the vote that you took, it's my understanding from the clerk of committees, the vote that was taken.
Was that not the intention?
What?
If that wasn't the intention?
It wasn't.
Oh, it was.
So leave it alone, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'll withdraw my motion. That's just.
Okay.
All right, it's already there.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Hang on one sec. I can't let you go because we have one more thing to do before we leave and I want to get that done. You don't want to come back here another night. Trust me. Okay. So we, we're basically clean now. Is that correct, Madam Auditor?
Okay, so.
Well, we have to vote on the city council budget as amended.
Correct. So I, so I just want to try to understand what. So basically, you had a cut of $68,850.01. Then you restored from that cut $8,000, yeah, $8,517.66. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, one minute. Just deal with me one minute.
Mr. Chair, would it be in order to call for a two-minute unmoderated caucus so that we have the time to just figure this out or recessively for two minutes here?
I think we've technically gone past 11 o'clock, so we got to get permission to go past 11 o'clock. But it's 11:20. And basically, yeah, I think, give, give us just a couple of minutes to put the number because we have to vote the final. That's it, yeah?
Yeah.
Ms. Clark. Chairman.
Right. So, so the total, the total cut that you're actually making to the city council budget will be $60,332.35. What that cut does, it restores the city council line to what you're currently making now, which would be 203,278.85?
Not individually.
Not individually. It would restore, store the travel allowance line to $64,000.
No, we're not doing that. We're not doing that. I, I, if I could ask, we just?
Oh, it's staying in the city council.
Yes, that's the difference. So we are, we are level-funding the overall salary. This budget changed the, the way in which the salary was provided.
Okay.
It's broken up into two different pieces, a travel allowance and a salary. In this budget, it's just a salary and it's level-funded at the same amount that those two things were combined last year.
Okay.
And then we added the raises.
Okay, so then, so then it would be the $60,332.35.
Okay. All right. So that, we, so the motion is to approve the council, the city council budget as amended. That make sense?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Hearing none. The ayes have it. We are complete, but now, Madam Auditor, do we have to vote a final number?
Three votes, yes.
We have to do three votes.
Passing in committee, so.
The first vote?
The first vote would be the general, the general fund budget.
Yep.
The general fund budget was proposed at $372,728,236.28. There were two cuts made, one to the pension line totaling $77,260 and one to the city council budget at $60,332.35, bringing a new revised total for the budget at $372,596,4393.
Okay. Do I have a motion to pass the budget as amended? Counsel D'Amico. We have a. Andronico.
This is great, isn't it?
I'm, I'm getting flashbacks. I got PSAAD. I was like, I'm going, I'm back 25 years on the city council. All right. My extreme apologies, my extreme apologies.
Thanks.
Okay. Flashbacks, I'm having flashbacks. Okay. On the city budget as amended, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Can I six my line proposal?
Yes.
So I actually made it, I made a stink about this and I'm going to make a stink about it again. The 2022 budget came in with an automatic 3% increase across the lines and there was some discrepancies throughout the whole budget. And when I asked that question, it was clarified by Mr. Walker that it was his decision to do that. And I had a problem with that because Mr. Mason, I was asking Mr. Mason those questions too. So when you go back to the 2022 budget that was approved by our council last year, the numbers don't match. So when we're looking at our, at the numbers that Susan gives to us, it basically has an original appropriation and that's what we vote on. So if you go back, and anybody goes back at any specific time to look at this, we talk about this in other departments, it's great because it has historic references, you wouldn't be able to figure out how the 2022 budget got, got passed. Because usually. Because usually what happens in the process of how we do these budgets is they'll do a transfer for the funds that we did for the raises, but instead of doing the transfer of the funds, they just put it into the 2022 budget, which also makes it look, it's the same number at the end of the day, what got passed last year for the budget for 2022. But when you're looking at it, it looks like there's not really big differences in the numbers. So I just have a problem with the way the process was done. It wasn't explained. It's written into the budget book, but it's a change in the way you're doing your accounting finances in the city of Quincy. It hasn't been done like that before. I went back and looked at all of the other finance books in the past, and it hasn't been like, done like that before. So I just have an opposition to the way we're doing things. We're changing things, and, and, we're changing the way we do things without explanations. We're hiring people before we have the budgets. There's a lot of things that are happening in these budgets that are not transparent to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, and they're demanding more, and we should be asking more.